Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Shinir, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. All right. Would everyone please rise? And I would ask Councilmember Carr to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible). Not yet.[48.12][48.12](laughing).
So, I know there are a lot of people here tonight who want to be heard, and I promise you, you will be heard. But, of course, we maintain decorum in the chambers, which means no shouting out and allowing everyone, whether it be council member or a member of the staff or a member of the public, to speak uninterrupted so that we can have a good, robust civil discussion and debate here tonight and so that everyone can be heard. We begin tonight with a special presentation, and I would like to turn it over to Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It is really my pleasure to honor a very prominent member of our community on the occasion of her retirement. To start out, I'd like to ask all of the audience, do you know where the River District is? If you know where the River District is, raise your hand. Well, that's a pretty good showing. Certainly not everybody. The River District is a very prominent area, right adjacent to our downtown. It's an older commercial industrial area that has seen good times and bad times and everything in between. Patty Klein-Connect is the person we're honoring tonight, and she has led the Property and Business Investment District, Improvement District in the River District for 13 years. And under her tenure, she's seen tremendous changes. The River District has issues. You know, there is an awful big homeless population there. There's the preponderance of homeless services and the largest number of shelter beds in the city are in the River District. That being said, oh, and, of course, loaves and fishes. So, everybody knows where loaves and fishes is, right? Yeah, I expect you do. The thing is, Patty, in terms of leading the River District for business improvement, has done a tremendous job. And she's seen such incredible projects as the new lottery headquarters. She led through the River District's specific plan, the relocation of the Greyhound Terminal, the Township Nine project, Sutter Senior Care Pace Project, which is a really great one, and currently the construction of the Powerhouse Science Center and the Twin Rivers Housing Development, which will be a very significant number of affordable housing units in the city to come. So, she's seen tremendous change.
Excuse me.
And I think she's done just a great job of leading the Board of Directors of the River District, who are a very strident crowd, people with strong personalities. And, you know, it's a big job. She's carried a lot of weight on her shoulders. She's also a really delightful person, and unfortunately, she'll be leaving the state. But we wish her well in her retirement. And, of course, we have this resolution for her. Patty, I just want to say personally, having known you these last five years, it's really been a nice collaboration, and I've appreciated everything you've done to hold the River District together but keep a vision for its future and move relentlessly towards it. Again, you've done a fabulous job, and I just want to thank you personally. So, I have a little resolution for you here. I'd like to come down, and perhaps we could get a picture with the council all behind? That'd be great.
Yes, Councilman Hanson, go ahead. So, yeah, go ahead. We got, and I know, I want to say something, too.
I just want to echo those comments about Patty. I got to work with you, Patty, on the Powerhouse Science Center in the Hanami Line along the western part of your district and the river part of my district, as well as on the Downtown Revitalization Corp., where you've served with Ms. Ashby and myself and done a very good job trying to help revitalize various blocks of the city. And so, I just thank you for your long service and your work. And from the first time I met you, I think it was at a Stepping Stones meeting while we were looking at a tiny home community under then-Mayor Johnson before I got elected. You've always given your best effort, and I really appreciate that in a very challenging district with a lot of opportunity but also a lot of people in need. So, thank you, Patty.
I just want to add, too, Patty, I, I, I'm sorry. Oh, Angelique, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay, do you mind? I'll, you can go left. There we go. Okay. I just wanted to add my words of thank you to you. I think you have had one of the very toughest jobs in the city because the River District is a place of such promise and so many great things and so many people who believe, and yet with many challenges, as we know. And you've always done it, as I've been with you, with a real toughness but with a real grace as well and a willingness to always listen and participate. I just want to say thank you. Your job well done, and good luck to you. Please. All right, Angelique, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so sad to see you go, Patty. I know you know that. So, I won't, I don't want to make us both sadder. But when I first came on this council, I actually represented the River District. And so, I got to hang out with Patty for a while. And we forged a friendship quickly that has stuck. And you helped me put that Downtown Revitalization Corp. together. It didn't exist before we, you said yes, and my call out said yes. And then, we've been able to do so much good together. And I will forever link you in my mind to the Powerhouse Science Center and the Butterfly Room once it's there, or the Ladybug Room once it's there because I know how much all of that has meant to you. And you've been a really big champion, not just of that River District, but for the city. I've watched you take votes for downtown and midtown and support things like the Sofia and the B Street Theater and projects that were far away but you knew would be good for the city. So, I don't think it's possible for us to replace you, but we can be really grateful for the time that you spent here with us. And I am personally going to miss you very, very much. Thanks for being my friend. May I?
Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Patty, it's been a while. Having been an executive director of a Business Improvement District, I understand the challenges, understand the challenge of trying to get the property owners identified even and to sign the petition to form the district, understand how difficult it is to keep a board together, to keep them active, engaged, and involved, and understand how difficult it is to come up with those innovative ideas to make your district better. And you have done all of those things. So, I congratulate you on what you have accomplished and wish you a good fortune in the future. And it was great working with you.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
So, Patty, one last comment. You know, you've had vision for the River District, and you've been really relentless in trying to move it forward, specifically in helping pioneer businesses get started, like Pipe Works, Vintage Monkey, Metroscope. That's been so important. You've left your mark on the city, in the River District, and we'll always know that you were here and that you achieved these things. So, do you have any comments for us?
This is an honor.
Any rebuttal?
I have been very fortunate to work in a position that's allowed me to contribute to the Sacramento community and to further a vision and help shape the River District. A P-Bid is a public-private partnership in the truest sense of the word, and it's been an honor to include friends and colleagues from the city of Sacramento as partners. I've often said that I'm a one-person office, but that's not true. I've had so many individuals from the city, the county, my board of directors, businesses, other organizations, working with me, offering help and support every time I called. And I can't say enough about how much I appreciate the city staff, the city of Sacramento. I don't want to name names, Rachel Hazelwood. But I, there are so many people, and it sometimes bothers me so much when people stand up here and criticize city staff. I see how hard they work. I'm leaving the River District in a good place. There's a number of projects underway and in the planning. A transformation is underway, and this central city area that was once known for large, low-density warehouse properties needs to be reimagined. And I challenge each of you to share in the vision of a vibrant residential, mixed-use, transit-oriented community with the opportunity for more jobs and living options. I will come back and haunt you.[645.24][645.24](laughing). And I look forward to seeing what happens next in the River District. Thank you so much.
Two and a half hours. Whatever you want to do.
You know, actually, Mayor, would the council mind coming down and taking a picture with Patty? I think the occasion warrants it. And look out, Dallas, here she comes.
Ready? One, two, three. One more.
Okay, everybody. Let us, let us move on to the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any items, Madam Clerk, that need to be dealt with differently or separately?
There are no items that need to be dealt with separately, but I'd like to read our decorum announcement. I wanted to remind the audience that this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members of the public who wish to address the council should complete a speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned in to the clerk prior to the beginning of each item. Please fully complete the speaker slip with name and any phonetic clarification and preferred pronoun so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are addressed, asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. The copy is at the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. A cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are available from the clerk at the front of the room. And I have one speaker on item number 11. It's Mark Valenzuela.
Mr. Valenzuela, please come on up. Welcome, sir.
How you doing, sir? Counsel? This is, I always thought that Heeman for Hope was going to speak first, and I was going to talk about that.
You are welcome. Well, no, this, we're going to get to the homeless items probably in about 20 minutes.
Yes, this is going to be a homeless issue I'm talking about.
You asked to speak on item number 11.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is agreement for purchase of real property, a portion of Caltrans Interstate 5 right-of-way for access to Sacramento Valley Station. So, at this point, that's the only item we can speak on.
Oh, okay. All right. My issue, my talking point on that was the, under the overpass, on highway, under Highway 5, just past, just west of that rail yard. I spoken, I've emailed Tony Hawk. He's a well-known skateboarder. And he's in the business of providing and developing, designing skate parks for skaters, bicyclists, to come up with a park for them. I took pictures of skateboarders down at the waterfront in front of the Joe's Crab Shack, and they're all over the place. And they would love to have a skate park down under the overpass there. It would be a good place for them to go and get away from the people, the public, at the waterfront, Old Sac, and have their own designated place for them that they can all go to. It's close to downtown. They have public access to go there. That was my point on that part.
Okay.
Item number 11. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
You're not, don't be nervous.
Okay.
This is your place.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
We've had a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, abstain. The consent calendar passes, and I think we do have a few short items before we get to the homeless services funding plan. So, why don't we just go through the agenda here? Item 13, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sean Decourcy, Associate Planner with Community Development Department. I'm pleased to present the Revised I and 23rd Multi-Family Development Project. This project was originally approved by the Preservation Commission in September of 2018. Trees for Sacramento filed an appeal raising concerns about the removal of a 47-inch private-protected black walnut tree located on the site. Since then, the project proponent has revised the project to preserve the walnut tree. Staff recommends, staff recommends the city council approve the revised project, thereby denying the appeal and preserving the tree. Trees for Sacramento has agreed to withdraw the appeal if the project retains the tree. Both parties have agreed to waive their formal presentations tonight but are available, along with staff, to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, couns, do we have public testimony on this item?
I have the appellant here to speak, Kate Riley.
Okay. Ms. Riley, come on up, and then I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hanson.
Hi, Kate Riley, here to represent Trees for Sacramento. We're very happy to work with the city on this, and we wanted to say thank you so much to the architect and developer and property owner, Ron Verlocas, who was willing to work to save this absolutely extraordinary tree. And now, it's just a matter of making sure that it stays alive during the process. So, thanks again for working with us and saving that tree.
Okay. So, Councilmember Hanson, you want to give an update here in terms of?
Thank you for speaking, Kate. The community did work very closely with the architect developer on this, and I believe this is as good a part of the public process as we could get to. And I appreciate all the work that Trees for Sacramento, as well as the Boulevard Park Neighborhood did on this. And I would like to, just for formality's sake, to reject the appeal, approve the project as redesigned, and appreciate all the work that was done to get here to save the tree. I'll open and close the public hearing along with that motion.
Very good. Councilmember Harris has a comment or question as well.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I would like to second the motion. This tree is really a magnificent specimen of claro walnut, so native black walnut tree. A few years ago, when we were working on rebuilding the tree ordinance, we actually did a bus tour around the city of Sacramento to look at various trees and tree conditions throughout the city so that everybody could be more aware of the conditions that we were putting into the ordinance. I have to say that I'm really delighted that this tree will be saved. It really is, so, well, it's a very large tree, but it actually has great form. And again, kudos to Ron Verlocas. He's a very creative individual and working with the community. Came up with an elegant solution, so I think everybody wins on this one.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. So, is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded, that's what I meant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Good, that passes. Let's now move to item 14.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Evan Compton. I'm with the Community Development Department at Council.
Mayor, I think I can make quick work of this one unless there's anything you need to read into the record.
No.
Then I can waive the staff's presentation, close the public hearing unless there's anyone, open and close the public hearing unless there's anyone who needs to speak and move the item.
No public testimony, so yes.
Okay. Thank you for your hard work, though. See, staff did do a great job on this work for a long time. I appreciate you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded by many. I think it was Councilmember Warren. All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. That passes. Thank you. I would need a motion to continue item 15, please. Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. That item is continued. I need a motion to continue item 16. So, moved?
Seconded.
Any public testimony? No. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. That item is continued. We now move to item 17, which is an authorization to hire a staff aide. So, we waive the presentation, move the item. Moved and seconded. No public testimony. All in favor, please say aye. Great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
Always.[1361.02][1361.02](laughing). All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. That passes. All right. Thank you all. We now move to item 18 and then 19, which will be a discussion. Item 18 is proposed to be an action item. And then, after the homeless items, of course, we will hear item 20, which is the issue of the 5G wireless deployment. But begin, we begin with the homeless issue, which I know many of you are here to talk about tonight. Let me suggest to you how I would like to proceed here this evening. I know that I have some opening comments to sort of frame the discussion in terms of how it is we got here. We would like to show a brief nine-minute video that illustrates the concept that we are talking about. I then would like to turn it over to our Homeless Services Coordinator, Emily Halken, for her presentation. I then want to ask Lisa Bates, who is the Executive Director of Sacramento Steps Forward, our Continuum of Care, and Professor Arturo Bayaki from Sacramento State University to come forward and present on some of the data. And then, I would propose we take public comment. There are 56 people signed up to speak, and I want to make sure that everybody is heard with the two-minute, the two-minute rule, of course. And then, we're going to open it up to the city council for comments, questions, and potential action. All right? Is that sound fair? Let me begin, then, with some opening comments, which I hope will frame the discussion. Again, every member will have more than an equal opportunity after I frame this, as I intend to do, more listening than talking after I, after I lay this out. Members, thank you, and members of the public. It is important, in my opinion, to begin this late afternoon reminding ourselves just how serious a homeless problem we have in the city of Sacramento. We, of course, are not unique. This is a problem throughout California. But we are the capital city, and in my opinion, as your mayor, we must act. The point-in-time count that came out in June of this year showed the following: 5,600 homeless people in Sacramento County, 3,900 of them unsheltered. 73% of the unsheltered homeless population, that means no residence, no home, either living out on the streets or in cars. 73% of the unsheltered live in the city. That is approximately 2,847 Sacramentoans who are unsheltered and homeless. Tonight, I will ask the city council to approve two separate but related action items. One is to begin working with Caltrans to build a low-barrier triage shelter under the WX freeway at Alhambra. Second, I will ask the council to approve a women-and-children-only shelter in Meadowview. In addition, we will discuss the very important repurposing of 184 traditional shelter beds in the River District, which we intend to convert into intensive service triage beds with the intent that, for all of our new capacity, we move people in and out as quickly as possible towards longer-term stability. If we approve the action items tonight, we will have at our disposal 614 repurposed and/or new beds. If we continue to expand and improve the model, which began working on Railroad Avenue, we will be able to get people through an average of every four to six months. 614 beds will enable us, over time, beginning now, to translate hundreds off the streets into thousands. But we don't have time to wait. Winter will be here very soon. The WX project is crucial. It adjoins the freeway where the homeless problem is among the most visible in our entire city and our entire region. I want to thank and commend Councilmember Shinir for taking the lead, and we'll leave it to him later on in this hearing to describe the exact project and the compelling need. Much of the discussion in the prior days and weeks has been around the Meadowview Shelter. I am proposing that we make the Meadowview Shelter exclusive to single women and to women-led households with children. How did this come to this particular proposal? How did I come to this particular proposal? I met with the community, with Councilmember Carr, 15 days ago, two weeks ago yesterday, heard the concerns of the people, and came back with a plan to help the most vulnerable of the vulnerable. And so, what are the numbers as it relates to women and children? In this city alone, there are 1,150 single women and women-led households with children. That's 1,150. And the number is probably understated when you think about the fear that people sometimes have in reaching out for help. Today, the Regional Coalition to End Homelessness put out its annual homeless death count, reporting on the death count for calendar year 2018. 132 deaths. 132 deaths. We also know from the pit count, again, last June, just last June, that 93% of the overall homeless population is from Sacramento County, that people aren't fleeing here. The problem exists in other areas of the state, obviously, as well. I want to talk for a moment about Meadowview to help frame the discussion. And I know Councilmember Carr will be heard loud and clear, as will every other member throughout the evening. For the past year and a half, we have worked with great energy and commitment to look for potential sites in the South area. We engaged commercial brokers in May of 2018 to expand our search beyond just city sites to privately-owned sites. For the entire For the entire South area, we have been presented with two potential sites that work. One was the Florin Road RT site, which was opposed vociferously by many in the community who also oppose Meadowview. We are left now with the Meadowview site. Many people have said to me, and I have listened, "Mayor, slow down. We should only do one project at a time." The numbers, which represent real human beings, do not allow us to slow down. We have the chance to get hundreds of women and children off the streets. I will ask, I will ask that the approval for all the shelters include enforceable restrictions relating to the following: that we prohibit camping and street feedings around the shelter; that we keep the area around the shelter pristine; and that we enforce a zero-tolerance policy for drug sales and use around the facility. Now, other members and other members of the City Council and members of the community have come up with some very good and constructive ideas. Councilmember Geta has agreed to fund an expansion of St. John's in his district. Councilmember Chenier has done the same with the City of Refuge in his district. These are great programs and great opportunities, but here are the fundamental challenges that we face. I have a letter here, that you all have as well, from St. John's dated today, from the interim CEO, Mark Codri, who says that St. John's, a wonderful program, has capacity for 270 women and children, 50 open beds, and a daily waiting list, a daily waiting list of 313 women. We estimate that the $1 million we have put towards those programs will help fill these beds, but it is not nearly enough to meet the daunting and understated number of 1,150 women and children. Many will ask, where is the money to do all this? Not only has the City Council set aside significant resources out of our general fund and Measure U, but I have, and I've had help from some of you, raised significant private dollars. I am committed to and will be successful in raising millions of dollars more from the private sector. In addition, because of our success at the state capitol this year, where I'm privileged to chair the big-city mayors, we are going to get a second round of so-called HEEP funding, and we estimate, based upon the nearly doubling of last year's allocation, that we are going to receive about $14 million. Now, there may be a little cash-full lag, which we have to figure out. We don't have infinite amounts of money, but we have enough money to get started and to get started aggressively. We cannot help all of the women and children in Sacramento even with what we are doing tonight, as the numbers are large. But we can help many. The bottom line for Meadowview and all of our efforts is this: we cannot turn our back on 1,150 women and children this winter. I look forward to the discussion tonight, but before we begin, I'd like to show a brief video, as I said earlier, that shows what these proposed sprung shelters, we call them, look like and exactly how they operate. If we could cue the video, please.
This is everybody's clump together. It's them, you know what I mean? But them are individuals. And unless you come with, like Pastor and Mayor did that the last time, where they started to individualize people when they got to this, got to the place. The fear of the unknown and just basically, you know, being that homelessness carries a stigma anyway, and so they're talking about bringing it into my neighborhood, you know, I can understand their fear for it, but, I mean, I would just say to them that it is the program that I went through, I don't know who, other than the mayor. I know a few other people's names, but that program worked.
The triage shelter was particularly unique in that it was the city's first low-barrier shelter, and we were able to bring in folks that had been outside for decades and had been sort of traditionally not welcomed or able to connect to the shelter system. By virtue, they have possessions and pets and partners that they were not willing to separate from in order to obtain a shelter bed. And I think one of the things to realize is that these, the folks that we serve are our community members. Easily 80% of the folks that we serve, born, raised here in Sacramento and are in their neighborhoods because that's what they know.
Try to imagine that if we, throughout Sacramento, in lots of different communities, did this, what would happen? You know, what if there were five shelters operating at the same time, each moving 200 chronically homeless people off the streets in 16 months? I mean, we're going to start to make a serious dent in the existing population and put ourselves into a position where we can manage the people that are coming into the system, which they are. There are people who are one paycheck away from living in their car and one ticket away from losing their car.
A recent homeless census in Sacramento County found that homelessness had increased 19% since 2017. Homelessness is one of the most urgent and complex issues for cities across the country, and Sacramento is no exception.
In the days of calling the police department to come arrest our way, how this homeless problem are probably behind us, unless that Boise case gets over to run a street report, we're stuck with it, and that's just our current reality. But at the end of the day, I think it's a good thing because we've had a paradigm shift, right? Instead of saying, "How do we call the police? The police come out and arrest these folks?", we're looking at, okay, what are the root causes of homelessness and how do we fix that? And it's a big paradigm shift, but it's a positive paradigm shift.
The city of Sacramento is committed to solving homelessness for individuals and families and to making our community stronger and safer for everyone in it. Low-barrier shelters are a key part of this strategy, and that's why the city is looking to open new shelters in critical areas across Sacramento.
The immediate change should be that you'll see people who you used to see sleeping outside in your community now engaging in services and in the shelter. And the other important thing to remember is that even if they say no on day one, it doesn't mean on day two they can't say yes, or day three, or day 20, or day 50. Council has committed that any shelter that the city opens will come with mitigation that's appropriate for the community, and what that typically means is an increased presence for police. We've also already stepped up our Public Works presence and Solid Waste presence. And then the third thing that we've done and intend to do in future shelters would be employing the Downtown Streets Team, which is a great nonprofit who works with folks experiencing homelessness or recently who exited homelessness to do beautification and cleanup in the community. And so they're an additional resource, it's very visible, and can do a lot of mitigation, very localized mitigation. We're also trying to ensure that the shelters provide a path into the next step of life, and whether that be a transitional program, or jobs, or employment. And we also want to respect the community that the shelter's in. We want to make sure that the shelter isn't an imposition to those communities, and so we want to make sure that it's safe and secure and well-maintained and well-staffed. We are attempting to model our shelter approach like most large West Coast cities have done: San Francisco, Portland, LA, San Diego, all of them are making similar attempts to change the way that shelters function as part of the larger homeless response system.
The sprung structure is a semi-permanent structure. It is insulated, ventilated, climate-controlled, has a beautiful lighting. It's really, from the inside, a spectacular space, high ceilings, really airy, and a really dignified place to be. When you are inside a sprung, you do not feel like you're in a tent. We're all safer when people are inside, and we know that, you know, navigation centers can help the neighborhood by offering them a resource for people to come in and get that shower, get that meal, and begin their pathway out. And so because navigation centers are operated by invitation only from our homeless outreach team, we don't have people lining up outside. You don't have people, you know, reporting to the nav center, knocking on the door and saying, "Can I please come in tonight?", and then if there's not a bed, hanging out outside. Because they're open during the day, people are not asked to leave at 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning and then, you know, hanging out in the neighborhood all day long. I've been involved with navigation centers for a few years now, and I've really seen them change people's lives, you know, really dramatically, improve people's health, get them on a pathway to housing, and it's incredibly rewarding. If you go out and are talking to somebody on the street and what you have to offer them is socks and a sandwich, you know what? That is one thing, but if you can offer them a bed, a meal, a shower, and a place to be safely, we are going to be so much more successful at resolving encampments and engaging people who are on the street. And just as somebody who's been working in this field for a long time, it's incredibly rewarding to see people relax, to get a good night's sleep, to come in and leave the navigation center, and you don't know if they're staff or a guest. They've had their shower, they're well-dressed, and they're on their way to live their day and live their life. And, you know, homelessness is not a permanent state of being, and the navigation centers really help us support people in that pathway off the street and back into housing.
How does all that make you feel?
Makes me feel great.
Thank you very much. Let me turn it over to our Homeless Services Coordinator, Emily Halken. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. I'm Emily Halken, your Homeless Services Manager.
I think it's hard to... I know, we're working it out. Sorry.
Am I good, Mindy?
I think that's better.
Okay, my apologies.
Not your fault.
Thank you. Again, my name's Emily Halken, Homeless Services Manager with the city, here to talk about our Homeless Services Funding Plan that the mayor framed for us. So as a quick reminder, been in front of you quite a bit, so perhaps I don't need to remind you, but over the course of the last two years, really, the city has made some pretty significant strides, both in funding and programming aimed to increase both the availability but also the dispersion and appropriateness of shelters throughout the city, as well as working to transform some of the larger systems that feed into the shelter. Our focus has been and remains making sure that shelters are client-focused, that they meet the needs of the community, that they quickly and efficiently rehouse people, and also connect them to broader supportive services and interventions, whatever that might be. So as a kind of a quick timeline, in December of 2017, as you know, we opened the Railroad Shelter, intended to be a four-month winter intervention, serving up to 200 people with their pets, partners, and possessions, really in a unique partnership with many collaborative partners throughout the community. Over the course of 2018, the council extended funding and programming for Railroad multiple times while working on some broader sheltering strategies. In October of 2018, the council adopted Resolution 0402 that affirmed the council's intent to offer a variety of sheltering interventions that meet the needs of different sub-populations experiencing homelessness. And while there was an understanding during that resolution and council conversation that for some populations, most notably for families with children, folks experiencing domestic violence, and transition-age youth, that sometimes more traditional transitional housing-type programs might be more appropriate, the council did agree generally that the majority of shelters that we fund and support should strive to reduce barriers to entry and to intensely focus primarily on housing-first principles. In January of this year, our community as a whole received approximately $20 million in two new funding programs of the state. The mayor mentioned HEEP. We also got a small funds from a program we called KESH, which primarily supports some system improvements and standing up new shelters and rehousing programs throughout the community. The city is responsible for administering a portion of those. The county is also responsible, as is Sacramento Steps Forward. Then in February of this year, during your mid-year budget approvals, the council augmented the state funds with $16.7 million in one-time funds to, again, support additional sheltering activities. And in April, you approved what is currently our homeless funding plan, which included, amongst other things, funding for two large rehousing shelters, the Ethan Way or Lot P Shelter and the Capital Park Hotel. And then finally, in May, as you know, the Railroad Shelter closed, and as we shared last week, at the conclusion of that program, we had served over 650 people and successfully exited 40% to a non-homeless situation. So where are we today? While we have made some very significant investments, and I think really helped to move the needle, we do have an opportunity tonight and in the upcoming weeks to make some additional investments and take some of the lessons that we've learned at Railroad and through some of our other programs to continue to improve the way that we approach shelters and rehousing. As a community, we have $36.6 million in one-time funds. This comprises the state funds that the city controls, the county controls, Sacramento Steps Forward controls, as well as the one-time funds that the City Council made available during mid-year.
Excuse me, Emily, just to interrupt, just for clarification, that does not include HEEP 2, which we anticipate to become coming after the first of the calendar year.
Right, it does not include HEEP 2. It also does not include ongoing investments that both the city and the county make on an annual basis through their general fund appropriations, and it also does not include funds administered by SHRA or private donors who have come to the table in the past and I hope will come to the table in the future. So of these funds, and the pie was intended to try to represent the different funding sources, I know the colors are confusing, 66% of it is administered by the city directly, the remainder is either by the county or SSF. 93% is going directly to program delivery, that's either shelter or rehousing or some outreach programs. 71% of it is earmarked as currently envisioned for investments into shelters. This includes enhancing existing shelters but also investing in new shelter expansion throughout the community. And 25% is being used to create a flexible housing pool that will support rehousing folks both directly from the streets through outreach teams and also through sheltering programs. We don't talk about that program a lot here because it's county-administered, but it's incredibly significant as it will help people move out of shelters and move off the street directly into housing. And so we're really excited to have that partnership with the county. Of the $36.6 million, $24 million has already been committed to new programs in addressing three critical components of the homeless system of care. An additional $4.2 million is set aside for some system improvements, investing in existing shelters, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, and some administration, which leaves us at about $8.2 million in the city's purview tonight to put towards new projects. So among the projects, most of them have already been approved by council or the board of supervisors in some cases, are funding for two new downtown streets teams who are working in the River District and the downtown and WX freeway areas. As part of the county's approval for the flexible housing program, the county created an expungement clinic for people experiencing homelessness whose criminal background prevents them from accessing housing or employment, and that's being run through the court system. There are nine new or existing sheltering programs that you have already approved in some form or another. In partnership with the county, the mayor mentioned this at the front end, we have intended to and are moving forward with the reinvestment of 184 beds in the River District. These are beds that are currently located in two county-controlled facilities in the River District but don't operate as low-barrier 24/7 service-rich sheltering programs. We will be combining our funds with county funds as well as HEEP funds to reinvest these two programs and to better align them with the approach that we've been talking about. They will be focusing solely on folks living unsheltered in the River District. They will all be 24/7, they will be low-barrier, they'll be service-rich, and they will be focusing on rehousing. We anticipate releasing an RFP for operators for those two programs in September with contracts awarded by the end of this year and operations starting January. contracts awarded by the end of this year and operations starting January 1st. In addition, both the city and the county have approved funding for 80 new scattered-site shelter beds, 40 through the city and 40 at the county through our collective HEAP and Measure U dollars. This allows us to provide low-barrier shelter in small settings throughout the community and really allows us to adjust and serve some vulnerable populations that are sometimes difficult to fund or difficult to serve in congregate facilities. For the city's component, you'll see those contracts coming forward to you in late September. You approved about a couple months ago, funding for a new 12-bed youth shelter that is being run by the Sacramento LGBT Center and is located in the Midtown area. It just opened this summer and is already at full capacity, and we are looking forward to continuing to work with them on that program. At the same time, you approved a host home pilot program, which will serve at capacity 20 homeless youth at any point in time, partnering with folks throughout the community who can host a youth in their home. The LGBT Center is also the administrator for that. We are looking forward to the opening of the Capital Park Hotel, which SHRA will be administering on our behalf, and that will have between 100 and 180 people at any point in time and should be open in the next month. And then, as the mayor alluded to as well, we released an RFP for $1 million of funding specifically for programs that serve women and/or families, and received really good applications. We are in the process of negotiating with both St. John's and the City of Refuge and look forward to bringing those contracts to you also in late September. And my estimate right now will be that that will add around 20 units, but remember, in the family, when we talk about a unit, that's multiple people, so it could be 40 to 50 people at any time, depending on the size of the family. And then the final, again, not to underscore this, I feel we don't talk about it, is the rehousing component. As part of the county's HEAP administration, they are creating a flexible housing program, which is, will be rehousing people from shelters and through outreach and directly from jail discharge. That program is about to launch and start taking its first referrals, and at capacity, we believe that we can rehouse up to 600 households. So we have made strides in the past year. I hope that you feel that way when you look at that. And in the coming months, we should start seeing the impact of some of these new investments. But given that the negotiations on the Ethan Way shelter site have stalled, we are recommending today that we take those funds that were previously set aside for Ethan Way, plus two smaller balances, some smaller balances of funds that we didn't spend at Railroad, and the remaining HEAP youth funds, and allocate them to new projects. I feel like I'm missing something. Sorry. There are... My apologies, I feel like this is out of order. That's okay. I think I skipped ahead. So what I... This is trying to show you is that with the investments you have already made, before we start talking about the two large sites tonight, this is the totality of the impact that you have made. With the Capital Parks, the scattered sites, the women and family shelters, as well as the county investments, we have already approved a net increase of 292 units for single individuals and youth, and 28 net new units for families. So this is before we even start talking about the actions tonight. I wanted to put in front of you the totality of that impact to date. This is where I thought I was, my apologies. So we have approximately $8.2 million remaining to allocate if we choose not to, if we choose to reallocate them from Ethan Way. Staff's recommendation is to first fund four one-time requests, which are listed here. These are smaller in monetary value, but by no means small in impact. These are important programs to our community that staff recommends that we continue investment in. The first is $20,000 to continue the Hot Shot Program. This is a partnership in the River District that actually Patty Klein Connect was the visionary for this as well. It provides some localized cleanup for some of the encampment issues in the River District. The second is the second year of funding for the Step Shelter. This is the shelter that was opened in Midtown by the LGBT Center. They have matching funds from the California Office of Emergency Services, and we are recommending that we, again, provide that match for the second year using HEAP and a small portion of the Measure U. The last two are projects that you last saw in front of you two years ago. Two years ago, both the LGBT Center and Wind Youth came to us and asked us to match, again, grants with Cal OES to help them both open two new youth-serving programs, and we did that two years ago, and both programs have been successful, and we'd like to support them in continuing to keep those operational. So that's the last two programs. Assuming that council supports these four recommendations, which total $452,000, that would leave us with a balance of $7.8 million left over from the Ethan Way reallocation. And with this funds is the conversation tonight to fund one or more larger triage rehousing shelters and potentially prioritize your Tier 2 funding priorities for HEAP 2 and other investments. So there are three options laid out in your staff report, and I'm going to walk through each of these very briefly. Option A in blue would contemplate taking the entirety of the $7.8 million and putting it towards the Meadow View site. This would allow us to fund the entire capital cost that we estimate for Meadow View of $3.8 million and about 16 months of operations with the remainder. It would leave us with a gap of about $2.3 million should we want to operate it for a full two years. That's option A. Option B, shown in green here, would do that same intervention, but at the Broadway and Alhambra site. Because Broadway and Alhambra has more physical work that needs to be done, the capital costs are slightly more, meaning that we'd be left with a larger operating gap once we completed construction and started it up. Option C in the pink colors suggests taking the entire $7.8 million and funding just the capital for Meadow View and the majority of the capital for Broadway. We'd have about $900,000 deficit, recognizing that the entire operations for both shelters, which for two years would be about $12.5 million, would need to be funded elsewhere. These recommendations are laid out in your staff report, and each option has a separate addendum that you can read through. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think at this point, perhaps I'll turn it back over to the mayor or to Lisa.
Mayor, just, again, I want to hit on my one clarification question because it is important. It's a very thorough presentation, but of course, you didn't put on there, and I understand why, anticipated revenue and resources. But I just want to clarify, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that Governor Newsom signed the state budget, the 2019-20 budget, in early July. It contains 300-plus million dollars for cities to be able to invest in flexible strategies, and it is our estimate, and it's a good estimate, since we helped craft the legislation, that after the first of the year, we're going to receive a full $14 million worth of additional resources. And as I acknowledged in my opening here, that does create some cash flow issues, and you also don't include, as you acknowledged, any private funding, of which I'm committing, as I have numerous times and always delivered, to raise the money to get started with the operation for both of the projects under option C. Am I correct the way I described the legislative, the state legislative act?
Yes, that's my understanding of it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we do have... Now, I was going to turn it over to SAC Steps Forward to complete, and Sacramento State to complete the presentation, and then if there are council questions before we get to public comment, I'm happy to do however you want. My idea was to hear the... My idea was to hear the public testimony first and then turn it over to the council. But if you want to ask questions, Councilmember Carr, Shanir, before that, I'm fine with whatever you want to do. Can we do... Let's do SAC State first, and then we'll come right to you.
Okay.
Okay, then let's do that. You guys, thank you very much. Just wait a minute. Thank you.
Emily, does the county operate large shelters?
The county is the funder of two larger family shelters that I believe each have about 30 units, which at full... Families are hard because you never know the size of family, but I think could be upwards of 80 people.
So they don't operate a 100-bed shelter?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Does the state?
I don't believe the state operates shelters at all.
Does the federal government?
No, I do not believe the federal government operates shelters.
So no one's operating these large shelters but this proposal here for us? The Capital Park Hotel, is that a low-barrier shelter?
You'd need to ask SHRA about, and I'm assuming they're here, about who the intended target population is. I really can't speak to that.
And the prohibitions that you talked about, clean, no drug use, no camping, were you able to enforce that on Railroad Avenue?
I'm sorry, I missed...
The prohibitions that you mentioned, you're going to keep it clean, you will make sure there was no camping, no drug use, were you able to enforce that on Railroad Avenue?
So I... Well, are you talking about inside the shelter or outside the shelter?
Outside the shelter.
So I'm not sure. I mean, we worked very diligently to, you know, reduce activity outside the shelter. Was there still camping? Yes, that site had a lot of camping beforehand, and my guess is still does now. We worked closely with the businesses on the street, with the operator, but I certainly would never say that there was no camping or illegal activities outside the shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Carr. Let's now ask Ms. Bates and Professor Bayaki to please come forward, if you will.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Bates with Sacramento Steps Forward. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some information about our most recent point-in-time count. You know, Sacramento Steps Forward and SAC State have been working very hard to be able to improve the way in which we do our counts each year. As many of you know, the methodology was quite improved, the coverage was expanded, and the survey data that we are able to collect in the count was quite robust. And so the point-in-time count data that was released in June has a lot of rich information. Some of it's hard to decipher, so we want to also be able to share with you not only the overall count, but then some city-specific data. There's been a lot of numbers that have been put out in various places, and we want to make sure everyone has all the context for the conversation tonight. As a reminder, the point-in-time is really an estimate of all individuals experiencing homelessness, and it's a broad count that's done once a year at the coldest time of the year. And in addition to the point-in-time count, your homeless response system also collects data through the homeless management information system. And so both of these points of information and data present different pictures of our overall system. In the coming months, as Emily had mentioned, the KESH funding, we just actually received it from the state finally, and they're a little bit behind on the KESH, we'll be doing a lot of system analysis with the data in the point-in-time count and in the homeless management information system that will further inform conversations in the coming months. But this time, we'd like to ask if Dr. Bayakio can present the information about the point-in-time count for you all.
Thank you, Doctor. Professor?
I don't have an easy name, so Dr. Bayaki or Bioki or whatever, it works. Dr. B works as well.
I got it right.
Yeah.
Close.
So I'm an assistant professor in the Division of Social Work at Sacramento State. I'm also a faculty fellow at the Institute for Social Research. And Lisa's asked us, we've been collaborating with Sacramento Steps Forward for the last couple of years on the homeless point-in-time count, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the estimates that we have for the unsheltered portion of the count. It's a bit blurry, I don't know if...
Sorry? What's... Oh, we're trying to get the power.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just take a second and make sure that we can get it right here. This week homelessness, next week technology. Okay, we may have a technical problem, but why don't you describe the numbers the best that you can here and clarify it? Thank you.
Sure. So I'm going to first start talking about the county estimate, and then kind of work down and talk a little bit about the city, and then families, and then individuals experiencing chronic homelessness. So we reported that on any given night, approximately 5,570 individuals are experiencing homelessness throughout the county. This is a very large number compared to previous counts, was a substantial increase from 20, 15, and 19%. But the kind of startling or things that were shocking to us was just the proportion of people who were sleeping outside. 70% of the individuals that were counted were outside, so that translates to approximately 3,900 individuals sleeping outside. And in previous counts, Sacramento used to report more people in shelters than people outside, and this is a change for us that we've noticed in the last two years, but it is consistent with the rest of the state of California. Currently, on average, 69% of people in the state of California who are experiencing homelessness are unsheltered. So while that's a large increase, it is consistent with other communities. One of the things that we reported in the report that we discussed is the proportion of people experiencing chronic homelessness. We estimate that approximately 30% of individuals are experiencing chronic homelessness, so they have spent two years continuously homeless, or they've experienced more than four episodes in the past three years, and they have a disabling condition. That's actually a lower proportion than we actually estimated in 2017. And so in the report, we highlight that possibly some of the things that the city and the county are doing are having an impact on this group of individuals. The majority of people experiencing homelessness are not chronically homeless, they're actually kind of going back and in-out of homelessness. So I think it's important to remember that the point-in-time count is just people experiencing homelessness tonight, and that 5,570 number could really translate to around 10,000 to 11,000 people in the county experiencing homelessness throughout the year. Some of the other startling statistics that we report for us that we thought was kind of disturbing is the number of unsheltered families. Traditionally, these counts report a lot of families in shelters and very few families outside, but we actually found just as many families sleeping outside as families that were sleeping indoors. So we estimated approximately 195 families experiencing homelessness on any given night. They represent about 20% of all individuals experiencing homelessness, and a significant number of them are sleeping in cars. So that was also something that we were, we highlight in the report as kind of a startling trend, the number of families that are sleeping in cars are in the hundreds throughout the county. Lisa asked me to, or asked us at Sacramento State to think about what these estimates mean in the context of the city of Sacramento. And so what is the distribution of homelessness in Sacramento as opposed to the rest of the county? We estimate that of that unsheltered group, the majority of them are in the city of Sacramento. So we estimate that on any given night, approximately 2,900 individuals are experiencing homelessness within the city jurisdiction. We estimate of that 2,900, 1,000 are women. Not to contradict the mayor, but you said, talked about, single women. There are a number of single women who are unsheltered. We estimate approximately 500 single women. There's also women in families, but there's also women who are not in families, but sometimes in a partnership. And so that 1,000 can kind of represent people in different situations. Taking a closer look at families with children, you know, we're talking about households or multiple people within families, and so that 200 number that I quoted, that 195 experiencing homelessness throughout the county, that translates to around 1,150 individuals, so children, parents, and so forth. Within the city, we estimate that of that 195 families, 150 of them are in the city of Sacramento. I think it's worth pointing out, again, that the point-in-time is just people experiencing homelessness tonight, and we know from the research that families sometimes are going back and forth, and so I actually think this is a conservative estimate. I would assume that it could be as two or three times higher if you think about a longer period of time, families are kind of going in and out of homelessness. In terms of single-headed female households with children, we estimate that approximately 60 of them are experiencing homelessness each night in Sacramento. And so this doesn't count women who are in shelters or in programs, but literally families that are either sleeping in tents, families that are sleeping in cars, or families that just didn't want to report the exact location that they're sleeping in. We can... We can talk a little bit about chronic homelessness, you know...
It's working.
All right. We estimate that 30 percent translates to about 1,200 individuals experiencing chronic forms of homelessness in the county. Within the city, that translates to approximately 900 individuals. There are a number of women who are chronically homeless and by themselves. We approximate there are 140 chronically homeless women in the city, and we approximate, we approximate 25 families that are single, female-headed with families or children who are also chronically homeless. And I'm sure I don't have to tell you that for families experiencing homelessness, it can often be a traumatic experience. The research suggests that victimization of women and children on the streets is pretty common. And so, these statistics, I know as a researcher I'm supposed to be very objective, but they're very startling and concerning, and I'm glad that the city is considering efforts to address this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good, a question from Ms. Bates and Dr. Bayaki. You are, you've done the data on the point-in-time count, and you are the individual leading our continuum of care, and I'm very glad, by the way, and appreciative of all of your work, especially, all the time, especially over the last days as we've tried to grapple with how to go about this. Two questions for you. Is, in your opinion, is there a large demand for high-volume triage shelters inside the city of Sacramento? Is there demand? I'm not asking if, your opinion, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, but is there demand?
We have an overwhelmingly high number of unsheltered individuals, so...
Okay. And similar, similar question, just to break it down. Is there large demand for high-volume triage shelters that serve women and children in the city of Sacramento?
The data that we just presented shows...
Excuse me, please don't shout out.
A substantial amount of women and children that are unsheltered.
Okay. Sir, I'm going to ask you to leave if you shout out one more time, okay? It's a public hearing, please. Can you repeat the answer?
The data that we just presented shows a substantial amount of unsheltered women and children, so...
Thank you. Okay, let us now, Councilwoman Carr, do you want to ask them a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Appreciate the work that you did on the point-in-time count.
Thank you.
And you mentioned that 30 percent of the homeless population was chronic, that means 70 percent are in-and-out transitionally homeless.
Yeah.
The people that you came across, what percentage would you say just need first, last, and a security deposit to get back on their feet?
That's a hard question to answer. I mean, I understand asking that question, but who, you're basically asking who would be helped very quickly by just a short intervention? There are a number of families that could be helped with a shorter intervention, I would say.
Would you think we could get 20, 30 percent off the street right now if we invested in that type of program?
Well, before you, are you aware of the available housing to be able to place them?
I, it's kind of beyond my expertise about the housing stock or really the shelter stock.
We wouldn't expect you to know that, and I was asking the question. I had the floor.
Yes, sir.
So, there are some percentage of the people could be housed right now just with a little bit of support. And the children that you came, did you actually do the count, or did you just work the numbers?
I actually did part of the count. I actually went out and interviewed folks.
So, the shelter that's being proposed is a low-barrier shelter for women? That means that they could come in with their addiction, if they have one, with their mental illness, if they have one, with whatever things they have that made them homeless in the first place?
Sure.
Is that a good place to put children?
Excuse me?
Is that a good place to put children? I think if, you know, and I'm just answering now as a professor of social work and not as a consultant, but I think...
I put you on the spot, I shouldn't have asked that question. Okay, I'll let you go.
Well, I was going to say, I think families with children, I mean, there's women who are addicted to substance use, and I think they deserve shelter as anybody else.
Yeah, if we can help them by getting them into a house or an apartment, and they don't need a lot of intervention, and there are a significant number of people out there like that, why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we get the low-hanging fruit, get those people off the street? Thanks, Dr. B, appreciate your work.
Thank you both very much. There may be, there may be other questions down the line, so do, do very much appreciate your work. Okay, let us begin with the testimony again, that last count, it was in the 76 now? Okay, then I'm, I'm going to suggest the following, as we often do with controversial issues. I want to allocate an hour aside for each, for each side, and, and I think that is fair. And would ask people, you get two minutes, but I would encourage people, if you can, make your point succinctly, like if you're opposed or in support, to say it succinctly, and if you can keep your comments to a minute, we'll be able to move through this with everybody being heard and with us being able to have plenty of time for the city council to debate. Yes?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you distinguishing between the two?
I think, but, that's a tough one, I know. It's about even, I think.
I have equal...
There's, there's equal, I think if anybody is opposed to, support would be support for option C, both, opposition would be opposition to both or one. That's the way I think we ought to do it.
And I have equal that did not mark.
And, and then equal who did not mark, so how many are those?
There's probably a third of each.
A third of each? Oh, what? Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I think maybe the other thing, and we want to hear as many people as possible. I'm reflecting back, I forget which hearing we had, but where you actually limited it to one minute, maybe if you went down to 90 seconds, that way everybody gets a shot.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. We're going to go an hour of opposition, an hour of support. I'm going to ask people voluntarily to try to limit themselves to one minute, but you will be permitted to. And then we will take those who are neither supportive or opposed, either in-between the opposition and support, or, or after, probably in the middle. That's what we'll do. We'll go opposition, neutrality, and then support. Okay?
Thank you. I will call a few names at a time, feel free to line up in the middle aisle. First is Jody McCoy, then Denise McCoy, Jesse Reese, Raymond Taylor. Jody McCoy?
Yeah?
Please, sir.
Yeah, I'm a Meadowview neighbor, and I think that, I moved in Meadowview about a year ago, and it's a nice neighborhood. And the jewel of that neighborhood is a community center. And I think that if we were to do what has been suggested, putting a homeless shelter right next to the community center, that would no longer be the jewel of that community. There's lots of other places to move, this, this shelter. There's a place down Freeport and Consumeness. I know it's somebody else's property, but it's a state problem, community problem, county problem, city problem, well, let's get all these people together. City, state, county, let's get them all together and find a different location, because putting it next to a community center is not the right place to put this. It's not good for the community. If you, if that, if you're going to call that a community center, that would not be good for the community. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir, for coming.
Denise McCoy?
Okay, I oppose this, the shelters, both of them, because you made drastic changes to the, to the proposal that you gave to the community on January the 12th. And the proposal that you did give, I found severe flaws and inconsistencies in what you told us, and so, I'm assuming that there's flaws and inconsistencies to all this that you have going on here, too. I believe that you should have to take this back to the, the community, so we have time to actually look at everything that you have opposed here and make proper comments. It's not fair for us to find out about all this, these, these changes from the women and children shelters after we get here. That's not community engagement. Also, I'm wondering why you're pushing shelters in, in Oak Park and Meadowview anyway. The reason that you gave at the 12th, on the, on the, on the 12th, was that there was 962 service calls in District 8, but in District 6, there's 2,400, I mean, 2,045 service calls. In District 5, there's 3,103 service calls. In District 4, there's 9,976 service calls. That's almost 10,000. Now, this also includes the land park area.
Thank you for your comments, your two minutes is complete.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jesse Reese, then Raymond Taylor, then Barbara Ram.
Good evening to the mayor and council. My name is Jesse Reese, president of the Meadowview Neighborhood Association. I stand here in opposition of the homeless shelter to be posed, to be proposed on Meadowview Road. We are not against helping the homeless, we know we all have a problem, but not on our main thoroughfares. And we have consistently stated not adjacent to the Aquatic Center, the Salmon and Bunny Pinnell Community Center, the Baseball Diamond, and et cetera. According to the police stats, Meadowview has been the second lowest in crime for quite some time, but that is not the public perception. Community leaders have been working very hard to try to change that perception, but here we go again. Just because the city owns that property, it should not, should not be utilized for that purpose. Meadowview Road is embarking on an urban design plan and beautification. We want to protect Bonnie Pinnell's dream and her legacy of making Meadowview better and not worse. I would state here again, we all are in favor of helping the homeless, but not to rush and get it wrong. The community deserved better, not on our main thoroughfare. I could stand here and go on and on and on, but not to be redundant, not to be repetitive, I would just urge the council members to vote to disapprove the mayor's recommendation on a homeless shelter located to be posed on Meadowview Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Raymond Taylor, then Barbara Ram, then Estella Drake.
Yes, my name is Raymond Taylor, I'm the vice president of the Meadowview Neighborhood Association, and I do appreciate having a forum of which where we, the people, can voice our opinions that help shape the lives with the services developed, available, excuse me. Politics on this case, the homeless issue being a personal one, not for the people, as Californians, a state issue. We must do whatever. The boundaries, talking about cities, counties, private property, the homeless situation can be a success, not this big problem. Neighborhoods are for families, period. We need a site for working homeless facility, long-term care center away from neighborhoods where people can get the services to help them become a neighbor in a neighborhood. The mayor himself said homelessness is a state issue. Even in his video, he said it's going to need more policing. Working homeless facility are not the obstacles needed in a neighborhood. The term shelter is not what we're doing. We're talking about a working homeless facility, long care, long-term care. That's what we need. We don't need shelters, we need something long-term.
Barbara Ram, Estella Drake, then Gary Lee.
Hi, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. I just wanted to read this letter that I had provided to the clerk.
You might, you might summarize it with your two minutes here.
So, it's the ideas for locating Sacramento Steinberg Haven for Hope, and it's a request to bring to the council meeting today homeless shelter sites, and that's what I did. I have attached a map of what is the Sutter's Landing, which I believe is owned by the city of Sacramento. On the map, I measured most of the site, and it looks to be close to 200 acres. And Mr. Mayor, last week you mentioned needing 200 to 300 acres for a Sacramento Haven for Hope, and we just have those 200 acres. In a recent article also, the Sacramento County that was in the B looks to spend mental health funds totaling $126.1 million. And then noted on the document on the city of Sacramento website, Pathways to Health and Home was awarded $64 million to implement whole-person care from July 1st of 2017 to December 31st of 2020. Per the article inside the Inside East Sac August edition, homeless numbers jump. The city of Sacramento has amassed almost $100 million to combat this crisis. So, I can't really add that well, but it comes to $290.1 million available. And so, anyway, you could read this, but the Haven for Hope in San Antonio cost 100.5 million, and the site was only 22 acres, so I'm proposing Sutter's Landing for Sacramento Steinberg Haven for Hope.
Good evening. I hope you remember this beautiful lady right here. Good evening, council members and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Estella Drake, and I live in Love Meadowview. A few years ago, Councilwoman Bonnie Pinnell called to meet us at our Neighborhood Watch captain's home. When she arrived, she said she was retiring, and her pick was Larry Carr, but only if we okayed him. That's how much she loved us. Upon leaving, her last words to our Neighborhood Watch was, "Take care of Meadowview like you have been doing." And yes, we have. That's why we're second lowest in crime. This photo is at her retirement, and we still did not know why. The next time we saw her, she had no voice, and not long after that, she passed away. And I arrived at her service along with so many other people that loved her. Those that know her will recall the Bonnie Pinnell look. So, at this point, she's giving you guys all a look.
Yes.
And it's heck no, not next to my beloved, safe place for kids and families. As a real estate professional, I do a lot of rehabs on homes. I go into homes, and I can look and see who did what and how it was done, because I'm very particular. And we can go into a home and say, "That's lipstick on a pig." And this is what I'm calling this, lipstick on a pig. It's short-term, not long-term, and it's not going to solve. I am here to let you know that today I am the voice of Bonnie Pinnell and the community. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Gary Lee, and then Stavante Clark.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Gary Lee. I am a Realtor, but I'm not your typical Realtor. I've handled hundreds of foreclosures, and I remember back in the day of '07 when I was watching the evening news, and the Meadowview area was featured as the fastest-falling community in America for price-values. I don't know if any of you were around back then, but I do remember that day, because I made a lot of money selling the homes in Meadowview super cheap. Back then, the housing prices were 40 to $170,000. $170 got you a year-old house, it was about 2,500 square feet. Today, the same homes are selling in the mid-200 to $450,000 range. They've all gone up a couple hundred thousand, which is, you know, all... thousand, which is, you know, all due to pride of ownership and also the community, which is today has a very low crime rate, pride of ownership, and a working community. To this day, I still represent foreclosures out there. Currently, I represent five subdivision properties that are hard to sell. Why are they hard to sell? It's not because of Sacramento County City Council, because I don't have anything in Sacramento County, but I have it in neighboring counties. And the whole reason that we cannot sell these properties is because of the regulations. These properties that I represent are prime for affordable housing. But you can't get affordable housing in Sacramento because of all the fees that are involved in building a subdivision, all the time it takes. You know that it takes an average of two years to put together a subdivision from start to finish. And these properties that I represent have already been approved before. They fell out because the housing market fell out. It's a very sad situation. What you guys are doing wrong, or you guys are not looking at a long-term solution, you guys, I agree, we have a big problem, but that problem is only going to fix it short-term. We need to be looking at long-term solutions. We need to be looking at short-term housing. You guys need to be looking at the whole picture and not just this little bit of it. All you're doing is throwing away money. San Francisco, invest $2 million a month in just cleaning up poop.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Sacramento's right behind you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stavante Clark, then Julian Love, then Tim Boyd.
All right, I'll be quick. I don't need to hold two minutes. How you doing, Larry Carr? I think we all in this room agree that a shelter is needed. I really think that we just don't agree at the location of the shelter. There's a site I just seen today that was given to me by Dr. Porter. Dr. Porter here, right here. It's a site on Freeport, right? And it's owned by RT. And they're willing to negotiate about that site. I don't know if you guys looked at that site, or if that site has been checked out. But it's a good-looking site, and I think we should be able to at least have negotiations there. Because the site that's right next to my grandma's is right by a school, Fortress School, correct? And it's not, it's just not a good look for the community right now. Even, I think, having the women and the children there, just that whole, it's just too early right now. I think the process isn't really thought out. Oh, yeah, right there. Thank you so much. Can we get that on there? Bam, right there. This the site we need to be looking at. This site right here. It's not by grandmas. It's not by the schools. You know, it fits the guidelines and the criteria you guys are asking for and looking for. And I think it should be looked at and considered very closely when making this decision. So I really believe that we should be focusing on my resource center I've been talking about, in that library. But, you know, that's just me. But, you know, that's just all I want to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stavante.
The next speaker is Julian Love, then Tim Boyd, then Jake Mossaw.
All right, hello. My name is Julian Love. I live and work in Oak Park. And I believe public policy and political decisions like this, which determine the location of homeless triage shelters, are ones that should allow for the community to have input. To my knowledge, not one Oak Park organization has formally endorsed this proposal. And more importantly, the greater Oak Park community has not been engaged in the conversation. There should be a process that is spelled out, as these decisions have a huge impact, not only on the recipients of service, but the neighborhood at large. The public deserves true input in a process like this. And the reality is, there was a process for this. It was part of the general plan. The community already went through a substantial vetting process to address this exact issue. The plan was not done during a time of distress, during a time of expedient political decisions. It was one that engaged the community at multiple levels, not just from a hand-selected group of people, as has been the case with the meetings held by council member Chenier. And through that process, the community already determined the rules and locations of these various shelters, to ensure that impacts to children and residents were mitigated against, while still ensuring that a homeless community gets the services they need. So we ask the council not to ignore the public and stick to the guidelines and parameters that are laid out in the general plan to address emergency shelters. Not only does the general plan lay out the designated locations, it also ensures that these shelters do not exist within 500 feet of a school. So if you take a look at this document here, this is in Oak Park, the shelter is proposed right here. So within that location, there's several schools within 500 feet of that location. And according to the general plan, that's not in the regulations. So we ask you to stick to your own rules and not put the location right there next to schools.
Tim Boyd, Jake Mossaw, and then Margaret Fortune.
I got to say, I'm not saying hello to any of y'all, because I'm ashamed of all of you, but I want to say thank you to this wonderful audience tonight, because, you know, I've been coming down here for 30 years, and nothing has changed. The lies continue. The deceit continues. There's no transparency in this house. Y'all ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Stavante heads up. I would love to nominate you for city council. Betty Williams, we need you to run, because we need some honesty in this house. Furthermore, I don't think you should be pimping out Oak Park or Del Paso Heights. We've had enough of this mess over the years. And leave Meadowview alone. Bonnie Pinnell is crying up in heaven looking at this mess that you've created. Mayor Steinberg, you are a version of Donald Trump. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Jake Mossaw, then Margaret Fortune, then Michael Emerson.
Hello. My name is Jake Mossaw, and I'm an Oak Park resident. I want to be clear that I'm not anti-homeless shelters, but I am pro-equity. The communities of Oak Park and Meadowview have not struggled the way they have the last half-century, because residents are inherently flawed. Public policy has set up these communities to fail. Last century, neighborhoods like Land Park and Curtis Park said, "Not in my backyard," and created restrictive real estate clauses based on race to exclude Black and Hispanic residents from these communities. Additionally, the siphoning off of Oak Park from the downtown corridor through the construction of the freeway, and the public policy decisions to remove the public library and the 5th Avenue off-ramp had detrimental impacts in the community from both an economic and education standpoint. Yet here we all are again, being called nimby's, because we have the nerve to question yet another public policy decision that could determine the effect, and the effect the neighborhood and our children. If you want to talk about nimby, show this map. Can I get some time back?
You're on.
Well, I'm not, my map's not up.
Hold on. Well, yes, stop the clock. Don't worry.
Yep. So if you'll see, this is Curtis Park. This shows the neighborhood that council member Chenier lives in. Here's where he determined to put the proposed shelter. These dots represent the current sexual predators in this whole map. You'll notice that there's not one, not one in his backyard. Yet this shelter won't even screen for sexual predators, and we have 2,500 students in the surrounding area. The reality is that the true nimby's are those who propose shelters in their district but outside of their own neighborhood. This is not equity. This is the same old, same old. The three criteria laid out for these shelters is that it was on city property with access to utilities, pavement, and more than one acre in size. Well, right here, Curtis Park meets all those criteria. It's all within 1.5 miles, which is 67% of referrals. But is it going to be put there, nominated there? No. Because it's next to your homes and your children. And that's when equity goes out the door. This is not where, or the type of investment that Measure U was supposed to do in these communities. The general plan, to Julian's point, was designed to disrupt the cycle and create true equity.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, next speaker is Margaret Fortune, then Michael Emerson, then Chelsea Emerson.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Fortune. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the mayor and the council. I've known many of you for many years, sometimes two decades. And I too consider myself to be a steward of the region, which is why I created a network of schools focused on closing the African-American achievement gap by preparing kids for college starting in kindergarten. When the turbulence hit Meadowview with regards to the shooting of an unarmed Black man, I had a decision to make about where I would locate my next school. And I wanted to bring good news to Meadowview. And so I decided to bring this project specifically to Meadowview, to Genesis Church, which is in, within sight of, which is in sight of the backyard where Stephon Clark was shot. It's a $10.5 million investment in this community. We went through an eight-month entitlement process and got a unanimous vote from the planning commission. Two weeks ago, we found out about the location of this shelter across the street, less than 500 feet. I just, I too want to remind you of the city's general plan that was adopted back in 2017. And it specifically says that emergency shelters should be at least 500 feet from a public park, a public or private school, a church, or a single-family residential zone. I just want to encourage the city to follow the same rules and follow its own rules and be equitable in following rules for all communities. Lastly, I want to say that there's an alternative. This alternative was offered by the regional transit, because they own this land. And they said they would make it available when there was a proposal to put
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
...a homeless shelter on Florin Road.
My next speaker is Michael Emerson, then Chelsea Emerson, and Betty Williams.
Hello, city councilman and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Mike Emerson. Man, I'm not the smartest guy in the house. I'm not the best speaker. But I just want to say that I agree with most other opinions in here, statements, that we, I totally agree that we need to do something like yesterday. But I think we need to do some more homework to make sure that we're really going to help this problem. In particular, I'm talking about addicted, drug-addicted folks. I know I'm also not the only recovering addict and recovering alcoholic in this room as well. And all I know is what I see every day, and that's the same thing that everyone else here sees. People are doing, these addicts are doing whatever they want, whenever they want, and we're all, we're being victimized, businesses, residents. So I don't know what the answer is. But I do know that we have a lot of addicts out there that, for whatever reason, right now, they're in their disease. How can we help these people? I don't have the answer. But I know right now, we're enabling them. We're making, we have so many addicts here, because it's easy here, you know? Whether it's Nevada that's putting them on a one-way bus or a one-way train, go to Sacramento. I don't know if you've seen the encampments that we have along our river. We've got some really nice camouflaged encampments. As far as the numbers go, the people we need, I think the numbers are a lot higher than
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chelsea Emerson, then Betty Williams.
I'd like to pass by Taiwan.
Thank you, Betty Williams, then Daphne Harris, then Dr. Takoy Porter.
Betty's coming up. Somebody else shout her back.
Chelsea said she waived her
Chelsea's waiving her time. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, Ms. Williams, welcome.
Thank you, mayor, council members. My name is Betty Williams. I'm the president of the Greater Sacramento NAACP. And I'm sitting and standing here tonight, opposed to the existing site of the homeless shelter in Meadowview area next to the Pinnell Center. We're not opposed to supporting the homelessness. Homelessness look like me and everyone in this room. And so we're just opposed to the location. So we would like to support homelessness in a different location. When I came here tonight, originally, another individual called, a pastor, he had a church with 3.6 acres that met your criteria. I had him call your office. They referred him to somewhere else where he wanted to be part of it. But after listening to Pastor Takoy and his presentation, I am yielding my support behind them. The Sacramento NAACP is joining the California, I'm sorry, the Sacramento Black Chamber Fortune Schools and the Genesis Church in changing the site to the Freeport in Florin. The individual at the church that originally wanted to change also had a contractor that was willing to do tiny houses and also train individuals in vocational services in building the tiny houses, which would have created an economic engine for a skill set that's missing, that pays well, that would go back into the community. So those are the things that we would like to bring with the new site. And the money that you talked about earlier that would go to the Pinnell site, that money still can go in the new site. And so I would like for you to reconsider or not at least vote on this site tonight, and at least consider the other site and transferring that money and other facilities.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next speaker is Daphne Harris, Dr. Takoy Porter, Sr., then Simeon Gant.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daphne Harris. I'm a real estate broker here in the Sacramento area. I wanted to share this information with you. I've lived in District 8 for, we moved there in 1970. The key thing that I'm concerned about is that we're not looking at the zoning of the locations that the city is looking for. Meadowview is a C2 class zone, and I think your general plan requires it be a C4, M1, or M2. There are several sites that are available within the Sacramento area. There are several owners that are willing to discuss this with the city, but I don't think they were approached. If you look at the location that you selected initially, it is across the street from a church. It is next door to the community center. It is at the Aquatic Center. It is the one safe haven that children have in the Meadowview area. We are not opposed to homeless shelters, but we are opposed to the location which was selected. We also were looking for you to work with the county to find locations that have actually already been identified, that are a part of your general plan, that we are looking for you to actually follow your general plan. A lot of the homeless were also pushed or moved out of this area of town. This location here is going to be a open-air farmer's market, which may be a consideration that you may need to work with Mr. Bardis and see if he would negotiate converting that into a homeless location or a homeless shelter.
Thank you.
Dr. Takoy Porter, Sr.
Well, hello, everyone. You don't talk back. I'm a pastor, so I'm used to talk back. Takoy Porter, pastor of Genesis Church in Meadowview, been pastoring there for 20 years. The church has been there for 30 years. We don't Meadowview. And our opposition to this proposal is not one against, again, homeless, like everyone here is saying, but on the location, it's right across the street from my church. And we ride across the street from our school. And so with that, we have some concerns with that. And one is, you're not following your own plan, the city's 2035 general plan, where it states that such shelter should be, must be located at least 500 feet from parks, schools, churches, single-family homes. And we qualify for two out of the four. Your proposal for Meadowview violates your own rules, and we would just want you to follow those. Also, follow the city policy that you have established in Black and Brown neighborhoods, as you do others. This is, this could be a civil rights issue. And by passing this, you are saying, you are saying that obvious that all districts are created equal. With all of that, was presented here tonight, I hear a lot of uncertainty, a lot of guesswork. And you said that we could find another site to do so. So we did. And it deserves an investigation. We should put some time out to look at this alternative site. And I'm going to ask you, mayor, please stop trying to shame Meadowview into feeling guilty about not helping somebody. We are our brother's keepers. We know about helping each other. And I think trying to shame us and trying to take the moral high ground, you don't have the moral high ground here. Don't have the moral high ground here. And I support you wholeheartedly.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
If you would just help us out in this. Thank you.
And next speaker is Simeon Grant, then Vicki Boyd, then Tommy Whitlow.
Excuse me. I want to listen to all the opposition. I have to run to the restroom quickly. I'll be right back.
I don't blame you, brother. I worked here for years. Takes a long time, you need it.
Good evening, Mr. Gant.
Good evening. So my name's Simeon Gant, and we are certainly all very concerned about the homeless issue in Sacramento. in Sacramento. For decades, we've just kind of watched the haves and the have-nots, the division divide. And now, we want to hastily try to fix it on the backs of an under-resourced neighborhood and community. This community has issues with transportation. This is, this community has issues with social services. This, this community is a food desert. And yet, we want to put a homeless shelter into this community and continue to stretch it thinner than it already is. Fortune School is putting up a school. We were looking at this community and saying, hey, we want to help grow the community as opposed to kind of make it a situation that's, it's already struggling. We're going to make more struggle in a situation, and that's just a recipe for failure and disaster. We all know that if Sam Pennell was here today, he'd be cursing.
Yes, thank you, thank you. That's going to piss somebody out.
If Sam Pennell was here today, he would also say that, you know, we, we created this, this plan, this general plan, 2035 plan, and now we're going against it to put in the Meadowview community. I also run a nonprofit, and we, I have students who are to this day homeless. They're couch surfing. And we have plans, and my plans, our plans have largely been ignored. And so, you know, we say, look, at least look at these other locations. At least put it in a situation or a place where they can, where they can actually get services and, and not just put it someplace that's already stretched too thin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gant.
Our next speaker is Vicki Boyd, and then Tommy Whitlow.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Vicki Boyd from the National Council of Negro Women and also Bay Pac Sacramento. And I'm in opposition to this proposal. In the South Area Period, I think it needs to be placed in industrial, heavily industrial area, which is located on this map. It's near a shelter, an existing shelter already, and then it should just be placed where it's not impacting residential period in, not just Meadowview, but in the South Area Period. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Tommy Whitlow, then Rick Stevenson, then Robert Copeland.
Good evening, Ms. Whitlow.
Good evening, Ms. Carrera, my councilperson. Mayor, council, councilpersons, I'm Tommy Whitlow, and I am against the homeless shelter being placed next to the Pennell Bunny, the Samuel and Bunny Pennell Community Center. I'm not against this shelter for homelessness. Does Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, does the shelter have to be, can the shelter be less than the number of people that you have, you have assigned it to? And maybe you could find another place in the Meadowview area for it if, if, with fewer people being sheltered. As, you know, I'm here primarily because when Bunny Pennell was here, there was no new liquor licenses in the Meadowview area in District 8. And if she was here today, she would not, she would be opposed to the shelter center being next to the Samuel and Bunny Pennell Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The, the following speakers did not check in favor or in opposition, so they're neutral. The first is Rick Stevenson, then Robert Copeland, then Effie Gant.
Yes, I wanted to bring up a matter that I haven't heard considered with the various things with the city. On Friday, a couple of friends and I went down and toured several of the cabin communities in Oakland. We were very surprised at how well they were managed, how clean everything was inside and out, you know, within the facility and the fencing around it. One was in an industrial area, one was in a residential area. They were for 40 residents each, well-managed, small footprint, no coagulation of, of people or other, you know, or garbage around the outside of it. And I really wanted to encourage the city to look at this as a part of your answering mix and things, and I would like to try to talk to some council members about this in the future because we got a lot of information, we have a lot of the documentation from them. And by the way, I would like to support the Meadowview neighborhood and suggest that that site be perhaps relocated to the Freeport and Florin area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Robert Copeland.
I belong to Poor People's Campaign Sacramento Homes Organization, the Sacramento Tenants Union, and I have a few questions on these plans. The Capital Park Hotel, did you know it's occupied right now? What are you going to do with the tenants that live there currently? Two, why don't you do more outreach before you make these plans and come up better alternate Three, 650-some people were at that railroad drive shelter, 40% success rate? What happened to the other 60%? Were they failures? Where'd they go?
On the street.
I mean, do a better job.
Thank you.
I've heard, I've heard a few bad issues about the, the railroad shelter. So, it wasn't all good as that Mayor Steinberg and City Council Emily Hellicott says. Do your work better. I mean, really? Next issue, you want the people in the shelter to go out of the shelter in permanent housing? Is there permanent housing for these people after they leave the shelter in Sacramento that they can afford? I don't think so.
No.
Come on, you have not thought this plan out thoroughly. Thank you.
Mr. Copeland.
Our next speaker is Effie Gant, and then, following Mrs. Gant is Priscilla Barnes.
Good evening, Councilmember Larry Carr, Mayor, and all the council members. First of all, I just want to state my name is Effie Gant. I'm the association president for the Hampton Station community. And first of all, I want to say this as a community representative and one that lives in the community. I want everyone to know at this point that we are concerned pertaining to homeless people. Sacramento, from me being here, the time I've been here, is known as a compassionate, caring, merciful city. So, therefore, I really focus in on the category of the homeless people. We cannot take every homeless person and put them in one category. There's many problems and many issues that we have to address with integrity and truth. So, therefore, what I'm saying, we are focusing in as a whole, as districts, as a city, as a state, and as a country. We're focusing in on mercy, love, and unity based upon all cultures. We do not oppose to the point that we need to address this issue, definitely, but we must address it in a way that's going to help the homeless and help them move forward and be substantial in reference to their homelessness and move forward and become citizens and accomplish their purpose and their goals as a human being. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and I'm asking-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Priscilla Barnes, then Kevin Carter, then James Fago Clark.
Good evening.
I have a very brief statement as a follow-up to what the lady was saying, actually, that without triage, the monstrous problem that we have throughout our country will not get better. I'm not even talking about solving it. I'm talking about get better. And we, as a group, have come to plead with you for a serious group, not people that are just passively interested in saying, oh, um, what is this? But a serious working group to go to San Antonio and learn about the San Antonio model because it is, has been working for 10 years. It is effective. It's doing the job. Please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Kevin Carter, then James Fago Clark. And again, feel free to line up in the aisle. Kevin Carter, James Fago Clark, Craig Powell, Noreen Kello.
Good evening, Mr. Carter.
Good evening, councilmembers and those here in the audience. Brother Carter, I'm with the Poor People's Campaign here locally and also a part of the National More Revival. Today, I'm deeply saddened that we're here dealing with this issue because since 2011, I've been out here in, on the streets of Sacramento advocating and fighting for, for It's not about poor people, it's about poverty. When this shirt says, "Fight poverty, not the poor," and that's what we've been doing here for the last 11 years, not just since you, Mayor Steinberg, but since Mayor Johnson. And you guys just don't get it. Each time that you make decisions here, it affects your constituents, and that's where we're at today. I listened to some people here that run the St. Hope School say something, and it hurt. I watch every day the people on X Street and Al Hambr. I go through there every day because they're from Old Park, they're from my community. Now, for 11 years for me, I do this voluntarily. I don't make money. I don't have a 501(c)(3). I'm on disability. That's all I got. And the rest of the work I do is from me. So, don't point fingers at him. You go back to the mayor, who has 15 houses and all the buildings-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
I'm going to speak the truth of power today.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Mr. Carter, your time is up.
It's not where the homeless needs to be. Let's, let me say this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
It's important.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carter.
These homeless shelters should not be in our community.
If you do, Mr. Carter, if you continue to disrupt the orderly conduct of the proceedings by continuing to speak out-
It's a Sacramento king.
You're now violating Chapter 5, Section 81 of the City Council Rules of Procedures. Mr. Carter, if you continue, I will order you to leave.
Take that and impact it out there.
Mr. Carter.
And take it out of our communities and readdress the people that came from our communities and put them back in our communities the right way. And take our city a champion.
Mr. Carter.
City, not the way that we want it to be back.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, for your comments.
Next speaker is James Fago Clark, and then Craig Powell.
Mr. Fago, one quick second here. Madam Clerk, if you could remind folks about the orderly conduct rules of public comment.
Get out of there. I'm going home. Come on, Carol. Quit treading your feet.
Thank you. So that everyone has the opportunity to address the council, members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum suspected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not, immediately stop. The presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Mr. Clark, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Fago.
Yeah, we'll follow the rules when you stop. Good night.
Hello, once again, council. It's been a while since I've been here. You know-
Mr. Clark, your time, you're not, we'll stop the clock, start over. I just want to make sure that people are listening and can hear you, okay? Go ahead.
So, I understand that the Meadowview shelter is for women and children, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that, honestly, opposition to putting women and children that are homeless in a shelter near our other women and children kind of is disturbing me. Like, I don't know why you would feel that children are a threat to the safety of anyone, their children. I do understand, however, the history of redlining that our city's done, and I do feel that we do need to do a better job when we're looking for these locations, making sure that the wealthier communities also bear their burden. But we also need to, as, as communities, realize that 90%, over 90% of the people that are homeless in those, in your communities are people that have already lived there. Those used to be your neighbors. So, trying to tell, tell them that they need to live someplace else now because they lost their home is kind of like saying that if it happens to you, that's what's going to, how you're going to be treated. So, we do need to take that into account, too. The funding aspect, one way or another, this needs to be funded. It needs to be moved forward fastly because these are people's lives. People are dying on the streets. 138 people last year? That's up. I believe it was only 118 people died the year before that. So, that's a large number of people dying while we wait to figure out where to put people, how to put people. It also is disturbing that every single council district was supposed to have something by now. It's already been a year that, just looking for places. Why have certain council districts done nothing while others have? I do, I do thank my council member for actually being one of the ones that has found locations. Let's continue to make sure that every district does that, but let's also make sure that we're not just putting one shelter in one part of our district. How about two shelters? One in a neighborhood that's already plagued with poverty and one in one of the ones, or homelessness, sorry, and one of the ones that's not plagued with poverty. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Craig Powell, then Noreen Kello, then John Holden.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Craig Powell. I'm the president of Ion Sacramento, and Ion Sacramento has had a homeless committee very active for the last two years on these issues. But I'm also been asked to speak as the lead speaker for a newly formed group called Haven for Hope California, which has been meeting for the last several months to explore and to push for better solutions to homelessness. And so, tonight, you're going to hear a number of speakers from this group, and they're going to first ask, answer the question, what is the Haven for Hope in San Antonio that you've already heard something about? We're going to try to explain why it's become the most respected, admired, and effective homeless facility in the country. We're going to explain its laser focus on addressing the root causes of homelessness in a residential intensely clinical setting, which helps people actually change the trajectory of their lives. We're going to explain how it was built and what its impacts have been in San Antonio. And we're going to also posit what a Haven for Hope facility in Sacramento could mean for Sacramento. We're going to explain how collaboration is the key to the creation of such a facility. We're going to explain how the creation of it can be phased, with the first phase being potentially what is called the Pioneer Courtyard, which is a austere but, but safe facility that provides basic medical care, mental health care, laundry, shower facilities, and so forth, as well as, and then the second component, which is called the Transformational Campus, which is really where the magic happens at Haven for Hope. We're going to finally identify the most important component of developing this kind of facility is the collaboration and leadership of both private and public sector leaders. That is absolutely essential, and I hope you'll, you'll learn from this, and we hope the public does as well. Thank you.
Our next speaker-
Councilman Chenier has a comment, please. Mr. Craig? Mr. Powell?
I just want to say, so, there are a number of us have looked at Haven for Hope, some who have gone to San Antonio and some haven't. UC Davis has actually been leading a work group, including all of the hospitals and others-
Who understand-
-to take a look at this and see if it's possible to think about citing, to think about where funds come from. I think one of the major things about Haven for Hope, which is a great facility, we have many of those programs already. It's a matter of, could you put them together? But also, 80% of their money came from a single private funder-
That's not true.
...which has been ongoing. So, it's, it's not quite apples to apples here, but it's something that we should look at as a potential-
Mr. Chenier, actually, 55% of the money came from private sources for development, 45% through a consortium contribution of the city, county, and state government.
We'll make, we'll make sure we make time. I, I would just like to add a comment because I know there are a lot of speakers here. I, I love the Haven for Hope concept, and I would love to travel to San Antonio with you.
Come join us.
I, I, and Councilman Chenier laid it out, but I just want to put it in a little context because you could really help us here.
Yeah.
We're struggling to cite these triage shelters. Let me finish, please.
I know you are.
We are struggling, as you can tell, and- We are struggling, as you can tell, and trying to get people indoors. That's the only motive here, right, who are desperate and needy and many affecting the quality of life in our broader community. So Emily Halken mentioned earlier, I don't know what the word she used, but something like the Cal Expo site, the Ethan Way site, has stalled a little bit, and that's true. It has stalled. They are, I'll say it publicly, they're slow-walking this. They don't want it. And, and so Haven for Hope, wonderful approach, is about 35 acres. We're talking about two, three acres a site here for these individual 100-bed triage shelters. We could break through if we find a site. And, and as challenging as it is, as you can see here, to find sites that are smaller that has 100 people, multiply that challenge to find a larger site that would allow us to serve 811 people. That's the number of people Haven, I'm not, I'm not an argument. I actually agree with you. So this is maybe an opportunity, maybe a challenge. I'm game, absolutely, but I just want you to recognize in a real, live world here with Cal Expo. By the way, they told us, don't call it Cal Expo, call it Ethan Way. I'm sorry, Cal Expo. They, 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 they don't, they don't want to do it. And that's three acres we were asking for on the southeast end of the project. No argument. I want, I'm looking forward to go, I'm looking forward to going to San Antonio with you.
I think that's great. We want to ask.
Powell and Steinberg together again.
Exactly.
It's an incredible thing.
I, I think that, you know, we're asking for the creation of a task force, including real estate specialists and land.
Mr. Powell, your time is complete.
Craig, we'll continue it, okay?
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
It needs to be collaborative with the council.
Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Noreen Kellaw.
Thank you.
And then John Holden.
What's that? Okay.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Steinberg, and the rest of the council members for this opportunity to, to thank you for your commitment to helping us solve the problem of homelessness in Sacramento and also for the opportunity to discuss the crisis that we're having today. We strongly encourage you, as individual council members, to join us in the formation of a task force comprised of Sacramento county supervisors, city and county staff, Sacramento business, labor, and faith community leaders, as well as experts in land use, site selection, construction and development, project finance and management, and leaders in the service and nonprofit community. We would like this task force to thoroughly examine the feasibility for developing a Haven for Hope here in Sacramento, which could serve as a pilot program and a beacon for hope for the rest of California. The time for bold action has come. It's time for the Sacramento region to make the vital investment in the one homeless treatment model that has proven itself to be highly successful in transforming people's lives and restoring their dignity and independence while relieving the increasing burdens which homelessness is imposing on our neighborhoods and businesses. Sacramento values require it, and the public deserves it. We need to open our minds and our hearts to the most humane, decent, and effective solution to our community's single most challenging social problem. I hope that you will join with us in giving our homeless population a hand up rather than just another handout.
Our next speaker is John, John Holden, then Julie Gossett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the city council, for your commitment to solving the problem of homelessness in Sacramento and for today's opportunity to discuss options for addressing the crisis. There is no better way to evaluate the incredible relief that a Haven for Hope facility can provide to both Sacramento's growing homeless population and to the increasing social costs and homelessness borne by Sacramento residents and business owners. There's no better way than for you to tour the facility in San Antonio and sit down at the table with those who run it, who can explain it fully and answer all your questions. More than 250 municipalities across the country have sent study groups to visit Haven for Hope and confer with its leaders. We encourage several of you to join with other local elected officials, city staff, business, labor, and faith community leaders, the leaders of homeless service agencies, healthcare organizations, law enforcement, mental health care providers, members of the media, and others to go on a study mission to San Antonio and observe for yourself the transformational changes in people's lives that are taking place at Haven for Hope. You know, the governor says that he owns homelessness. He wants to help. He wants his ability to be in a bold, provocative program, and I do believe that this, this is a clear answer to, to something that's been successful. Thank you.
Julie Gossett, then Nola Boyer.
Yes. Thank you very much for having us here today. I represent Haven for Hope for Sacramento, and I want to thank you, the mayor and the city council, for your commitment to solving the problem of homelessness in Sacramento and for today's opportunity to discuss options for addressing the crisis. So what is Haven for Hope? Many of you have not heard of this before today, okay? Haven for Hope is a fully integrated homeless facility that opened in 2010 in San Antonio, Texas. Haven for Hope has been operated by a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. Its president and CEO is Kenny Wilson, retired with Bank of America. Kenny is a past chair of the Greater San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. Haven for Hope is situated on a 22-acre campus just northwest of downtown San Antonio. Haven for Hope employs a 200-plus workforce. Physically, it's strikingly familiar to a community college campus. The campus consists of two components. The first component is the Pioneer Courtyard, which is a low-barrier shelter. Solubility is not required. This provides for clients' basic life needs in an austere but supportive environment. It includes security, meals, basic medical and mental health care, laundry, shower, and storage facilities. Residents at the courtyard typically stay about 90 days. It typically has a census of about 800 during the day and 600 to 700 at night. The next step is for people to move next door to the Transformational Campus, which provides residential housing and intense clinical services under a centralized management system, to about 800 residents living in separate living quarters for single adults, families, veterans, domestic violence survivors, and LGBT youth. Completion and matriculation of the Transformation Campus is programmed.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
For everyone who's here, thank you. Your time is up, ma'am. We appreciate it. For everyone who's here at Haven for Hope, I want to commit to you that we will, not only will I go, we'll have a public hearing and a public discussion on this. There are 18 more speakers who I think want to speak on this. If you can come up and do what we call kind of a Me Too, we'd appreciate it so we can get onto the support and the debate and discussion by the council. Your choice. Give everybody two minutes, but I would appreciate it, and I promise you that we will have a fair airing of a very hopeful approach.
Next speaker is Nola Boyer, then Louis Dimas.
Hi. With my fellow Haven for Hope compadres, I thank you for your time and listening to me. With the well over 250 municipalities that have gone to view it, Orange County sent a large delegation of officials to examine Haven for Hope two years ago. A group from the county of Sacramento that included supervisors Patrick Kennedy and Susan Peters toured the facility and met with the Haven for Hope leaders last year. Last year, county executive Nav Gill also toured the facility and met with Haven for Hope representatives. These senior Sacramento county representatives were uniformly impressed. Governor Greg Abbott was recently quoted as saying, "The Haven for Hope facility is the best practice in dealing with homelessness in Texas," and they have a significant homeless problem. Haven for Hope is a city-county collaborative. We feel it is a best practice to combine aggressive primary care, mental health, substance abuse, and case management of this model. California has a success village, excuse me, has Village of Hope, which is a similar program in Orange County, which is a success. As a city resident, it's getting frightening what's going on. Thank you for being open to our proposal.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm going to again ask that anybody else on the Haven for Hope come up and say, "I support this, too." We want to make sure we have plenty of time for the city council to have a thorough discussion. It doesn't, you don't win us over by telling us the same thing repeatedly, please.
Louis Dimas, then Pat McClatchy.
Mayor, council members, Me Too, just what the other people said, but I want to focus a little bit on, on the real purpose of Haven for Hope is to move people from homelessness, not just to transition them to housing, not just to get them off the streets, to take care of our health and safety needs. I live on the, on the edge of Midtown, 28th and East Street. I'm not that much affected by the homeless, except for the four bikes stolen, the tools stolen from my garage. Fact is, I have to put security lights up and, and put a deadlock on my gate. But I, but I can take care of my own security. But what I do is I ride around with my bicycle all around town, and I see the suffering that they go through, and I see that the hope that they have in a lot of them, they're trying to function. Haven for Hope, it seems like the city has only so far been primarily dealing with the low-barrier type facilities, which gets them off the streets and gets them out of the hair of other people, and maybe you can get them out of downtown. But what we'd like to do is get them back to being productive members of society, which is the ones that, where you have a transitional facility that which deals with those people, and I do welcome, and I hope you follow up on that, and give us a forum to fully develop this and so it can do it. But what we are concerned about is that the city going and taking money and wasting it on, on, on things that haven't worked in the past, and this is something that'll work in the future.
There, we disagree with you. But go ahead.
Our next speaker is Pat McClatchy, then Rich Boyer, then Art Taylor.
Hi. I do want to thank you for having us here. I'm just a regular citizen of the city of Sacramento, but I really support this idea. I've looked at ideas all over the country and followed them. I have just a little bit to say because, basically, it's Me Too, but I'm not sure anybody knows exactly how Haven for Hope was built, and this is pretty short. It's a product of an 18-month study by Bill Greeley, who had recently retired as chairman and CEO of Valero Energy, based in San Antonio. He had been appointed by Phil Harbinger, who was then the mayor of San Antonio, to head up a mayoral task force to study solutions to San Antonio's significant homeless problem. Haven for Hope was built at a cost of $101 million, and that included the city's purchase of its 22-acre campus for $22 million. The project was financed 60% by private sector funders and 40% by city, county, and state governments. According to the most recent available figures, Haven for Hope has an annual operating budget of $21 million, which is funded 55% by private sources and 45% by city, county, and state governments.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
We read it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rich Boyer, then Art Taylor.
Hello, my name is Rich Boyer, 34-year-old, 34-year East Sacramentoan, not 34. I wish I was 34.
Hey, nice try there, man.
It's been a long evening. I know, it's emotionally charged. Sorry about that, guys. So Me Too for Haven for Hope. I am a banker. I'm very fiscally conservative. Just a couple numbers I'd like to throw out to you. 85%. That's the number of street homeless in San Antonio that dropped in year one, 85%. Another number, $50 million. That's the amount of jail and court costs the San Antonio police and other government agencies have saved by taking inebriates to a detox and treatment center, which has led to these savings. Also, the ER visits and ambulance calls have been dropped dramatically. Finally, 6,500, 6,500 individuals have graduated from the Transformational Campus, 90% of which have maintained stable housing one year after graduation. I heard 1,150 women and children are homeless. Within two years, we could solve that problem right here. We have the solution. We have the solution. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Art Taylor, then Sarah Foster.
Greetings, city council. My name is Art Taylor, just a poor retired jarhead and peace officer. I'll make it quick. I want to thank the mayor and the city council, today's opportunity to discuss the homeless We, as a city, managed to build the Golden One Arena just a few blocks from here for $300 million, public investments. It was a project which has helped transform the western end of K Street and has improved business confidence and increased business investment in downtown. Can you imagine the positive impact of Sacramento's business climate and investor confidence if we were finally come to terms with the scourge of Sacramento's growing homelessness for a fraction of the arena subsidy? Can you imagine the improved quality of life many of the Sacramento neighborhoods? Can you imagine how much more appealing Sacramento would become for those considering living and working here? The upside potential of a Haven for Hope to Sacramento is tremendous. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Foster, then Charles Fost.
Hi. My name's Sarah Foster. I live in Midtown. I guess Mr. Hanson's live, he's my representative. Thank you for the opportunity of addressing this. I guess I'm another Me Too on Haven for Hope, and you've heard a lot about it, but I'd like, when the mayor brought up the issue of where do you put it, 22 acres, or where are we going to put, that seems to be a big deal tonight. So rather than getting into the program, I would just want to pull the attention to a few places around. I ride light rail in the bus, so I do know the area very well. I'd like to know what out, what used to be called, or seems to be called Township 9. That seems, you could have a triage center and a Haven for Hope out there. I'd like to know why that's not used. I see places down in, in the Meadowview area that are, you know, not near a school, but could certainly be used along, you know, out around Florin Road. I see motels that are vacated, large motels, down Stockton Boulevard that could be used for facilities. Let's, you know, I don't care at this part what you do, but let's use the stuff you've got and do something about, the whole area out there on Richards Boulevard with Township 9. Now, that was there. They moved the Greyhound place out there, Greyhound, which I used to, and still use, out to that area. That leaves a big area downtown where the Greyhound used to be. Couldn't you use that for something? A few beds could fit into the old Greyhound station. That used to be the drop place from Folsom Prison a few years back, but not anymore. So I just say, look around your community there, and you could find places all over the place for either. And by the way, Haven for Hope is a fabulous thing. I haven't been there, but I've seen it. It's great. I thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charles Fost, and then Michael Fender.
Hi. I'm with them. So they, you've heard it.
For your testimony.
It sounds like you've done the research and stuff. By the way, thank you for being here and opening this up, and Jay for taking that abuse earlier. Well, that looked tough. Anyway, there's 80 of us that have been doing this for about six months now, trying to figure out a good solution for Sacramento and coming up with how this could be funded and done. We've put a lot of work into it, so please consider doing it and looking further into it and doing the trip there, informing a task force to get this done. There's a lot of areas and locations in Sacramento that can be, but more experts should be pulled in and also work with the county on it, but it's definitely possible, and thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Fender, then Kathy Dean, then Mike Day. I don't see Michael Fender. How about Kathy Dean?
Hello, I'm Kathy Dean, and I've lived in my North Oak Park home for 11 years. I was recently chased by some homeless people who have been living on Alhambra and W for the past month. I had to wait with some construction workers until the police arrived. The Haven for Hope campus is breaking the cycle of homelessness, and it doesn't take just a one-size-fits-all approach. They address different subsets of the homeless population, such as veterans, seniors, and those with disabilities. And they've had tremendous success with their in-house recovery program, a substance And they've had tremendous success with their in-house recovery program, a substance abuse program with a strong foundation of peer support. Many completed it and went straight into the job market. So thank you all very much for considering our Haven for Hope idea.
The next speaker is Mike Day, then Bobby Lister.
Hi, I never thought I'd be part of the me-too movement, but I want to do something a little bit different. Mr. Mayor, I want to give you a potential solution. The big question here is the, is location. I don't think this needs to take forever. How about this? If we form a task force, and we've got people from the community, from business, from academics, we, then the task force is tasked first with looking at the variables of what constitutes a good site. We look at, how's the transportation access? What's the zoning like? Does it comport with the general plan? How big is it? What's the distance to services? We list every variable of what would make the best site that we could have in Sacramento. Then what do we do? We, the, all those variables aren't the same weight. We have the technology to put this out for a public vote without having to bring in the registrar voters. The voters can choose the weight for each of those different variables. Once we've got the weight, we go ahead and we look at all the potential sites, not just in the city, but in the county. We end up with a ranked list of potential sites. We're talking four to six weeks, folks, and we've got a ranked list, we put it out for a vote, and we choose the right site as a community. This is vital for our community, we can figure it out, we can come up with consensus, and after that, if we decide that this is a critical need for our facility and this is the right place, there's a thing called eminent domain. We take it, we make it, and we make it work. It doesn't have to take forever, and we're here to help. Please let us help you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Bobby Lister. Following Mr. Lister is Peggy Blinco.
I'm here as an Oak Park father, resident homeowner, and also an employee of the Oak Park area. I want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to the shelter, but I am here in opposition to approve a shelter without a clearly defined plan. Five years ago, before I actually purchased my home in the Oak Park area, I stated on Instagram, as most millennials do, that Oak Park is the best neighborhood in Sacramento. My main points being its diversity, history, affordability, proximity, proximity, proximity to downtown, and also enough space to raise a family. The most memorable of these debates was a friend who was a third-generation real estate broker. His message ultimately being that neighborhoods traditionally occupied, or perceived to be occupied by minorities, specifically African-Americans, have good periods but don't withstand the test of time, like the Land Parks, the East Sacks, and the Curtis Parks. I've come to realize that my friend was correct. Over time, black homeownership in Oak Park, black owners in Oak Park have seen the stability, have not seen the stability that we see in the Land Parks, East Sacks, and Curtis Parks. It's easy to say that it's the people that provide this instability, but in reality, it's the decision-making by those entrusted to us to make, to do what's best for neighborhoods. Even more surprising that this is not the pull yourself up by bootstraps conservative views that cause this, it's the progressive views of the, they're already there, so just place a tent over their heads. Prosperity Now and the Institute for Policy Studies estimates that by 2053, black households will have a median net worth of zero. Most of that is lack, comes from lack of wealth. They also, black, most of, most of the lack of wealth comes from black people either not owning homes or owning homes in depressed neighborhoods. Neighborhoods like Oak Park that couldn't withstand the test of time. This won't be, this isn't the result of one huge event by rather death by a thousand cuts. One of those cuts being placing a poor planned homeless shelter in our neighborhood.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Peggy Blinco, then Tom, Tim Robert. So Peggy, and then Tim Robert.
Hello, I'm speaking in support of the River Cats Independence Baseball Field, an adaptive, adaptive and accessible baseball field. It's located next to the community center on Meadowview and 24th Street. I and my family, including my daughter, who has played adaptive baseball in this adaptive field, support those who find themselves without homes, both financially and hands-on quite often, and think that women, children, and all humans deserve a place to be safe and not on the streets. However, placing a, placing a shelter in that particular location is not a good idea. It's not a good idea, and it's not a good idea to put it next to an accessible baseball field, or use that, or next to that beautiful community center. A shelter should be put in a location where homeless women and children can actually get better services and care. That location is not next to that adaptive baseball field that caters to the youth and adults with special needs and physical challenges. I ask that you keep the baseball field as a peaceful and safe environment for those with special needs and those that were wounded serving our country to enjoy adaptive sports. I find, as the speaker earlier said, a more appropriate place for a new shelter. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Robert, then Jeffrey Tardagia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I appreciate your time tonight, and I really, really appreciate your commitment to fully looking into evaluating and assessing the potential for a Haven for Hope model here in Sacramento. I personally think that's the answer. First and foremost, we all are concerned about the homeless situation here, and we all believe our citizens of this city and this state and this county should be housed and should not be homeless, so we need to pursue a solution that's going to work. If you're looking at Los Angeles and San Francisco and Portland as a model to follow, I think you go in the wrong direction. Those cities are failures when it comes to homelessness, and I don't want Sacramento to be lumped in with that group. I want us to be in a, in a successful group of cities. So again, thank you for your commitment to truly looking into a, a solution, and I think we need to put our money that we have into a long-term investment like Haven for Hope. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeffrey Tardagia, then Barry Boyd.
Jeffrey, do you need a mic?
Hopefully, this is the Census Bureau for 2020 of hard-to-count, okay? It gives you an idea of Sacramento. You've not developed any five-year programs, you've had a decade where you started out with $20 million. The Census count, which can be conferred by Emily and your executives that have done this count now for the third time, to know the information about point in time, you know, each time it has more than doubled. You have done from $20 million to $40, to now over $100 million. And what are the results? It's not good. So the project you're proposing right now, yes, I agree that you haven't followed your rules, you need to come up with the task force, the three- to five-year plan. You've done nothing that's been less or than 18 months. You really need to address that, and as what you've heard previous comments about a project of what's going on. Larry, I hope you invite me back because I'm also the pit boss here for Sacramento, for Sacramento Steps Forward, as the co-chair, and a lot of the information that you've heard, you know, does not include a lot of information. You have populations that are identified, and they do not know the numbers. You're incarcerated, you're hospitals, other sources and places through there, but you need to look at, and I'm hoping that it's not by the smart and final that we're proposing the homeless center through there, because what behind it, you know, you need to look at the full site in its own region. You've had some things brought to your attention, you need to further do the research. This body seems to make solutions that do not have the correct answers. Mayor, I'm willing to work with you on the homeless issue because you are not doing the efforts that need to solve the problem.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd, Amani Sawries, and then Carolina Flores, then Roland Brady.
Hello, City Council, Mayor Steinberg, my name is Barry F. Boyd. I do concur with most of what has been said this evening. Those of us from the Meadowview community are in support of helping all of our brothers, our sisters, our neighbors, those who are without shelter. That goes without saying. I won't be redundant on the facts that have been already pointed out in its, in regards to its location. What I would like to emphasize is the closed shelter at the railroad, the railroad shelter that was in, in, in an industrial area no closer than a quarter to a half a mile from the nearest residential area, as opposed to the one proposed now, which is in the backyard of the, a residential area in the backyard of the proposed shelter. The, any available, any available property of 2.3 acres, which was stated that is needed for this shelter, that is city-owned property throughout the entirety of the city, should be looked at again, regardless if it's District 8, District 5, District 1, the entirety of the city, not specifically guiding down the street to South Sacramento. A lot of folks are wondering, hey, the homeless shelter proposed at Florin Road Light Rail Station went away because of the verve, some of that, but the actuality is the TOD, the trans-oriented development that is coming up at the Light Rail Station on Florin Road and 29th Street, or, or the Indian School, or Indian Road proposed shelter was going to come up. It's because now a mixed-use building is going to be there. Don't be mistaken, it's always about dollars and cents. The Light Rail Station at Meadowview and near 29th, there is no proposed development there. Understand why these shelters are being placed in areas such as Meadowview, in areas such as Del Paso Heights. Take a look at our numbers, 900 or...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
...emergency services in Meadowview versus 3,000.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Amani Sawries, then Carolina Flores. Is Amani here? Amani, Carolina Flores? Don't see Carolina. Okay, Carolina, and following Ms. Flores is Roland Brady.
Ms. Brady could please get up too and get in, in line, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening, sorry, I almost dropped all my papers. I'm Carolina Flores, and I'm president of LULAC, Lorenzo Patino, and our position is that we support the homeless shelter proposed at X and Broadway. We have, we support all those shelter programs, but we are only supporting this one site. I want to be clear about that. At X and Broadway, we hope that there'll be access, I'm going to kind of step away from this. We're asking for bilingual services, and we're asking that we're available to help you with some of these services. I'm going to step away from being the LULAC president. I'm a social worker, I have eight years' experience working with the homeless shelters and DOA and Salvation Army, and what you need to do, I would suggest that you make the X and Broadway, the children's and the women and children's shelter, because it's across the street from the clinics, it's going to be across from the mental health, it's down the street from several schools, and across from Salvation Army where they can get fed. This is the ideal place for women and children, so I would think that you should consider that first. I think that one of the things we decided on is that we would not be a part of any of the other proposed sites because we don't agree with them, but, now I'm trying to find my notes. So what we're trying to do is, we wanted to be able to help on how we can provide the services as much as possible. There must be bilingual Spanish-speaking, there must be Mongue-speaking, there must be Russian-speaking, there must be all of these variables in order to, to help the diverse population we have here in Sacramento. Take these off the count, see. Thank you, that's all that I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Flores, thank you very much. So that, do we have any other?
I have one, I have one more speaker that was neutral, Roland Brady, and then I have 28 speakers in support, the first...
After the first one, I'm, after this, I'm going to say something before we transition.
Thank you. Is Roland Brady?
Roland Brady is not here, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're going to move to the support in a minute, and I don't want to necessarily have these questions answered now, but there's a lot of questions that have been raised during opposition, I'll make sure that we get to them after the support testimony. One is just to answer the question for the public, how the city staff went about assessing sites of all kinds throughout the city. Two, specifically respond to the diligence you have done on this alternative Meadowview location to consider that, that was raised by some of the opposition.
It's not Meadowview.
Excuse me?
It's not Meadowview.
It's not Meadowview, the alternative to the Meadowview site, I apologize, that was raised by some members of the opposition. I'll make sure we cover that, and then Emily, to reiterate again, after the support about the service component of the triage shelters that are being proposed throughout, those three things, I want to make sure that they get addressed. Let's go to the support.
Thank you, I have 28 more speakers, the first is Jeffrey Recht, Claudia Monseñor, and then Sharon Imogen.
My name is Jeffrey Recht, I work across the street, but I lived at 15th and W. And one thing I want to bring out is, there's, I live amongst a lot of homeless. My neighbor recently put out a bunch of cardboard for recycling. Now, most of the homeless that are near me are under the WX freeway. They, they saw this cardboard and got it for, basically to sleep on for their beds.
Oh, the clock isn't, the clock isn't running, thank you.
Thank you.
So...
Sorry, you, you got a, you got a minute and 27 seconds left, go ahead.
Okay.
By my estimate.
So, so, what, what, the reason that I'm in favor of the, the proposal is that these people really need help of all the different kinds, and I realize that the proposal is, is just a, a first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Monseñor, then Sharon Imogen, then Flojean Koffer.
Good evening, my name's Claudia Monseñor, I'm president of the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County. I came to speak, to say that the league has a position on homelessness, not taking a specific position either way on these proposals tonight. We do support the decriminalization of homelessness, we support measures that provide for the needs of homeless people with responsibility shared by public and private sectors, with government assuming the primary role. We also support permanent housing affordable to low-income persons as the main solution to the growing problem of homelessness. But we also support emergency transitional and long-term plans to meet the needs of homeless people. We're in support of making public and private buildings available for emergency shelters where facilities meet health standards. Sacramento County and its city should provide financial support to the private sector to develop long-term shelters. And finally, we support programs to help homeless people become self-sufficient, including substance abuse treatment, job training, educational and vocational counseling, childcare, and other programs that lead to self-sufficiency when possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sharon Imogen, Flojean Koffer, and then Joni Titherington.
Good evening, mayor and City Council members. My name is Sharon Agigian with Neighbor Works Sacramento, and I'm speaking in support of the X Street Shelter. At Neighbor Works, we believe that building stronger communities starts with access to affordable housing, and we've helped more than 3,500 low and moderate-income families become homeowners over our more than 30-year history, and we're located right across the street from the proposed X Street Shelter site. So through these efforts, we've seen how challenging it is for families to become homeowners and stay stable homeowners. We've also built and rehabbed almost 200 homes in the Sacramento area and sold those, often to first-time homeowners. So we recognize that the shelter is a temporary solution to a much larger problem, so we also hope that the city will do more to increase and preserve the supply of affordable housing in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Flojean Koffer, then Joni Titherington.
Koffer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to start by saying that housing is a public health issue, and it is a public health issue that disproportionately impacts black women. Black women are overrepresented in the number of homeless people, they also are disproportionately overburdened by the cost of housing, spending more than 50% of their income on housing. So I'm here today because the good is not the enemy of the perfect. This is not a panacea. And while I totally support the fact that there are other areas in Medaview that have been brought up tonight that could be a better site for this, the bottom line is that every single district in this city should bear the burden of the crisis that we are in. That is the bottom line. And so I'm here tonight to talk about the shelter that's in the district that I've lived in since 2013. My story is that my house faced a street that did not have any houses on the other side, and my husband and I would go outside and pick up needles on a regular basis, and we'd go outside and we were very supportive of the people who often were sleeping in their cars outside of our house. When I've been over at Mary House, I've had conversations with black women who are from Oak Park and have been priced out because we have one of the highest raises in rent that has occurred in the country. So I'm here tonight because I've been fortunate in my life to never have been homeless, and I recognize I've done absolutely nothing in my life to deserve that. And if one day I were to become homeless, I would want to live in the community that I'm already in, I would want to be supported, and I would not want people to be using Trump-like conversations about how I might be a rapist or a predator. And I'm really embarrassed that there are members of a faith community in here tonight talking about, we don't want homeless shelters 500 feet away from churches, no wonder Jesus tore up the entire place. I mean, how dare you? How dare you? That is embarrassing to me that you would not want the very people you're supposed to be supporting to be nearby, and children in a shelter deserve to be near the schools that they're attending. So I absolutely am saying yes in my backyard, please put this near the Broadway on Hammer District, and let's keep it going. Thank you.
Our next speaker, next speaker is Joni Titherington, then Steve Hill, then Rose Domingo.
Me too. I second you. How eloquently she put it. Today I had a conversation, I don't work in social services, I had a conversation with a woman who was helping a young woman out, who has three children and is pregnant, she has one in the oven. She has a Section 8 housing voucher and cannot find a place to lay her head and her baby's heads. Why? Why? Now's the time, the iron is hot, let's strike. I absolutely support the X Street Shelter, I think maybe there may be a little bit more work to be done, but we shouldn't be fearing babies and mothers. That's shameful. And when she said Trump-like, I was just saying that just earlier today, Trump-like, othering, othering each other, othering each other because we look different, because we're black, because we're gay, because we're transgender, because we're homeless. We should not be othering each other, we are a community, we live once right next to each other. I could name half the homeless people that are underneath the X Street Bridge, they lived in Oak Park, they were priced out of Oak Park, they have nowhere else to go. We have got to stop othering each other, we have to stop being Trumpsters, using fear and fear mongering to solve our issues and win a prize. We're talking about human life, we're talking about humanity, and all of us should be ashamed if we do not support these efforts to change the situations for those that are less, have less opportunity than we do. And thank you so much for your time.
Hill, and then Rose Domingo.
I'm Steve Hill, I live on the edge of District Four, near the XY, the proposed XY Shelter. I also work at SEIU Local 1000. A year ago, we surveyed the 15,000 workers that we represent who live in the city of Sacramento and asked them to identify the most critical issues facing our city, and almost 100% of respondents said homelessness. So then we followed that up by meeting with hundreds of these workers, and at every meeting, homelessness would come up, and their concern was not out of some kind of annoyance factor, but rather, these are our brothers and sisters who don't have places to live, and it's this extreme economic injustice that we collectively are not doing enough about. So I applaud the mayor for encouraging action and Councilmember Chenier for proposing the XY Shelter. And I know there are some people here who oppose the shelter location, whatever shelter location, out of concern for their children. Formerly, I was president of a legal clinic in Baltimore that served people who are homeless or at risk of homelessness, and I also volunteered at a residential facility for homeless women who were in recovery. My children grew up in an environment where they were exposed to a wide range of life experiences that people encounter. I think as long as we take the necessary precautions to safeguard our children, there are opportunities that arise from demonstrating to our children that there are people who have different experiences and live in different circumstances, and that they are people just like us who need our support to succeed and flourish, and sometimes just to survive. It should be an honor to see a tents shelter where we are serving people who live in our community. So thank you for taking these small steps that you're taking today to serve our neighbors.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Rose Domingo, then Kristy Korea, then Teri Galvin.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Rose Domingo, I am with SEIU Local 1000, and I live in Jeff Harris's district, District Three. I support the proposal to create a shelter for homeless people. The shelter provides, to, the shelter provides to existing homeless people already present in that site, and also, again, it will offer full wraparound services, health, mental, health addiction and other needs. We've heard the statistics in Sacramento that the homeless increase jumped by 19%. I've also read that one in five homeless in Sacramento County are 55 and older, and the trend is likely to worsen, this was reported by the Sacramento Bee. As we all know, the homeless crisis require a multi-pronged approach, there isn't one-size-fits-all as we've heard from the audience as well, there are many possible solutions. It takes a community to help solve the homeless crisis, and this includes but not limited to the city, the community, nonprofit organizations, and the church. I do want to address Larry Carr's concern about the women and children who are housed, who may be housed in these shelters that may need assistance for relocation into homes, into apartments for first down and security deposit. I want to remind the council that the state has a compensation program for victims of violent crime that will help with medical, mental health, as well as relocation expenses. This also, this may total up to $70,000 per victim. Finally, I want to thank the mayor and council members for partnering with my church, Bayside Church.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Kristy Korea, then Teri Galvin.
Good evening, council members, and mayor in the other room. My name is Kristy Korea, I am a state worker, I am a downtown community partner, I have lived in District Four the majority of my life, I'm a Clatch alumni, I grew up just off of 18th and Broadway, so I'm very familiar with the corridor, I ride light rail into work, I know exactly what goes on along those stops, along the tracks, and along Broadway, because I, that's where I live and that's what I see on a daily basis. And growing up, you know, I come to this point where I get to go to work every day downtown, and I get to work for the Public Health Department, and I get to look at, you know, the upcoming issues and regulations, and what our new leadership in the governor's office is, is holding as a priority, and I commend each and every one of you district members for doing your part for this city, for citizens like me, and taking care of each and every district and looking at sites for temporary triage shelters. And I know that, you know, there's, I've sat down with, you know, Jacob Itell in the mayor's office, and I've talked to, you know, Emily, and it's, there's people like me that really want to help and really want to do something, and what we've been told is, support the mayor's program, support your district members, support those triage shelters, because this is a first step. This isn't long-term habitat for, you know, Haven, I get that, okay, that's a two-year program. There's people tonight sleeping outside, not pariahs, children, there's families, there's mothers, there's workers that are, can't afford their rent, there's so many different categories, it really doesn't matter, what matters is that tonight, we get to make a decision, a second step forward, we get to make a decision on where we go next from here. So thank you for your commitment to the X Street Shelter, thank you to your commitment for a shelter in every district, and I look forward to supporting.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Yes.
Kristy, just before you walk away, I just wanted to thank you, you invited me along with your colleagues on the ninth, because you were entertaining some kids from Mustertead School at Capitol Park, you used this as a project for your department at the state, and I just was very touched by what you and your colleagues did to give those kids a joyous day, and to hang out with them and just share friendship. It's not something that we see as often as we could, but it is something we should celebrate when we do see it. So thank you for inviting me, and thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teri Galvin, then Howard Lawrence, then Rick Eaton.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Teri Galvin, and I am the executive director of Community Against Sexual Harm. I'm here tonight to express my support for the Alhambra and X Street Rehousing Center. My center for women is less than one mile from the proposed site, and I believe a safe, well-designed, professionally-run space will improve that site and offer an opportunity for many who currently find themselves without homes, living unsheltered with no assistance in the same space. As a provider, I've had to send women out into the streets when our day center closes. They've had nowhere to go, whether they were sick or scared, traumatized or exhausted. I know what a lack of emergency shelter means for these community members. It means their wellness will be delayed, and it means they will continue to spend their time surviving instead of stabilizing and working on things that matter to them. I believe we are in a position to build something that works, something that is thoughtful, safe, and welcoming. I do want to thank Councilmember Chenier for his leadership on this project and for including the community's voice. Many of us are here because you have reached out and asked for community involvement. I know this process is not easy, and this is a complicated issue, but I also want you to know that on behalf of the women I serve, it is appreciated.
Next speaker is Howard Lawrence, then Rick Eaton.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, I'm a member of the city council, my name is Howard Lawrence, and I'm here as a representative for Sacramento Act Area Congregation Together. As you know, ACT is a faith-based community organizing network, and following that faith tradition, we really believe that we need to provide shelter and care to our neighbors. The people who are experiencing homelessness are our fellow human beings, not some other being or non-person to be removed or discarded. The ACT Committee on Housing and Homelessness has long advocated for the creation of triage shelters which link homelessness with services and housing placement. The model as developed in the North Sacramento Railroad Shelter works, and we found out how to deal with some of the chronic homeless, and how to make many of them become part of the mainstream community. So we support Option C, the funding of both proposals. We've talked to our members at Medaview who don't entirely agree with this position, and so we have a request that you further consult with them regarding the placement and function of the proposed shelter, but we want to go on the record as supporting Option C. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Eaton, then Patricia Wenzel, then Tina Campbell.
I too, I'm from Sacramento Act, and I'm just gonna say me too, because Howard covered it.
Patricia Wenzel, then Tina Campbell, then Eric Frame.
Yep, that's me, thank you. Sorry, wrote my stuff down so I wouldn't screw up. I live in the Gulf Course Terrace neighborhood, across the street from District Eight, and not far from the Pennell Community Center. I am also living successfully with bipolar disorder. I support both shelters contained in tonight's proposal. Even those living with mental health conditions deserve to be sheltered, Mr. Carr. They are not dangerous criminals, they are people suffering from illness. They deserve our compassion and care, and our children need to see our compassion in action. The need is now. Haven for Hope will not shelter 100 women and children this winter.
Our next speaker is Tina Campbell, then Eric Frame, then Veronica Beatty.
Tina's left.
Tina's left. Eric Frame. Following Eric Frame is Veronica Beatty, then Richard Wake. Veronica Beatty, Richard Wake, Marcia Spell, then David Bain.
Hello again, nice to see you all. I do support all shelters and all action towards helping this homeless situation. I do want to say though, I strongly believe that the city deliberately chooses bad locations in an attempt to divide our community, and as an excuse to not use a real solution and come up with real long-term plans. Part of the reason why I believe that is, there's a long record of inhumane and unconstitutional ordinances coming from the city, obviously the unconstitutional no camping ordinance, the unconstitutional anti-panhandling ordinance, the closing of bathrooms, shutting down of water fountains, and removal of trash cans, noise machines in the downtown area to prevent sleep, cooling centers requiring 100 degrees for three days straight instead of just keeping cooling centers open, so the list goes on and on, on there. Mr. Mayor, last week you said the homeless situation is a crisis, I think you've used that word before. How many more people have to die before we graduate from crisis to emergency? Personally, I recommend calling a citywide emergency, and in doing so, the city can use eminent domain, which was brought up by another brilliant person in the audience, which all of you are brilliant, by the way, and we need to stay united. But yes, the city, in Lewitha County, you made a post, mayor, that you're sitting down with Gavin Newsom, I recommend you support calling a state of emergency, as we do have people dying every year, as you know. There's just so many vacant lots, vacant buildings, we just need to have compassion, unite together. Jeff Harris, I appreciate what you did with the railroad center, I really do, and I know you guys all have the heart and compassion within you to make the right choice.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. The next speaker is Veronica Beatty, Richard Wake, Marcia Spell, David Bain. Veronica, is David Wake here? Following Mr., I'm sorry, Richard Wake, then Marcia Spell, then David Bain. And please do line up in the aisles if you can. Richard Wake, Marcia Spell, David Bain, then Cassandra Jennings.
Yeah, I'm Richard Wake, I live in City Council District Five. You know, I fully understand that Councilmember Carr has taken into considerations of people that live in his district, but when his decisions start affecting my neighborhood, I have the right to come out and criticize it. It's absolutely ridiculous to even suggest that a shelter should be so many feet away from a school. Just, I live on 35th Avenue, right around the corner from the Sacramento River, there are people that are camped out, that have been camped out on Woodshire Way, there are people that are camped out in the Sacramento River, right near Brookfield School, and which is also very close to John Cabrillo Elementary School in San Brandon. So there are already homeless people camped out on the streets that are near these facilities that really have no place else to go. You know, I'm the type of person that puts my money where my mouth, as Councilmember Chenier knows, I organize neighborhood cleanups, I've cleaned up Riverside Boulevard from Seamus down to, down to Brookfield School several times, I'm gonna do it again before October, I'm picking up trash in my neighborhoods, but I'm just really offended that there's been no lack of effort in city council. But I'm just really offended that there's been no lack of effort in City Council District Eight to find an emergency shelter. These shelters need to be open now, okay? There's no more time to waste. And to say that these things shouldn't be near schools, there are already dozens and hundreds of homeless people camped out near the schools. It's offensive for, you know, for some of the things that were said at the August 12th meeting. Councilmember Carr, you owe the people of Sacramento an apology for your comments. I truly believe that. You know, it just isn't right. And, you know, I'll direct my final comments to Councilmember Warren, who I know supports the Safe Ground Camping. I hope you still do that, Councilmember Warren. I hope you'll open up a Safe Ground Campsite and show all the naysayers no. None of these other people came up here into your City Council, into your office, when, you know, when they need something done, open up the Safe Ground Shelter and be a hero here in Sacramento, sir. Do it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcia Spell. I don't see Marcia.
David Bane.
David Bane is next. I don't see Marcia. Then David Bane, Cassandra Jennings, then Mark Cadre.
Good evening, Council. I'm a 15-year resident of Metaview, and for the last eight years, I've been with NAMI Sacramento, working with people living with mental illness and their family members. Based on those eight years, I'm not worried about people living with mental illness being in a shelter next to the facility. They are not violent, any more violent than anybody else. So, thank you. I am kind of concerned because we are, I think, year nine of the City of Sacramento's last 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. And 100 to, last year, 138 people a year are dying. And so, that's where I'm at today, where I'm willing to support this sort of thing, because I want it to happen. I'm tired of seeing people dying. I'm tired of having them rotting on the streets and families being broken apart and not getting the help and services they need. Now, most of the opponents tonight have been very careful talking about that they still support homeless services. Two weeks ago, people were less careful about that, and I heard a lot of language that was disrespectful and demeaning. We don't use the phrase mentally insane when we're talking about people who live with mental illness. It dehumanizes them, and our community, as a community throughout the nation, treat homeless people like trash, and we wonder why they don't pick up their trash. But they have no concept of that, because that's how they're treated. So, we need to start treating people better, start treating them like they're human beings, and realize that simply busting them out of town is not a solution. Thank you very much.
I have 13 more speakers. Cassandra Jennings.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. My name is Cassandra Jennings. I'm president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. This is a very difficult discussion for all of us. The citing of any kind of housing, affordable housing, assisted housing, housing shelters, permanent supportive housing, is probably the toughest conversations that I've ever been in, and I've been in a lot of them. I'm reminded, though, and I'm glad that most of the people in this room, if not all of us, agree that something should be done. I'm here to say that I believe we need to do better right now. I'm reminded when I travel to our Oak Park office, which is right across the street from the proposed X Street, that we need to do better. When people knock on our doors in our office wanting to do help. I'm also reminded when the young lady in my office in Del Paso Heights comes into the bathroom to wash herself up. I'm reminded when I have spent 10 years with the Winter Sanctuary and people have come in and, yes, there are people who attend our local schools, they have attended our local schools, they have gone to our churches, they are brothers and sisters of people that live right here in Sacramento. And then I'm reminded when it's disproportionately African-Americans, 34% of those that are on the street are African-Americans. I'm reminded that we need to do better, we need to do better now. I support both the shelter at the X Street and the Metaview for women and children. What an opportunity we have to support children. I do urge you to do three things, and finalize and to use a specific community to finalize the plans, design, safety, and service for each of them. I am recommending that you set up a representative community advisory group from each of the Metaview and Oak Park, and in the RFP, that you require inclusive of a community partner that will have the role of implementation. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mark Cadre, and then Tamara Edge.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Mark Cadre, and I'm from St. John's Program for Real Change. When we think of homelessness, we think primarily, I think we picture men and women, and only two or three people up here tonight have mentioned children as part of the solution we're thinking about tonight. We have over 200 women and children on our campus right now, over half of them children. Perhaps I can help tonight by talking about location concerns. While the issues you debate are many, I can tell you that our program for women and children is clean and safe. If you were to drive by it, you wouldn't know it was there. There aren't people camping on the outskirts. It's not dirty or littered. It's a clean and safe and effective program. Additionally, whether or not this is the perfect location, Councilmember Carr, it is important to consider that fields and pools and schools are important to a location. Activities for the children are key. We have had much success with swimming programs and soccer programs and baseball programs to keep the kids active and engaged while their mothers are programming and helping themselves and their families. And we've had a lot of success with that, and I would suggest that perhaps you can as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tamara Edge, then Jared Fisher, then Ansel Lundberg.
My name is Tamara Edge. I am the Director of the Legal Clinic in Loves and Fishes. I'm here today to ask you, as City Councilors, to vote for the shelter. I work daily alongside individuals at Loves and Fishes that lay their lives down for our guests who are struggling to live. Most people do not understand it or say that they cannot handle the work that we do. That is true in the sense that it takes patience, compassion, while letting go of our egos and pride in order to serve the people society has cast aside and considers a nuisance. Our guests are continuously marginalized, systematically targeted, while dealing in the underbelly of society just trying to survive. Their quality of life needs are deemed illegal and criminally offensive to the society as a whole. We, as Californians, pride ourselves on being progressive, welcoming, and accepting of all, yet in the capital city of this state, we find ourselves failing our own neighbors. This is a new age leper. The homeless have become the convenient scapegoat for all that is wrong within the city, yet are spoken about thoroughly and relentlessly when it's campaign time and promises flow forth out of those who refuse to make the necessary changes when the opportunity arises. In battle, there are two sides. In this scenario, we have to stop and ask, who is fighting against whom? At Loves and Fishes, we fight alongside each other to ensure our guest survival, demanding justice, dignity, and rights for the poor. So, that would leave you, Councilmembers, on the opposing side. Ultimately, the fight, the fact of the matter is that Councilman Carr would prefer to continue to gentrify his district, allowing the areas, other areas of Sacramento, to bear the brunt of homelessness in order to create a line of demarcation of those he labels criminals, addicts, sex offenders, the mentally ill, and pet owners. Which begs the question, are the homeless to be concentrated into an area where they do not have the same rights as those with better socioeconomic means? Isn't that what we see happening at our borders and in our prisons?
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
These crimes are the reflection of entrenched poverty.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jared Fisher, then Ansel Lundberg, and then Alan Lofasso. So, Jared, then Ansel Lundberg.
Good evening. While I represent two organizations here tonight, Sacramento Community Land Trust and the Oak Park Fix-It Cafe, who are fighting against displacement and gentrification that do support the Alhambra Shelter. More importantly, I live three blocks from the site, and I've been raising my three young children, including one with trauma-related special needs, in this direct vicinity. I also work with and have worked with in the past and currently volunteer with our housing insecure and unhoused neighbors at the Wells Springs Women's Center, also right in this neighborhood. Many of our unhoused neighbors that we know now were not homeless when we first met them, but now they are. They know my kids and my wife and me, and they are good neighbors, and they are all worthy of help in horrible times. Their number has grown dramatically, dramatically, just in the eight years that we've lived there. Yet consistently, I see that they have so much pride and ownership in this neighborhood. They love Oak Park as much as anybody I know, and for so many of them in underpasses and living in cars, this is their neighborhood too. I've been to a lot of these meetings now, and I'm actually really heartened by the thoroughness of this plan and that Councilwoman Chenier and city staff have learned many good and bad lessons from what happened at Railroad, and that they know that Railroad and Alhambra are vastly different areas and that cookie cutter solutions aren't going to cut it. I'm actually really impressed with how thoughtful they've been about this, and I am hoping that we could not give into fear of worst-case scenarios, that we could err on the side of recognizing everybody's innate dignity, and that while homelessness is complex and that people of good faith can have legitimate concerns about children and safety and property values, I beg that we do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and for God's sake, can we please get shelters in every district? This is going to be a lot easier.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ansel Lundberg, Alan Lofasso, then Rachel Dittmore.
Good evening. My name is Louis Morante. Ansel asked me to provide comments on his behalf. He had to go to church. Ansel and I are on the board of House Sacramento, a local, yes-in-my-backyard, YIMBY organization. We're here tonight to support Option C. California and Sacramento are experiencing historic increase in homelessness. As this council probably knows, Sacramento saw a 19% increase in homelessness over last year, one of the largest increases in the entire country. Rising rents are displacing people, and it's increasingly becoming a matter of statewide concern. We need an all-of-the-above approach, strongly agree that we need homeless shelters in all neighborhoods, in all districts. I myself am a District Four representative, and the only improvement I could see to this potential, this plan, would be if one of the homelessness shelters were located in my district. I strongly encourage the council to take a look at potentially putting a homelessness shelter in Midtown where I live. We just wanted to express our strong support tonight for Option C, making sure that California and Sacramento establish a human right to shelter, which, while not sufficient, would help us address some of the extremely exigent crises that people face in this city and state every day. Sheltered people are significantly less prone to domestic violence, significantly more likely to be able to sustain employment, and significantly more likely to find permanent housing over the long term. And so, while shelter is not by any means a permanent solution, and while these two shelters will not solve Sacramento's shelter needs, I strongly encourage your support tonight of Option C, and strongly encourage you to visit the option of expanding those shelters in the future. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alan Lofasso, Rachel Dittmore, then Barbara Schill.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Alan Lofasso. I'm a resident of the central city, the Newton Booth neighborhood specifically, which of course is the southeastern corner of Midtown. Mayor, I've respected from the beginning what your approach of asking all parts of the city to contribute shelters, and my neighborhood is as close to the Alhambra X Street Shelter as any other neighborhood, and I'm here to voice support for that shelter. I thought the presentations earlier were compelling, and I won't attempt to repeat any of them. I just thought it was important to show that there are some neighbors who get it, and I hope you approve the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Next speaker is Rachel Dittmore, then Barbara Schill, then Gabriela Chavez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's obvious, like Mrs. Jennings stated, that this is a very complex issue. And one, I think the biggest grief that I hear in this room again and again, is that people have become our problem. That's perhaps the greatest grief, is that people have become our problem. We stand on the corridor of Martin Luther King Boulevard where homelessness, we're faced with it every day, whether it's American Legion High School students, or families from Oak Ridge Elementary School, or displaced neighbors like my neighbor spoke of. People are not our problem, and we have to start somewhere. It's not a perfect solution, like my colleague Teri says often. It's not a perfect solution, but we have to start somewhere and be proactive in long-term solutions. As a mother of three children, I also stand with another gentleman in this room who said, "My heart is to raise compassionate children." My children will be the first ones at that shelter, that will be there, hopefully, serving meals, that will see beyond themselves and see each other as humanity and be willing to show up. I'm in favor, and I hope that as a council, we are in favor for the shelter in Oak Park and in Metaview.
Next speaker is Barbara Schill, Gabriela Chavez, Rolanda Wilkins.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Schill. I am with Louis Morante, a member of House Sacramento. I also would like to tell you very briefly my personal story. In 2014, I was diagnosed with cancer. By 2016, I had cashed out my 401Ks and my savings to keep paying my rent and my bills, my medical bills. I was in the hospital for about six weeks, and when I came out, I was evicted from my apartment. Still, three years later, even though I work full-time, I am pretty much, I have very unstable housing. I cannot find a place that will rent to me. I came precipitously close to being homeless, and I fully support Option C, which is putting shelters in two of the districts, and I support shelters in all of the districts in Sacramento. I do think that a lot of people are very close to being homeless, one paycheck away often. As I still continue to be, I have not been able to save up enough money to where if I lost my job tomorrow, I would not have enough money to afford my rent even three months into the future. So, I think that that's something to consider.
Thank you very much.
Gabriela Chavez, Rolanda Wilkins, then Lisa Kulp.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm also part of House Sacramento. My name is Gabriela Chavez, and I'm here to support Option C. Just echoing all the comments previous below, we're looking at our neighbors when we're looking homeless community, and we just need more shelters in every single district. But if what we have right now is the two options, then we should be in community supporting. Thank you.
Rolanda Wilkins, then Lisa Kulp.
Good evening, City of Sacramento. I'm Rolanda Wilkins, and I'm the Executive Director of Earth Mama Healing. I am here to support Measure C along with the shelter in Metaview. I know it's been a bit controversial, but anything that's going to help women and children, I'm going to support it. I don't know how we can look ourselves in the face, look our babies in the face, and say, "We don't want this trash in our community," that we don't want to help the least vulnerable of us. It will speak to something about us as a people, that when we can't provide shelter for our women and children. So, I just came from a meeting with a bunch of women. We were discussing this, a leadership thing that I'm doing in Metaview, and I'm glad I was able to get here, because I feel like, I don't know about y'all, I'm a spiritual person. I have to look myself in the mirror every day. You know, we are honoring 400 years of enslavement of African people in the United States, and I don't know how we can sit up here as descendants and not think about homeless women and children. We'll talk about children when it's politically okay for us, but we won't talk about what's going on with our babies and them not being safe. Only plan I really ever heard, because I do research, was the plan that the mayor laid down. We didn't agree with it at first, right? He came back with an olive branch and said, "Look, I heard your concerns about sex offenders. I've worked with girls and women and been doing that for 25 years. I worked under Catherine Hall at the Birthing Project, who, when she seen the need, made sure that black women can have healthy babies in the City of Sacramento." So, that is my line. I'm not a new jack, I'm not new to this, but we in good conscience cannot stand up here and have homeless women, single women, and children in Sacramento and look ourselves in the face and play political football with our most valuable, vulnerable population, which is women and children. I support the shelter in Metaview, and whatever you need me to do, I'm willing to help you. This is not about being political.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
It's about us making sure that women and children have safety.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lisa Kulp, and then Denise Tagatti.
I would just like to say me too to her.
I would just like to say me too to her. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lisa Kulp, and I'm the executive director of Women's Empowerment, which is a local nonprofit that works with women and children who are homeless, to help them get back into housing and to get a job. For the last 18 years, we've been exceptionally successful in getting women into housing. 90% of those who graduate get into housing, 87% get a job or go back to school. This last year, 174 women got a job, but they could not get into housing. That is not a sustainable solution. According to HUD, California is second only to New York in terms of the numbers of people who are homeless. The difference is 95% of New York's homeless population is sheltered, and only 25% of California's homeless population is sheltered. We need to do better than that. I am here this evening because we are at a crisis, we are at a point of crisis for homeless women and children, and we must focus on solutions. I have been attending city council meetings and Board of Supervisors meetings for 25 years, and I have never been to one where neighborhoods want homeless services in their backyard. It is complicated, but it is also possible. I support the temporary rehousing shelters in all of the districts as a temporary, a transitional solution while we are building affordable housing. But we can't wait for two, or three, or four, or five years for that housing to be built for women and children to have a safe place to sleep. Every day when I leave, there are children out on the street, women out on the street. They come back the next day, and they have been assaulted. They are, the streets is not a place.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Denise Tagatti. Is Denise here? Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Okay. Thank you all very much for all your testimony on every side of this issue. It was comprehensive, and I appreciate it. We all do, and that everyone is heard. We're now going to turn it over to the City Council. Jay Shenier was up first in the queue, in all fairness, and I accidentally knocked him off. So I'm going to ask, turn it to Councilmember Shenier first, and then I do want, maybe Jay, you'll cover some of this in terms of some of the alternative sites mentioned, but I would also like to hear from our staff, Chris Conlin and Emily Halken, about the sighting issues themselves, and then to reiterate the service component of the triage shelter concept, both at Railroad and what is proposed tonight. So we'll turn it to Jay first, and Councilman Carr is next, and Councilmember Ashby and Warren after that. Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I want to do three things. I want to just do a couple of pieces to answer some of what I heard. Then I want to talk about the WX Broadway Shelter, and then actually put a motion on the floor that we can debate. So first of all, on the RT site on Freeport in the south area, we did look at that early on. There are a number of problems with it. It's not paved, there's no utility infrastructure, there's no sewer, the land is very uneven. There would be no way to get it open by the winter, and the other major problem, and this is one of the biggest problems we had at Florin, was it would require FTA approval because of the way it was purchased and the money that was used to purchase it. We were told by the FTA they would never do Florin, which is why we walked away, or one of the reasons we walked away from Florin, and I don't think that that would be any different. On the Haven for Hope piece, I am involved in this working group being put together by UC Davis. I think that there's a lot of potential there. It is going to take time. Again, as the mayor said, if we think finding two acres is difficult, imagine finding 22 acres, and where are you going to put that? It's also very expensive, there's lots of components to it, and I think the problem that we have is crisis level, and waiting until something like that was built. These are not mutually exclusive. We need a solution. Shelters are not the solution, but I don't think we can get to a solution without shelters, and we need that as a temporary piece. Also want to just quickly thank Emily and Chris Conlin, who have been doing really yeoman's work on this. It's a tremendous amount. We now have a homeless housing department that we built from scratch in a very short time with very few people, doing an incredibly large amount of work. So I just want to say thank you and recognize that. When we started talking about the Broadway site, and I live pretty close to it as well and drive by it every day, I went to take some pictures. And so I spent 25 minutes, about two and a half weeks ago actually, going under the underpasses between 28th and 13th. So I want to show those, because I think it's really important that we look at what we're dealing with and what the problem is. This should just take a couple of minutes. There should also be at the end of this a heat map. Yes, 3,103 calls for service to the police from my district over a five-month period. So again, this was all within 20 to 30 minutes on one morning a couple of weeks ago. If you look at the top, that's along Broadway where it's most clustered. Go to the next one. This is Jeff's district, and if you look up, Highway 80. Those are the two areas that we would be focused on. We know, in the big picture, we know from the point-in-time count, as the mayor said early on, 93% of those surveyed, out of about the 550 surveyed, said they were either born or have a deep connection to Sacramento. People who are homeless generally want to be in an area that they're familiar with, and so those are the folks that we would be really focusing on, on this shelter. Thank you. I also, just a number of people have said we need to do this throughout the city. I agree. We need to go where homeless people are, we need to meet them where they are. I want to say thank you to actually Mr. Warren, because last week, that was a major point that you made, is that every district needs to do something. I personally, for my district, will have three shelters if we're successful tonight. One is the Wind Youth Center, and we have 400 young people, 18 to 24, that are homeless. We need to deal with that. Also Rochelle's Place, we need to deal with that as well for families, and then the Broadway Shelter. It's imperative, I think, that we act now, that we act quickly, so that we can make sure we get these up as soon as possible. This shelter, because we would have to pour asphalt and have some other things we still need to do with Caltrans, would probably be best-case scenario, open April-May, which is the timeframe that the state money would be coming through from the heat dollars. So that actually works out fairly well. Our staff identified the Broadway site. Many of you know, I started off working on the Florin site. We had a problem, as I said, with FTA. No one in the neighborhood wanted it as well, but really the FTA was the deciding factor in walking away from that. The staff then identified Broadway looking for it. We held one large community meeting. We had about 150 people come. We also have formed an advisory committee that has now had two meetings. We have about 50 people that we've invited, representing a lot of the stakeholder groups who work in the area. So, and I would assume that we would, I would want to keep that advisory committee going once the shelter is being built and open, to meet with the operators, to understand what's happening, to get updated information and data as we go forward, and to make recommendations so we can be the very best that we can be on that. The biggest complaints that I get, and I think probably for most of my colleagues sitting at this dais, the number one issue I have on our email, on our phone calls, is homelessness, and the complaints that we have about homelessness throughout the city, throughout my district. But the Broadway corridor, the WX corridor, is the number one issue that we hear about on an ongoing basis, from people in Oak Park, from people in Curtis Park, from people in Lamb Park, from people in Newton Booth, so all the way along that corridor. And again, that's the area that we would really be looking at to see what we can do. Along with the shelters, there are mitigation factors. So additional police patrols, I believe there's $350,000 that would go along with each shelter that we build for additional police in and around the shelter. And I would want to work with the advisory committee to see the way, best way that the security work can be done, and whether it's police or even another option to do it, we would want to work with the neighborhood on that. Additional solid waste pickup would come along with this. And then the downtown streets team, which I think is a really important factor. Right now, we have a streets team on Broadway that Mr. Hanson and I kind of share. We would have another set of individuals, 12 people working 20 hours a week, four days a week, really just beautifying the area. So I think overall, when you look at it, and when you look at the pictures on what it looks like now and what we could be, I think it's an improvement in the area. You know, I'm not going to talk for a long time, because a lot has been said, and I want to thank everybody on both sides. These are really difficult issues, and again, I don't think I've ever really met anyone who said, "Hey, why don't you come put a homeless shelter near my house?" I don't think anyone on this dais ran for the city council, so they could vote for a homeless shelter.
Do you not have one to watch from my house?
You have, right. So it's, we are in a difficult position, because these are controversial issues. I don't see how we can let our neighbors, and these are our neighbors, be where they are without providing help and support. We know, and 40%, I think, was a pretty good number for the Railroad Shelter, given that that shelter came and went almost on a continuing basis when we kept deciding to refund it, and it was the hardest population that we could have gone after. It was folks who'd been out on the river 10, 20, 30, 40 years. And we had individuals over 40 years out on the river. And to be successful with those individuals, we learned what we need to do to get people to come in, to accept service, and then to move forward. We also need beds, so that we can enforce our no camping ordinance, and I know many people in this room don't agree with that, but because of the Boise decision, we need to have beds that we can offer to people if we're going to move them from where they With that, again, we were elected also to make hard decisions. This is a hard decision, but it's not that hard for me, and I've given this a lot of thought, and you sit up here and you listen to people on both sides of the issue. But at the end of the day, if we're not going to take care of our neighbors, who will? And that's our responsibility. That's, I believe that's our responsibility on this dais. If I could put another large shelter in my district, I would do it. I don't have any problem with that, and if at some point the Freeport one becomes viable, that we can work on it over a period of time, that's also in District Five, I have no problem with that. This is who we are as a city. It is, as I've said many times, the biggest threat to our financial future. More importantly, it's the biggest threat to who we are morally. If we are not a compassionate city, I don't think we should continue doing this, to be honest with you. We need to take care of our own. So I am going to put a motion from the table to approve the staff recommendation C, with one change, that the Meadowview rehousing shelter will be specifically for women and children, because we need to do that, we have to do that. I want to additionally propose the following commitments for both shelters. One, that we prohibit camping and street feedings around the shelter, which I think we can do, because I think it's also very different than Railroad, where we backed up to the levee, and we had literally hundreds of people living on the levee. So it would be much, much easier to do this and to control the site. That we keep the area around the shelters pristine, that we enforce a zero-tolerance policy for drug sales and use around the facility, and that each of the shelters has an ongoing and sustainable community advisory committee that can meet on a regular basis, that we can be transparent about the data that we have, about calls for service, about how placements are going, and things like that. I think that, I'd also like to add that we delegate to our city manager the ability to execute contracts without coming back to the council within the total monies that we're allotting. We need to move this forward, and we need to move it forward as quickly as we can. I'm going to suggest that we do two votes, one on the WX freeway or under corridor, and the other on Meadowview. People may feel differently about those two. Either one of those sites includes all of the other smaller pieces that Emily talked about in her presentation. So that is my motion.
Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Gedda, and again, the motion is to take two separate votes in the way Councilmember Shenier described, and I want to thank you for your outstanding leadership. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the people from Meadowview who came out tonight to protect your community. We don't get out very much on issues, but it was really impressive to see how many people came out and spoke so eloquently about what they considered to be the crown jewel of their neighborhood, and we appreciate you coming out and letting the council members know your position. We also appreciate the emails and the telephone calls that you've been making to inform all the council members exactly where you are, and especially want to thank Market Fortune for investing millions of dollars into our district. It is sorely needed, and we appreciate you here. Mr. Mayor, believe it or not, and I'm not going to be, I'm not trying to be flippant, but I want to thank you too, because, one, you have gone out and amassed millions of dollars for this issue, and that is truly outstanding. And even though we disagree, especially on the Meadowview site, what our disagreement has done is heightened this issue in everyone's eyes. So everyone is more sensitive to it, everyone is more conscious, everyone is more aware. We're all concerned about homelessness, believe it or not. Every member up here is concerned about it. Everyone has to deal with the reality that we face in our streets every day. The debate is not about that, and it's not about any impacts that they cause. The debate is about how do we best address it? Where do we do it, and when do we do it, and how do we do it? You've seen some maps of the homeless calls for service, and you've seen them one at a time. You saw one in District Eight, you just saw one in District Five. I want to give you an idea of what all the districts look like. These are the calls for service by district. They will go from Councilmember Ashby all the way around to me. When he puts them up there, you will see how large this problem is and where it's So this is District One, Angelique Ashby's district. She does have calls for service, she does have an issue in her district. District Two, this is Alan Warren, covers Del Paso Heights, and you can see the calls for service and the issues that he's been faced with every single day. District Three, this is Jeff Harris's district. He also has the river, and you can see the concentration that he's been dealing with every day. And in fact, Jeff Harris, Steve Hanson, and Jay Shenier have been dealing with this problem for years, looking for solutions, looking for a way to address this problem. District Four, you can see that a great deal of our homeless population... You can see that a great deal of our homeless population lives downtown. And believe me, if Councilmember Ashby is getting calls, and I'm getting calls, I can't imagine what Steve is getting all day, every day. District 5, you saw this, Jay Chenier just put this up. And you can see where his calls are centered. This is Eric Gera's district, covers a lot of East SAC and Outdown Jackson. District 7. So this is the area in the Pocket and Greenhaven and Summer Valley High, this is Councilmember Jennings's district. Not as many calls there, looks a lot like Councilmember Ashby's district. And District 8. So you can see, we do get calls for service for homelessness. We do have to send out the police. But of the eight council districts, District 8 is the third lowest behind Councilmember Ashby and Jennings in calls for service. The third lowest in calls for service. It is my view that low-barrier homeless shelters do not belong in neighborhoods. I know some of you might disagree with that, but they do not belong in neighborhoods. And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to say this as respectfully as I can. You live in one of these districts, I think, where do you live?
District 7. District 7.
You live in District 7. I'm going to say this as respectfully as I can. You ask us to find sites in our district. I'm asking you to find a site in your neighborhood.
Happily. At that point of personal privilege, since you did address me directly, I want to make my point of view clear that I have made clear everywhere. I want to get to Emily and Chris Collin about how we identified sites that are large enough that, that are ready to put a sprung shelter. If there is a site available that meets the criteria in any neighborhood of the city, including mine, I will not only vote yes, I will strongly support it, period.
I will make the criteria. We'll find a way to get a shelter to you.
Sure you will.
And by the way, Mr. Mayor, even if you found one across the street from your house, I would not vote for it, because I don't think they really belong in neighborhoods.
No, please, there's no, no shouting out, please.
Especially in a neighborhood like Meadowview, next to the Pennell Center, next to the swimming pool, next to the All Abilities Field.
Excuse me, if anybody shouts out, I'm going to have to ask you to leave, please. We need, we've maintained decorum, it's been a very good hearing.
I'll get to that in a second. Bear with me.
Please, let Councilman Carr finish.
The Independence Field was privately funded by Mike Ubaldi, Stan Atkinson, the Savage family. It's called Rivercats Independence Field. They put $2 million into it to both build it and to refurbish it after 10 years. The person from the city who was working the project is a woman named Annie Di Salernos. And she is the one that brings out all of the military people, the veterans, the kids who have challenges motoring around. She is the one that has been running this field. And she writes, "Placing a shelter at that site will impede city staff in their constant need to load and unload adaptive sports equipment located in the storage building at the site, and especially when the equipment trailer is attached to the cargo van. Also, it will impact the ability to host events under the lights and attract outside agencies and school groups to use the field." This is the professional who runs Independence Field. This is right next to where this shelter is planned. If we're going to do shelters, and I think shelters have, it must be part of our overall solution, I don't think it's the only thing, but I do think we do have to do some low-barrier The city thought about this a long time ago, starting in 2013, and they came up with what we call a general plan. A general plan is a rule that we use to determine how we develop in the city. Every council since 2013, whenever this has come up, has voted for this general plan, including Jay Chenier, probably voted for it twice, Jay. This is not a suggestion from Larry Carr. This is what we decided as a city, how we were going to be, how we were going to develop. And the general plan reads, and I quote, "Shelters will be at least 1,000 feet from any other shelter, and at least 500 feet from a public park, or private school, or church, or single-family residence." That's not me talking. That's decades of city councils saying, this is how we want to develop. These are the rules that we are supposed to go by. Is this equal justice, or is it just us? Do these apply to everybody, or is it just us? Women and children shelters. I was asked if I would support a women's and children's shelter in Meadowview at that site. I said I would consider it. I talked to the people in Meadowview, I talked to our neighbors, I talked to our advisors, and they gave me a bunch of reasons why that was not a good idea at that particular site. First of all, and you can stick with me on this, it has not escaped my attention how fast these things change. On Sunday, this was a low-barrier shelter. On Monday, it turned into a women's and children's shelter. On Tuesday, we're going to vote on it. And on Wednesday, who knows what it's going to be? It changes just like that, that quickly. So those who are putting their hopes on a women's and children's shelter, don't put too much hope in it, because it could change in a heartbeat. Just like it did at our temporary shelter on Railroad Avenue. That shelter, when we approved it from this council, we said it was going in as a temporary winter shelter. It was supposed to be open for four months. It started in March of 2017. It did not close in March of 2017. It did not close in July of 2017. It did not close in October of 2017, or January of 2019. It finally closed in April 2019. That's how fast these things change. It's sort, I was in the Army for 23 years. You know, it's easy to get into war, it's hard to get out? It's easy to build a shelter, but it's hard to stop it once it gets in. And despite everybody's best intention, this thing just kept going on and on and on and on and on.
Excuse me. You can't yell out.
So Alan, you might remember you and the mayor going to a meeting in Del Paso. So attended about 13 people, 13 to 15 people attended. Mr. Otis Pruitt was one of them. And Otis wrote me, after finishing his proposal, Mayor Steinberg took the floor and presented his proposal regarding the shelter he planned to open on Railroad. I clearly remember him stating at the time that when the shelter closed on April the 1st, 2018, the community wouldn't have to worry about any more shelters in your, in that area. And he is the one that wrote me how long that shelter stayed open. Sometimes we, we frame this issue incorrectly. We frame it as, if you don't want a shelter on Third Base at Independence Field, then you must not care about women and children. I don't accept that framing. I don't accept that. There are other ways to do this. There have been numerous solutions raised at this council on how to address this problem. I, for one, have always wanted to get the low-hanging fruit. Get all of those people who are just, need first, last, and security deposit to get out of homelessness. Those who need $600 to get the car fixed, to get out of homelessness. Those who don't need extensive services, get them off the street first. The doctor from SAC State, Dr. B, thinks that there may be 20, 30, 40% of the homeless people fall into that category. Imagine we can get 20, 30, 40% of the people off the street right now, today. All we have to do is invest in those kinds of programs, as opposed to putting them into all our money into one shelter. SHRA has said, as soon as we started discussing shelters at the County Board of Supervisors meeting, we had the city-county board meeting together, that what we need to do is to supplement the vouchers. Somebody spoke about the vouchers, that they have a voucher, but they can't get anybody that will take it. Yeah, they can't get anybody to take it at that price, but there is a price you can get people to take it. And if you supplement the vouchers, you can get people to take it, especially if the city would indemnify and hold the landlord harmless if there's any damage done. The general plan outlines where shelters should go. And I think some people have shown this map. Now, this, these sites were identified at a time when there was no passion, when there was no issue on the board, no one was trying to put a shelter in anybody's neighborhood. These sites were identified then. They're all in industrial areas, areas that you can control the surroundings, areas that you aren't near people's schools, or people's houses, or people's parks. And I think we have two maps, don't we, Matthew? This is what we said as a city. This is what we said we would do as a city. But now, when it comes to Meadowview, we throw this out. And we probably won't see it until somebody from one of the well-to-do neighborhoods comes in with this map and says, hey, you said you weren't going to put it here. No one does shelters but us. You heard Emily say the county doesn't do shelters, and this is their mission. Why don't they do shelters? Because they find this ineffective. They do scattered housing, they do vouchers, they do other things other than trying to do the shelters. Just because we don't want a shelter doesn't mean we don't care about homelessness. We don't care about people, we do. We're talking about how to best address it, and whether or not putting a shelter on Third Base and Independence Field is a good idea. That's what I'm talking about. Is that a good idea? We can get control of these properties that are identified in the general plan. The mayor says he can raise the money, and I believe him, he's been very good at it. We can get control of these properties and put the shelters where we have said as a city over years and years and years that this is where they should be. We could do more scattered sites. Scattered sites are people, families, that need a place to live. We can get control of the homes, rent them or purchase them, and move the families in until they can get on their feet. You don't have to put a kid, a baby, a child, a toddler, in a low-barrier shelter. They need to be in an apartment or a house. And we can do that if we follow the county's example, if we follow the federal government's example of getting people into houses first. Because we've been focusing on shelters. All our money is focusing on shelters.
You can't yell out, man, please. It doesn't matter. I'm going to, I'm going to warn you one more time, and I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
So we've been, we've heard a lot, we've heard a lot of suggestions since we've been talking about homelessness up here. And believe me, it's the single issue that this council has spent the most time on. And we've heard all kinds of good suggestions, but we have never really taken a deep, hard dive into seeing if any of these are viable. There are some things that come up, and I appreciate your amendments to the motion. But right before you said that we were going to not let people camp, you mentioned the Boise decision, which says you can't move people from camping. You said we were going to have a zero tolerance for drug use and drug dealing. That's not what we saw at Railroad. We didn't have an effective way of dealing with that, so they set up camp right across the street from Railroad Shelter, and they did a bris business with the people inside the shelter. And I'm thinking, how are you going to detox if you got constant access to the drug? That's why you need to be in a place where you can control the environment. They say they can keep the area clean, they didn't keep Railroad clean. So I say this, Mr. Mayor. I urge you to call an off-site, where we can sit down, and some ideas came up tonight, where we can sit down and explore these ideas, discuss the strategies, where we're not limited by time, where we can get the right people in the room, where we can unify this council, and we can all develop a strategy that we believe in. I urge you to do that.
Councilman Carr, thank you very, very much. I know it took some time, but it was important that you took the time. And all the other members want to speak, but there's one thing that is fresh here that I think I need to get on the record in response, and then I will turn it over to the other members, and it'll be very brief. You talked a lot about the general plan and the citing of shelters that are exclusively on private land, as I understand it. I want to point out to you, and Tom Pace could verify this if necessary, that the provisions in that general plan apply to developers seeking to build these types of facilities, they're intended to govern and regulate private projects. The city has on several occasions exercised its discretion to construct public facilities on city-owned or city-leased land in exactly the same fashion as I am proposing we do tonight. For example, the Railroad Drive Shelter was exempted from these provisions and was located less than 500 feet from a Head Start program at SEDA, a project Councilmember Carr that you voted for. So there is, so there is a precedent here.
Let me, let me respond to that. Because we've already addressed this issue in another context. When we said some facilities couldn't be located within, had to be located within 1,000 feet of RT station, and we looked at it as the way the crow flies, as opposed to how it took you to get there. In order to get to that site, you had to go all the way down Railroad Avenue, all the way back up Del Paso before you got to the Head Start site. So if you look at it as the crow flies, and we've already dismissed this argument, if you look at it as, as the crow flies is close, but if you look at it as you have to get there, it's not close.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. So a few things here from me. It was a surprise to me that you made the change yesterday for this to be a women and children's shelter. And while I appreciate the focus on women and children, and I greatly do, and I think we should focus on women and children, I feel like I've said that a number of times. And I know that success has many mothers, and not success has no mothers. But I thought you- But I fought you hard to get a million dollars to spend on an RFP for women and children. This council supported me in the end, but that was a battle. And some of you had very unkind things to say about me during that battle. And in the end, that RFP went out, and the two projects that were selected, St. John's Women's Shelter and City of Refuge, were both here tonight. And as a result of that $1 million RFP, by the way, Emily, while I'm talking, will you pull up our costing, the costing for this, the, the cost of the three options? Those two projects combined will get us over 100 beds for women and children. And they're not low barrier. They're at St. John's, who did testify tonight, and they told you, St. John's told you tonight, that their shelter is clean and nice, and it absolutely is. I've been there many times, I've taken my daughter there, she's played with the other children. It's not a low barrier shelter. They screen people before they come into that facility. They're, they're known for it. In fact, they've had some issues with it. I hosted a roundtable, and I'm going to pass this out to all of you, and I tabbed the page that you probably want to look at. Back in February, I pulled together over 30 providers who work with women and children in our city, and you can go down the list. Many of them are in this room today. And I asked them, what are the biggest challenges to serving women and children? And we hashed it out over several hours. And then they voted, and they identified collectively their top 10 concerns for women and children. This is the third time I've given you all this report, FYI. A large shelter is not on this report. In fact, a large shelter is specifically stated that they don't want it on here. It says that an emergency triage response for families would look extremely different than a general population model and could not be a group setting. Here's why. And we all have our things to say, right? I am a mom too, and the only woman on this council. Why does that matter? And some of you know this about me, because I deal with a lot of homeless women who come in here and I help them, and I know some of you know that. But when Railroad was open, my staff dealt with every call from every woman who called our office and said, please, send SAC PD in here, we're getting sexually assaulted, and it's a major problem. And I did. I, I worked with our city manager and the police department, and I tried to send people in there. And I tried to help them as best I could. Every time a woman comes to this chamber, including last Tuesday, a woman with a two-year-old and a three-year-old, I get up off of this dais and I go down and try as hard as I can to find a place for them. And I am telling you that I am thrilled, beyond thrilled, that you all want to focus on women and children. But for the love of God, if you're working with children, you have to do what's best for them. They overwhelmingly said they need help using their Section 8 vouchers. And I know you think 2,000 is a big number. You know what's a bigger number? 22,000. That's the number of people waiting for a housing choice voucher. You know how much we could use this money? Emily, wherever your diagram is, if you can put that up there? We're talking about $4 million to build a sprung shelter. You saw a picture of it, you guys. City of Refuge wants to build a new facility with a childcare center on Martin Luther King. It costs $3 million. Women's Empowerment wants to build an entire apartment complex and serve all the women that they couldn't find housing for. They have private funding, they didn't ask us for anything. But I know 4 million would go a long way on your project, Lisa. I'd rather give it to you. Robin, I know you need to expand wind. I know we have more kids than we're reaching now. I would rather give you this $4 million. I would much rather give you the $4 million. We don't do shelters, and we really don't do them well. Okay? I went to Railroad Drive, and I walked through. It was terrible. It was not a place anybody should be. We had a rat infestation, we had a bedbug infestation. The day that I went, there were 90 pit bulls there. That's low barrier. That doesn't mean that if you're women and children that there wouldn't be pit bulls there. In fact, women often on the street have pit bulls to keep themselves safe. So you're going to put those pit bulls in with the children in this shelter model. I can't live with that. And if you think that just because you made it all women and children, that that doesn't mean there will be drugs there, then you are delusional. Okay? And so you're still going to have these children exposed to other people, not their own parents. And by the way, a child is a person under the age of 18. So if a mom shows up with her 17-year-old son, she, he comes in. And I think that's great, but not in this, not in a low barrier system and not in a huge shelter model. This is exactly why I came back to this council with this and said to you, I am willing, in my district that has the least homeless next to Rick's, to do a scatter site model. I'll take them, and I will take the women. And by the way, the largest chunk of women on the street are on the street because they're domestic violence victims. And rule number one for domestic violence victims is that you can't tell the abuser where they are. Mayor, yesterday on your social media, you posted an aerial photograph of the Meadowview site with a circle around it and said, this is where we're going to put the women and children. So it's out for domestic violence. And because it's low barrier, I believe it should be out for children, period. You want to help women and children? I am all in. Let's use every frickin' dollar of that 7-point-whatever-million we have left on women and children. I am all in. Let's do seven more RFPs and get 700 more women and children off of the street. But let's give it to Lisa and Rochelle and Robin and Michelle at St. John's. These women are doing good work. We have good partners. They don't have resources. That's why they're here today saying, please, give us something. This is not something good, and this is not hard work. We could do it tomorrow. We could do an RFP tomorrow. It does not take long. In fact, we already just did it. We don't have to dream up anything. We can just reissue the RFP, we have $7 million to work with. And if you don't want it all to go to women and children, fine, name a different population. Veterans? Spanish-speaking? Youth? I don't care, name it. But put the RFP out and get the experts who do this all day, every day, for years and decades, like they're telling us. Their top 10 list for women and children does not ask you for a low barrier shelter. It's not on the top 10. It's not in there. There's a million other things we could do for them that would help them make it every single day and not put children in harm's way. And by the way, this is our shelter, the City of Sacramento Shelter. So if we do do this and a child does get hurt, guess who's liable? Guess who's responsible? Us. And somebody is going to stand at that podium and say to us, who in the hell thought low barrier for kids was a good idea? And I'm going to be the first to say, not me. Okay? Because I'm the only mom on this council, and I am not going to vote for a low barrier shelter. I don't care where you put it, that we're going to put kids in it. Never. If I wouldn't put my kid there, I won't put yours there. I don't care if you're homeless. They deserve a safe spot. It's not safe. That's the point. Low barrier's not safe. We don't ask them if they're pedophiles. We don't ask them if they're on drugs or have drugs. That's the whole point. We just get them off and start working with them. And that's an important component to this. But it is not for children, period. You want to do women? Fine, work with women, but that does not get you away from the same population that that community told you they did not want to have next to the Pennell Community Center. And this picture right here, I know some people don't want to hear this, but Bonnie Pennell, when I got on this council, I had no friends, right? I ran against an incumbent who was very popular. And I asked every council member at that time, and none of you were here, Jay came in a month after me, I asked every one of them to take me on a tour of their district. Bonnie Pennell started her tour and finished her tour at the Pennell Community Center. It was her point of pride. She walked me through that center and introduced me to every single person in the center. She called it the place of hope, the place that her husband fought for, the place that she fought for. You all know that her daughter died, and this was her way of mothering her community. She's the last woman that I got to serve with on this council, and she would be tearing you all up right now. If she could, if anybody could ever come back, it would be her, and y'all better be scared of that. Because Bonnie Pennell would not have this next to the Pennell Community Center. She would not. There are too many children. That swimming pool is full of the cutest little kids you've ever seen in your life who don't have anywhere else to be on a hot Sacramento summer day, and now you're going to line them up next to a low barrier shelter that has, should be nowhere near children, period. You told Alan Warren you would keep the streets clean around Railroad too. This is not the first time we've heard that. You said you would do that. You added extra money to the P bid and everything to say you would keep it clean. You did not. We did not. We failed on that front, and we won't be able to do it again either, because the same rules apply. And they have less money, and we're running out of money. And my fear here is that when you look up at that board, that's a finite amount of money, 7.8. And I know people want to bet on the come, that the state money might come 14 million later. Great, well, when it does, we can do more cluster housing, we can give more vouchers out, we can pay for the gap funds. But you're going to spend that 7.8 now, and it's gone forever. The last shelter cost us, ready, $400,000 a month. That's basically a million dollars every two months. I just told you, we did an RFP for 1 million, and it's over 100 women and children off the streets in one year. I don't think we're using the money the best way that we can to help the most people that we can in our city. I brought you all copies of the general plan. These are maps. These are the maps of the sites. And here's the actual language, in case you didn't want to read through the thousands of pages that is the general plan. This is not a suggestion. This is the housing element. We adopt the housing element based on what SECAG tells us we have to do. We did this at a dispassionate time. And I am so sorry, but to say we made rules and they don't apply to us is really a bad idea. Okay? These rules apply to us too. In fact, we should hold ourselves to a higher standard than we hold anyone else. How are you going to say that we hold this standard out for everyone else, but not us? I get it, we don't have to. Sure, of course we don't have to. We don't have to follow any of our own rules. But then what kind of leaders would we be? And, and by the way, you're right, I don't want a giant shelter across the street from my future community center, but I don't want one across the street from any of yours either. I want us to help people. I want it to actually work. I want us to spend that money wisely. The mayor has done an amazing job of going out and getting money. You really have, Daryl. You're very good at it, you've done a good job, but we need to spend it in a way that will work so that we can actually get to a better place. The homeless numbers have increased drastically in the time I've been on this council. You saw in my district something like 400 calls. The last point in time count, I had less than 12 homeless people in my district. It's huge. It's grown tremendously across our whole city. I don't know how Steve does anything but deal with homelessness all day long. I don't know how he could possibly do it, and he has no more resources than any of the rest of us do to handle it. I went to SAC High. I'm a SAC High dragon. I also went to McGeorge, and when I did, I was a single mom, very poor, and I lived in low-income housing, by the way, in Natomas. And I used food stamps and subsized childcare. And I took my little baby son to Salvation Army every day so he could play basketball there. That is not a place for children either. That shelter does not belong across the street from Salvation Army. Jay, you've worked harder than anyone up here on this and longer than any of them have even been here. I know, I've watched you painstakingly try so hard to find a site, but you can't put it so close to SAC High and Salvation Army that those people fear sending their kids to that after-school care, because it is one of the few places that's free in that community. And I wouldn't vote for it in Meadowview, and I won't vote for it in Oak Park, and I love Oak Park. I love Oak Park dearly, I've spent a lot of time there. And Rochelle, who came up and testified in favor of that shelter, is one of my best friends, but she's wrong. She's wrong because the children surrounding that community don't deserve to have 100 homeless people put up in a shelter with the type of surrounding that I saw established at Railroad Drive. We can do better than that. And we could, wait.
No, no, no.
And we could do shelters. We can do shelters. Lots of times people come up here and point at me. I am happy to do scatter site shelters in my district. I've said it multiple times. Said you didn't want to spend money on it, well, there's 7.8 million, and I'm willing to do it right now. The proposal on the table is to vote for option C. I want everybody in this room to understand, that means you take all the money and you build two shelters, and there's no money left to run them unless Daryl finds more. That's the option on the table. If we vote yes, we're voting to spend money on two shelter structures and zero money on running them, and we will have zero money left until somebody up here finds more. So I will definitely be voting no on that.
Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I know Councilman Chenier had wanted to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Happy to have him say a few words.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I, I don't want to get into an argument here on this. You vote however you want, we have a problem there. These kids are walking by 100 homeless people every single day. If we want to talk about safety, getting these folks into a controlled environment where we can get them services makes a huge difference. So, you know, we have community support that we've talked to a number of organizations here. The Diocese, Asian Resources, Community Against Sexual Harm, Sacramento Community Land Trust, Oak Park Fixa Cafe, Neighbor Works, Sacramento Food Bank, Community for Peace, City of Refuge, Mercy Peddlers, Wellspring Women's Center, Sierra Curtis Neighborhood Association, Greater Broadway District, and Midtown Association. Those are all supporting this shelter where it is. I believe that they will all come and be partners as we go, as will Wellspaced Clinic, as will Sutter Hospital. I think this is a place that we can do it, and we can make a difference and move people through.
Thank you, Councilman. I was with Councilmember Warren. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very lively discussion, and, you know, what it, what is, what it says, and I hope you hear this, is that we all are very passionate about this issue, and we see it from different perspectives. Councilwoman Ashby is the only woman, she sees it as a mom, very passionate. Councilman Chenier has been working on this issue for a long time. When I came on the council in 2012, this was one of my number-one issues as well. I, I had proposed and wanted to bring forth a Safe Ground site, which I believe ultimately will be part of the solution for homeless, for our homeless entire package that will help us transition people into a better existence. I have a more principled position on this issue, because we have to do some things. And almost anything is better than nothing, is better than what exists now. Part of my decision for this, based on this council and what we decided as a council, the mayor, the city manager, and the rest of our council colleagues, we talked about allowing our council districts and the leader of that district, this elected person, to come up with a plan for his particular or her particular council district. Councilman Carr has vehemently opposed the project that's before us as it relates to District 8. Now, this, this proposal might work with another council person, but for him, it didn't work. And my position is I'd like to give Councilman Carr a little more time to come up with something that he thinks will be a better fit in his district. Now, I've heard Councilwoman Ashby's argument, and I didn't just hear it tonight, I understood what she was going to talk about, and it made a lot of sense to me. But as a council, and trying to stay as a collective unit, even though at times we're going to be at odds, this issue hopefully will not tear this council apart. And so my position is going to be, is to support Councilman Carr on this issue with the understanding that he's going to come back with a proposal that's going to be more suited for his council district. My position likewise will be to support Councilman Chenier, even though I do not believe that that is one of the better sites for a project for homeless people in the city. Has no, it doesn't have any of the underground utilities that's necessary. It's going to be an expensive site to develop for this particular type of housing, and I'm, 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 I'm saying I'm going to support Councilman Chenier, but in the back of my mind, I do not believe that it's really going to happen unless we find a lot more money, because it's ultimately going to be more expensive than what the proposal is today. And at le, at least what he understands and the council understands what that proposal is going to be. But I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt, because as a council, we decided we were going to support each other in their council districts with the city manager's concurrence, even in terms of bringing projects to the council. even in terms of bringing projects to the council for discussion and not even placing them on the agenda if the council person did not support the idea. And so I don't know what happened to that. But it concerns me, because there is another targeted site in Council District 2 that I vehemently oppose. And I do not want any of my colleagues pushing that on me and my constituents. I have already identified another site that I'd like to bring forward in the next few weeks. And I think it's more suitable. And I do not want other on this council, or the mayor, to tell me what they think is best for our council district. I'm born and raised in District 2. My family's been there for over 50 years. There are some families that have been there for over 100 years. And they've weighed in. And they're committed to doing their part. District 2 will do its part. We will have another homeless site very soon identified. But I will say that I am encouraged tonight. I'm concerned, but I'm also encouraged because I see council members stepping forward with proposals for their district, which tells me that the mayor, what you're doing, is working. Even though I know you will be frustrated. I know you will be upset.
I'm happy.
I know you want to do it. And ultimately, we are going to take a bite out of this issue. But I think there's going to be a painful process that will take place. And hopefully, we will grow as a council, and we will grow as a city. And ultimately, we will be a better city, and we will do what's right for the homeless community. Because I believe that we've not, up until now, given it the proper attention. It is starting to happen. This is a good discussion. I'm going to support both of my council colleagues on their issues as they see it. And I will do whatever I can to support Councilman Carr in his proposal that he's going to bring forward to address this issue. And I will also work with Councilman Chenier and try to help, in any way I can, bring forward the proposal that he thinks is best for his district. But it's going to be a challenge any way we do it. And I believe that we do it better if we do it together. That is my feeling. If we put the energy of the city behind these good proposals and ultimately create a situation that works for all of us. So that's my position. I will be supporting both my council colleagues. And I also just want to thank councilperson Ashby, Mayor Protim, because no one could have said what she said the way she said it, I think, and elicited the type of response and emotion and help people understand that this is not just a project that's being approved. These are real people that are going to be impacted. And we do not want to take children out of one bad situation and put them in an equally bad or worse situation and then spend millions of dollars to do it, when we could use that money more efficiently and more effectively. So I want to thank you, okay? Mr. Mayor, thank you for my time.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very difficult position that we're in, and it's a difficult decision that we have to make. But one of the things that I'm moved by is that for the last 10 years, my family and I have been a part of the winter sanctuary, where you actually see 100-plus people come in at night or during the day. And they eat with you, and they talk with you, and they fellowship with you, and they sleep. And then they get up and they eat, and then they get up and they leave, and they go back into the street. And while you're providing shelter for them, you're not providing anything meaningful that's going to help them to change the direction that they're going in. So the winter sanctuary program, for the last 10 years, has just been a program that has provided shelter. And maybe one or two of us touched the lives of somebody along the way that changed their plight. But it wasn't intentional. It didn't get the results that I think. And as a result of it, I think it's pretty much gone away. It's not going to happen anymore. And so that leaves another void as far as the people who are going to be on the street. And when you take a look at just the statistics that have been mentioned here tonight, a historic increase in homelessness. A 19% increase in homelessness since 2017. 132 deaths in 2018. And I heard one person say that that was up from 2017 and up from 2016. Winter is coming. The winter months are coming. And we got to deal with the weather conditions of people not only being on the street, but being in the rain, and then the cold, and unprotected. And not just the homeless adults, but also the homeless kids that are out there, not by any decision that they made themselves. Another fact is that 1,150 single women or women with children are now out on the street. And what concerns me as a council member is every single day, I drive through all the streets searching for a site for District 7. Because we said as a council, every district had to have a site. Every district had to participate. And I've been searching, searching, searching. And because I couldn't find anything in my own district, and we worked on it together, and couldn't find anything in my district that fit the need of what we were trying to do, I started talking to my colleagues. And Councilmember Carr and I started looking together. And Councilmember Guerra and I started looking together. And Councilmember Chenier. We represent the four districts that really represent the South area of Sacramento. When you start looking at that sheet that Councilmember Carr had his chief of staff put up and showed you all the numbers that were in District 1 through District 8, of all the calls that were made, 6,379 came from District 5, 6, 7, and 8, which represents the South area. So I feel like we are in an emergency already. I feel like, somebody asked the question, "When do you move from crisis to emergency?" I feel like we already are in an emergency. And my problem as a council member, and as a political leader in the city of Sacramento, and as a citizen, is that I don't have a strategy to affect change.
Please.
I'm not doing anything that's going to be able to affect the change that I want to see. I don't have a strategy. I can't get people off the street because I don't have a shelter to send them to. I can't get the police to move them from their camping sites because I don't have a shelter. And so the number-one priority that we've talked about is to have a South-area shelter. And shame on me, for the five years that I've been on the council, shame on me for not having a shelter up to this point. But that doesn't mean I have to continue that way. And so every place that we go to, there is opposition to the shelter. Every single place. And that's not just since I've been on this council. This has been going on for years. In 2017, the Railroad Triage Shelter was open. The Woodlake Neighborhood Association was adamantly opposed to it. I worked on that boulevard, at 920 Del Paso Boulevard. We've been there for 10 years. We watched the whole thing happen. Adamantly opposed to it. Two years later, we tend to frown on the 40% success that we had. We act like that's not good. Well, maybe we can do better. And so in our first shelter, we got 40%. But that's a significant number of people, if we had never opened a shelter, would have never gotten the services that they need to be able to move into permanent and supportive housing, to be able to get a job again, to be able to reconnect with their family, to be off the street, and help their other relatives to get off the street. And so I think we did a good thing, Mayor. I think it was good. And so maybe it wasn't great, maybe it wasn't excellent, but I think it was a good thing. And I think it can get better. And I'm convinced that this is the right way to go. It's hard to get people off the street if you're not dealing in low barrier. It is hard to get people to disconnect from their animals, to disconnect from their belongings. It is hard. That is all they have. That is all they know. That is what keeps them going. At least, most of them. And we've got to learn how to make these things work within our communities, or else we're going to deal with this problem for the rest of our lives. And we're going to become a San Francisco, and we're going to become a Los Angeles. I heard the people come up about Havens for Hope. I'm all down for Havens for Hope. But Havens for Hope is not going to get up and running by the time the winter months come. It's not going to happen. I'm looking for 37 acres as well. If I can find one acre to get a slot up in District 7, I'll take that. And then I'll start looking for the 37 acres. But it's not going to happen. The RT-owned land, Jay, you talked about that. It's not feasible. It's not paved, it's not connected to utilities. So it's not feasible. I appreciate the community for bringing that to our attention. And that's what we need to do more of. We need to work together more to bring these things to our attention. So we work together to create the change that we all want to see. I haven't heard one person up here say that they don't want to serve the homeless. I haven't heard that. What I've heard is, "Not in my backyard." That's what I've heard. You can say it any way you want to say it. I've heard it. It's not in my backyard. I have a lot of respect for my colleague Larry Carr. And I'm not a person that generally votes against anybody on this council. It has not been my practice. I support the council member whenever I can. I support Larry Carr for his number of years with the U.S. Army. I support him for his number of years with SMOUD, and for his number of years on this council. He is a friend. I'm hoping that these kinds of things don't stop us from being friends. But I don't support his decision in this. I can't support it. My work with the homeless says, we have to do more than what we've done. So the mayor has asked you not to speak out. He's asked you over and over again. He's been very patient tonight, so we don't have to throw anybody out. I would ask you once more to not speak out while the council is talking, just like the council didn't speak out while you were talking. So I would just ask you one more time. So I'm open to anything that we can do to get the sites open and to get them open before the winter months come. And I think it's important that we make that a priority. There are a lot of strategies that have been talked about on the table tonight, a lot of strategies. But if they don't include getting a shelter open by the winter, and I kind of feel like I'm to blame for the women and children's concept. I was at the meeting with the community. I heard them, just like you did. We had conversations about, would this fit in Meadowview? I thought we had agreement that we were going to go forward, but obviously, I was wrong. So I will be supporting the motion that's on the table. And I feel like it's the best thing to do for the city of Sacramento. If not, 19% becomes 22% next year. And then after that, it becomes 30%. And after that, it becomes an epidemic. And we have not done anything about it to affect change. We have done nothing about it that's going to create substantial change. And so I'm not going to sit around and be on this council and not do something to create change. I'm not going to do that. That's not who I am. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Jennings, I want to thank you for your candor, your heart, and your hard work. And you raised an issue I just want to respond to in terms of the community meeting two weeks ago. And Councilmember Carr raised, how did this change so quickly? Councilmember Ashby asked the same thing. From a low-barrier triage to a women and children's triage shelter in Meadowview. And the answer is very simple. It changed because I listen to the community. And we have an opportunity to meet a tremendous need. That's all. Simple. Thank you. Councilmember...
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I was at that community meeting. Did somebody at that meeting tell you they wanted a women and children's shelter?
I heard the concern about particular populations that were not women and children. That's what I heard. From you, especially. And from members of the community, that there were certain populations that you did not want to see. Okay. I'm going to move on to Councilmember Harris. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty interesting discussion. When you talk about homelessness, the passions definitely swell. Councilmember Jennings, thank you for your comments. I appreciate them very much. And also, Jay, you brought up a couple that I'd like to address a little later, that I think were very insightful. Heard a lot of testimony tonight that has a base assumption that I hear a lot in the community. And that assumption is that a triage shelter will cause harm to a community. You know, it's an erroneous assumption, and I think it's wrong. And I think we proved it wrong with Railroad Drive Shelter. I heard testimony tonight about the railroad shelter that was patently false. And I take a little umbrage at it, because I not only had sweat equity in that shelter, having helped build it with volunteers, but I was there many, many hours, looking at the operations, talking to VOA, working with the people there. Some things, some of the behaviors there were bad. There were drug addicts there. Yeah, and some of them acted out. Balance that against the fact that not only did it serve as winter shelter through the first winter, which was one of the things that motivated us to open that shelter, but 264 people found their way to some form of housing through that shelter. Served 680 people. These aren't small numbers when you're talking about the homeless population. Last week, we extolled the virtues of the Railroad Drive Shelter. It did a lot of good, in my opinion. District 3 had 12,000 calls for service last year. District 3 probably has more than 1,000 people sleeping outdoors tonight. Okay? It comes close to 50% of the homeless, chronically unsheltered people in the region in District 3. And I've said it many times before, it's because the river runs through it. That's exactly why. And the preponderance of not only beds, but services available in the River District. Understand that District 3 already has the majority of shelter beds in the city. Over 400. Do you hear me worrying about creating more shelter beds? I say, bring them. I want more. I want the CalExpo site. I'm still scouring. And maybe there's a motel that I have a possibility of buying with Mercy Housing and turning into shelter. I want to start a first-step communities build-out in the north part of my district. I can tell you that if we leave homeless outdoors, the lack of safety out there is far worse than anything that can happen if we get people sheltered. And is shelter perfect if it's low barrier? No, but it works. And if you only cherry-pick and pull people into shelter because they have such a small array of issues that you can be immediately successful, we will never address the population. Two-thirds of the homeless population outdoors have addiction issues, have a wide plethora of issues. We have to be bold enough to face that and address it and get after the heart of the issue. When I see women and children in the River District sleeping outdoors, I can't tell you how heartbreaking it is that as a representative, that I can't offer them shelter that night. Lisa Culp is shaking her head, "Yes." She knows better than anybody what it's like to work with women and children in the homeless population. Women's Empowerment does an absolutely stellar job. And yes, do I want to create shelter for all those women? Yes. Work with Nikki Mahana and build a build-out in the River District? Yes. We have to use all the tools in our kit. I'm not shy about doing this. I looked for two years to find the railroad site. Finally got it. It was an experiment. We made some mistakes. It wasn't perfect, but we can do better now. I've heard so many people say tonight, "I'm concerned about the homeless. I have compassion for the homeless, but this is a bad site." Let me tell you, every site I've ever proposed, a whole pile of people came out and said, "This is a bad site. You can't do it here." That is not going to change. That is not going to change. People have anxiety about having an aggregate of homeless people anywhere near them in their community. But it is not a bad thing. And I would challenge you this way. We can make this a point of pride in a community. We can run a shelter so efficiently that we can walk up to it and say, "As a community, Sacramento is taking care of its homeless." And that's exactly where we need to get. And we can. We have to allocate the right amount of resources to it. And so the mayor and I sat and talked this morning over breakfast. And I told him, "I would not support a shelter unless we are bold enough to allocate all the resources that are necessary to keep it clean and keep it safe." We had some drug sale problems around Railroad. You know, we had street feeding, which was incredibly problematic. In Jay Shuneur's motion, he brought those up explicitly. And, Mr. Mayor, I do have a concern. If we go for Option C, we've put all our money into capital, and we're going to be searching for funds for operations. And I would challenge you this way. If we have any problems, any hiccups, if we stand up these shelters, we have twenty-seven million dollars in general fund carryover. And if we need to use it, we have to use it. And here's why. This is a high-stakes game. If we open a shelter in the neighborhood and we don't do it well, if anybody says we blighted their neighborhood or caused them problems, we're out of the homeless game altogether. We lose it all. We either go in a hundred percent and make this work and work well, or we're going to lose the game. And try to start another shelter anywhere in the city, it's not going to happen. We got one shot. We learned some things at Railroad. We can apply all of that knowledge, which is voluminous. But the next shelter we open has to be a hundred percent win. I know that we can do it. I believe that we can do it, and I believe that we have to do it. It's imperative, though, that we have adequate funding to make this work. You know, um, heard a lot about Haven for Hope. There are still some Haven people here. We have a Haven for, for Hope in our region. It's called Mather Community Campus. It doesn't have the capacity of Haven for Hope, but there's a heck of a lot of land there. And you know what? It's languishing for lack of funding from the county, from HUD. I asked at this council, at this diocese, three weeks ago, that we allocate a million dollars to, to make sure that seventy homeless shelter beds were not lost at Mather Community Campus. We didn't do it in time, and those beds are lost now. But it has tremendous potential. And I would challenge everybody who comes up here and talks about Haven for Hope, I will personally take you out to Mather Community Campus and show you what we can do. The Volunteers of America have a tremendous program there. They take drug-addicted people with no future, get them into their programs, give them job training, and get them into housing at market rate. All in the course of eighteen months, they can do this. It's a tremendous program. It achieves everything that Haven for Hope does, but not with that capacity. And our issue, as the mayor has pointed out many times, is a capacity issue.
And volume.
I, I, I think that this council actually has the mettle to, to step up and allocate these tremendous resources. And yes, Mayor Steinberg has been very energetic about bringing in millions of dollars. It does take millions of dollars to deal with homelessness. It just does. The alternative is, we don't spend the money, and you see what the impacts are on the street, and they're getting worse. And we could find ourselves in the situation that Seattle finds itself in, in three years. Now is our time. Now is our shot. We really need to do this. I'd like to thank, uh, Dr. Flojan Koffer and Terry Galvin, Cassandra Jennings, and David Bain for their testimony tonight, because it's valuable. These are people who look at their community and value their community and see, I think, the heart of the problem. We have a time emergency, as, as Councilmember Jennings pointed out. We have winter coming, and we need winter shelter as well as triage. You know, we need to open a couple of facilities just simply to get people out of the elements and save lives in that, in that way. The River District has really suffered under the burden of homelessness for, for twenty-five years. As I said, the, the services that are there, the homeless shelter beds are there. And now, as part of this, as part of this proposal, we're looking to repurpose a hundred-and-sixty?
Hundred-and-eighty-four.
Hundred-and-eighty, eighty-four? Hundred-and-eighty-four beds in the River District to apply services more robustly to move people into housing. This is a good thing. I also support a safe camping environment because we don't have the capacity we need. And I've talked to the mayor about this this morning. I've talked to Alan Warren about it. I didn't used to support this, this idea, but I can tell you, when I look around the River District and I see the despair, the despondence, the filth, the horrible behavior in the River District, we have to do something, and we have to do something quick. And so I will be bringing back a proposal about that in a couple of weeks. Perhaps I can conjoin with Councilmember Warren on a, on a program that we both support. The fact is, there are lots of ways to approach homelessness. People have disparate needs. We have to be creative. We have to create different types of shelter for different populations. But I'll tell you what. Any child who's indoor tonight is better off than a child outdoor tonight. And low-barrier, medium-barrier, high-barrier, I don't care what it is, kids should not be sleeping outdoors on the ground with a drug-addicted parent or a parent who's straight as a whistle but just simply can't find the funds to get into housing. We have to address this, and we have to be bold and address it head-on. I guess that's the most of it. No, actually, there's one more thing I want to tell you. Pitbull Dave, who we helped at the Railroad Shelter, had been on the Parkway for thirty-eight years. And he came into the shelter, and he was decrepit. Okay, he's doing well now. He's in Quinn Cottages. He sat next to me at the Volunteers of America fundraiser breakfast. You know where he was yesterday? He was at Capitol Park Hotel saying, "How can I help build this shelter?" Okay? Think about that. Think about the ramifications of that. That one of the persons who was most chronically homeless in our city got rehabbed and now wants to build a homeless shelter and help. It can be done, and I am going to support this motion because it must be done.
I want to thank you for all the endless hours of time and energy you have spent moving us forward here, Councilmember Harris. Thank you. Councilmember Gedda?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I think, I've tried to punch up before my colleague, Councilmember Jeff Harris, because it's, it's always difficult to go and speak up after, after him on this issue. I do want to thank him for his consistent commitment and honest focus on this. I've been truly a leader on this issue. And, Mr. Mayor, I also want to thank you on this, too. But I want to start off with a lot of thank-yous. And first of all, with Emily Halken. I think you have done an amazing amount of work in researching all of our questions. All of these questions that were brought up here today, you've been researching and providing us consistent information. Now, if we refuse to acknowledge that information you've given us, or refuse to accept, that's on us. But I want to thank you for that. And I want to thank Lisa Bates and Terry Galvan, who's over, uh, over here, and I work with her a lot on Stockton Boulevard, and Rochelle Ditmore, who, uh, has been active in, in District Five as well. Cassandra Jennings. Uh, Joanie Titherton, thank you so much. We look up to you in the neighborhood out here. Uh, Lisa Cold, you've been out here. And if you think that the collection of all of these strong women who've been working on this issue and all agree on it, if you think any one of us in here knows better than them, I don't know what we're thinking. Okay? I think it was very clear from presentation here that all of them here came up and said, "We need to move the needle on this. There's no perfect solution, but this is the way to move forward." And there's been a lot of good questions posed here by the public. Good questions that we have all wrestled with individually, within our council districts, within our constituents, within our colleagues. And I have to, I'll be quite vocal about the fact that they've been answered by our staff, they've been answered by our experts. And yes, some of them are not answers we want to hear. But they've been asked, and they've been answered. The focus on the long-term solution, we cannot give up on that. That is true. We have to fit, focus on housing. We have to continue on that. And you know what we've done with that? We've eliminated all our, uh, our fees, our mitigation fees, for anybody who's building affordable housing in Sacramento. We started specific plans to expedite permitting and, and, and planning. We've, uh, thanks to Councilmember Hanson here, who took the lead on looking at bonding a hundred million dollars for gap financing for affordable housing. So the question about long-term, for anyone in the room, there's been a commitment on this council to address the long-term issue. And we must be steadfast on that piece. That means taking strong action to look at active space that we can use to build and, and construct housing. I know I want more on, in Stockton Boulevard. I know I want more in my district, any open site that we can to build housing. But the fact is, all of that is going to take a lot of time. All of that is going to take a lot of other funding, and even more expensive funding. If you think seven million dollars is a lot of money that we're using right now, seven million dollars isn't going to get you, you know, but a couple rooms. The fact is, the long game is something we're working on, but it's not going to address the issue. And the issue of industrial-forcing, you know, shelters only in industrial sites. You know, I'm going to ask Emily, because it's been brought up a lot. And they showed the zoning map here. Um, if you could pass that down, uh, to put that on the, on the board there. They showed this a lot, which includes Council District Six. They showed Council District Two in the industrial area. And I represent a district that is the largest industrial area, and one of the largest in the county, but in the city of Sacramento, the largest industrial area. And if you look on this, um, I'm going to point out that, one, one of the programs that, uh, that I'm always advocating for in my district, St. John's, that helps, uh, women and children and families, is in, in that industrial area. And if you look at this area, the area on the dark purple is a gravel pit, a mining pit. It's unrealistic. You'll never build anything there. In fact, they're trying to do something with it now, but that's a mining pit. The other areas are so far on the edge of the city, next to the, 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 the scrapyard where all the cars are. It's probably contaminated with all kinds of oil and whatnot. The other ones are next to the landfill. That, the, the nice pink one there, that's next to the Florence Perkins landfill. That's a wonderful spot for people to recover. The point is, our general plan, much like old policies, much like policies that created redlining in my district, are plans that said, "We don't want people around us." There are plans that said, "We don't have to see them. We can forget about them. We can forget about the shelter." That's what those policies were built like, because they didn't want, we didn't want that. And because of it, our providers have had to actually meet those stringent requirements. St. John's, who has kids there, they have to bus their kids to Tahoe Park, to the Tahoe-Talek area with the YMCA for the, the summer camp. Because what? That what's next door is the old Jackson Property warehouses? I mean, the, that's the environment that they're in. Across the street, another mining pit, the gravel, the old granite mining pit. When you talk about only putting them in industrial areas, that's, that's the situation you get. By the way, that shelter is also adjacent to a high school. So I've never heard any issues about, uh, the high school having a challenge. It's also next, close, next to a probation office. The fact is, we've, all of these issues can be addressed. And here's another big fact. Winter is coming. My good friend, Councilmember Jennings here, said, "Winter is coming." And you can't get around that. And when winter comes, we're going to have another kid who's going to go cold. We're going to have another kid who's going to go hungry. We're going to have another family who's going to be calling us for help. And it hurt me to get a call from an old Sac State colleague, classmate, who ended up in her car. Lived in College Greens, but for whatever reason, life turned south and ended up in her car and was living outside of a motel with her three daughters. And to hear the, the challenge and try to help her to get, all she said is just, "You know, I just want to get some gifts for my, for them for Christmas. Is there anything we can help? I do want to thank Cash for helping, uh, her and, and all of the providers there find her a place." But that was, that was painful to see that. Isn't that all why? Because we didn't have a space for them? Because the amount of space in our current shelters is at maximum? The homeless numbers have increased in the city because we've made perfection the enemy of the good. Let me be clear about that. We've argued over and over again, since I got on this council, about what the perfect solution is. And the substitute, the substitute alternatives that have been brought forward, even the county scattered solution, don't move the needle. Because we're not going to move the needle when we're only making forty spots here, ten spots there, twenty spots there. The fact is, we've got thousands of homeless individuals in our city. We've got over a thousand families that are homeless in our, in our city. We saw the numbers today. I want to thank Sac State for their work and their research and getting empirical numbers in front of us. That's the fact. We've all come to experience these challenges. We all address these challenges based on our own life experiences. And I know what it's like as a kid to go hungry, to be in the, in the government cheese line looking for that. I know what it's like. I know what it's like to live in a vehicle. I know what it's like to experience that feeling. And for a kid to go through that, it's, it's, it's a horrible feeling. So as a dad, which by the way, I take offense to the fact that you think that, that someone may think that dads don't have that same amount of, of, of feeling towards their kid, because my toddler, for everybody who knows, was out making a ruckus yesterday at the SMT hearing, at the SMT board presentation. I love this child. And I would never want him to experience the cold and hunger that I've seen and felt myself. So you better believe that when the mid-year budget came around, and I, and there was an opportunity to provide more funding to our local shelters, I was harassing Howard and harassing the mayor and saying, "This has got to be part of our mid-year solution." We had to do it. But let me just end with this. If there is no place, if there is no place for folks, then we will only repeat what happened last year, which was ninety-five individuals who died on the street, families who were in the cold, and all because we were looking for the perfect solution. I ask for an eye vote.
Eric, I want to thank you. You fought for the money, and you're taking the beds in your district. Fifty additional beds. I thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rarely do I have the pleasure to speak last, but, um, I'm...
I'll, I'll take the last.
Okay, good.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't help but come back to Pastor of Genesis Church and, and think about some of the things I learned growing up. Whatever you did for the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you did for me. Councilmember Ashby, when you're talking about kids out there on the streets, I, if you could look at me for a second. When I was a child, we became homeless. We ate at a soup kitchen. We had to have a shelter. For those kids that you're talking about tonight, who you think would be better off on the street? I'm, I'm telling you what I heard. Please don't argue with me. I did not interrupt you. But I did not interrupt you, Angelique. Do not interrupt me when I'm talking. That is what you implied. That if we don't, if we build the shelter, they're worse off. And that is not true. As a child, I would have been better off to be in a shelter than be on the streets. I'm talking about me. I'm talking about me. I know this. I have a cousin who is homeless, who is killed, sleeping outside. But many of you know, too, that recently, I, I got to celebrate, in my own family, the extension of my family. Were able to adopt a child from foster. One of the things we learned at the end of that was that his mother was homeless. She was a young woman. She had had a lot of problems. She didn't have a shelter. Angelique, I'm trying to talk to you. I wish, I wish you would look at me, because I want you to... No, you, you, this is very personal. This, there's no way that we don't think that this is personal. When we talk about these issues, there is no way that we don't think these are personal things. Larry, my, my friend, my colleague, I put a shelter when Mr. Mayor first came to us, both in Southside Park, a warming center, and a pool building, because I wanted to help people. That same winter, we took the I Street Garage here, three blocks from my house, and we put a, a shelter there. We've been trying. If I walk away from this job one day and say, "I didn't try as hard as I can to move people from the streets into housing," I will think, I will have thought that I did not do my job. I will have thought that I did not honor where I came from and what allowed me to get to where I am. So it's really easy to demonize people who are on the streets. It's easy to say that they are other. Maya Angelou, "I am a human being. Nothing human can be alien to me," quoting Terrence Safran. Safran. These are not foreign species. These are women and children, particularly that we're talking about from Meadowview. And I've gone to the Women's Empowerment graduation and heard their stories. Just earlier this month, I went and played with the kids from the Mustard Seed School, which is a school for homeless kids to have an opportunity to better themselves, to be part of something, some structure. And for people to come and say they should not have a shelter, I cannot walk away from a meeting like this and say that that's okay. I could never vote no on that. Because that's just not why we're here. To serve the greater good, yes, perfection isn't the goal. We are trying and trying and trying. We are trying multiple things all the time. We have not stopped trying. When we stop trying, we give up hope. When you put up the map of District 4 and you see those calls, those people who have migrated to my district, to Jeff's district, to Allen's district, they're migrating for hope, because the places they come from in other parts of the city, maybe other parts of the region, have told them they're not wanted. They've said the very same things. You are not my brother, you are not my sister, and I do not want you. So they have not found help in their communities, and they've come to downtown, midtown, to the River District, to live in the Parkway, because they feel abandoned. And that is not what the purpose of the city is for. That's not what my mission on the City Council is. And Mayor, you have done a phenomenal job in focusing us on this. And when we hear about HUD and the county, they stopped funding shelters because they didn't want to spend the money, not because they didn't work. And the old shelter model, honestly, wasn't a good model. These low-barrier, intensive-service, 24-hour shelters, they change lives. When you make people move every day, they can't even know where they're going to be, they can't connect with family and friends. Their life is constantly disrupted. That is not a way to be a human. That is a way to survive at the barest minimum level. And then if you look at the homeless death report that was released today, many of those people are vulnerable. We have them dying in our streets and alleys. It used to be that people get arrested, and they'd be brought downtown to the jail just to be released. That doesn't work either. And so we have to do something. We have an obligation under the oath that we swore, under the pledge that we make as public servants, not to say, not in my backyard. Not in my backyard is not an answer to the question, is not a solution to the problem. Yes in my backyard doesn't mean that you're not willing to make your effort to make it better, to work with it, to modify it. And I think, Mayor, in response to some of the criticism, you said, okay, let's try to serve women and children. If we engage as leaders to try to shape things, we make them better. If we say we're not going to engage, we're just going to try to vote no, that doesn't make it better. That doesn't send the message to our community that if we work together, we build trust that we're going to come out the other end as a better community. It just says, I'm out. I'm done. No way, no how. The community that I know, whether it's my district or some of the people I've talked to in other places, they want to do something. They want to step up. Fear is powerful, but it should not win. Freedom from fear was four of the essential human freedoms articulated by Franklin Roosevelt. We have to remember that we should not let fear govern us, and I am not going to let fear win tonight. I lived near the WX Shelter, my first house after my dad died, was there at 33rd and W. I drove every day past the spot where it's going to be as I came to work or home. I worked at McGeorge. I drove that way. I often called Councilmember Chenier or his staff to say, what are we doing about what's going on under the freeway here? This is as good a solution as we can have. We've got 24 months. We've got two years to figure out whether this will work. We are iterating towards problem solving. And if we walk away and just say no, then that is saying that we should give up hope, that those people who have been rejected by their communities seeking hope, that they should go somewhere else. And I don't think this is a city that is going to give up. We are the indomitable city. We don't give up, we fight on, and we fight for each other. And so I am a yes.
Councilmember Hanson, you have led to establish a 180-bed triage shelter in the heart of downtown and the heart of your district.
And a youth shelter, and many other things.
I wasn't forgetting those things either.
No, we've never said no. My district has never said no. My district has never said no.
My, a simple thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify a couple of things. One is, and we could go back to the tape if necessary, I think Mayor Pro-Tim Ashby had laid out some alternatives not to say, let's not do anything. She talked about supporting, you know, the St. John's Women's Shelter and some other organizations. So I just want to be clear about that. So, the other thing is this. Several years ago, I talked about a safe ground site, and that was really not well-received by this council. You know, I hear my colleague, Councilman Harrison, even the mayor, has talked about, you know, now it might be more timely, and so we're going to be working on that. But in addition to all of that, and all of the things that we're going to do tonight and into the future, it only matters if we're making an impact, if we see the difference on the streets, or not on the streets. If we spend all this money and do all these things, and we continue to have people that are homeless sleeping in doorsteps and on sidewalks and in people's front yards, it will not mean anything to those people that are still being impacted by it. So ultimately, we have to see results in the city. This city needs to be safer, cleaner, fewer homeless people on the streets, fewer problems in our city. And that's how I would judge whether we're successful or not. We've got a lot of work to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Allen. Last comments. I appreciate everyone's passion, and I'm pretty passionate about this subject and our city as well, as you know. Spent a lot of my adult life fighting for these causes, whether it's the Mental Health Services Act, many chapters. And I am passionate about it, but I want to, in my closing here, just stick to the facts a little bit, because everyone is tired and there has been a lot of emotion. Let's be clear, in this city, we are moving, and we are moving aggressively on this issue. And we need to move even more aggressively. And I thank all of you who are helping. I want to thank Emily Halken, deserves all the compliments in the world. Forever, whatever disagreements we might have about certain details, I respect and admire you. And you're an incredible resource to our city, so thank you. I find it noteworthy, on the argument side, that the three leading women advocates and organization for homeless women and children came tonight to support the plan. The City of Refuge, St. John's Women's and Children's Program, included a letter, and Lisa Kulp with Women's Empowerment. All are here in support. Jeff Harris said something that has been a consistent part of my argument here. While it is important to help every individual, because we are talking about human beings, and what is demoralizing a little bit to me is to hear from many quarters, in different quarters, the demonization of our fellow human beings, because but for the grace of God, there go I. And we heard it tonight. Council colleagues have talked about their own experience. We tend to, we talk about the homeless as the other, and their impact on us and our communities, they are us. They are us. It is no longer enough to cut a ribbon in this community and say with satisfaction that we have helped some people, especially when we have the capacity and now the resources to help many more people. The volume matters here. Because to save one life and to forsake five others is not enough. We must deal with what is before us. And what is before us is a point in time count and a number that says, 1,000 women or so with children are unsheltered on the streets of Sacramento. The substantive problem I have with Councilmember Carr and Councilmembers Ashby's arguments, not questioning motive here at all, is the following. Where are your sites for anything that you want to do? I appreciate that Councilmember Ashby held a very substantive forum. It got a lot of input. Winter is coming. Where are the scattered sites that are ready to open the 1st of November? Councilmember Carr, actually, the truth be told, when the story is written, has actually worked very, very hard to find alternative sites in his district, as has Councilmember Jennings. Guess what? None of them panned out for various reasons. This is what is before us. And we're talking about at Meadowview, women and children. Those who oppose this, can we at least acknowledge together that if we were to turn this down, that we would in fact, for this winter at least, be relegating hundreds of people, including hundreds of women and children on the streets? And because we don't have enough. St. John's is a great example. You better believe we ought to invest more in St. John's. In fact, we're doing that. They have 50 vacant beds. 50 does not equal 1,100. Everybody matters here. We're going to move. And we're going to listen, and we're going to adapt, just as we have with the Meadowview site. And we are going to make a big dent in this problem. And shelter is not the only answer. But without that bridge from underneath the freeway, the riverbank, to triage shelter, which is proven and existing, by the way, in many California cities with great success, look at San Diego. Without that bridge, we cannot help people find their ultimate stability. So I'm proud of the council tonight, and I'm proud of the community, that we listen to each other, mostly civilly, and that the democratic process is going to work, and that in a moment, we are going to vote. And we are going to move forward, and we're going to bring hundreds of people indoors as quickly as possible. And hundreds will turn into thousands. Let us call Councilmember Carr. Did you want the last word?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Chenier's got a word, too. Go ahead.
For a change, I kind of disagree with you. I've heard a lot of suggestions about what we can do tonight. I've heard how we can get people off the street right now. I heard how we can supplement the vouchers so that the landlords will take it. I've heard a lot of suggestions coming from council members from this dais for a long time that have been ignored. We've been singularly focused on shelters. And I refute the idea that there haven't been other ways to get people off the street. I think Councilmember Ashby really pointed out how we can get people off the street very rapidly by just doing another RFP and save money while doing it. And we haven't even addressed the fact that once, even if you can get this $12 million, what we do after that, and how we incentivize houses, that's the eventual thing that we need to do. So I think there have been ideas. That's why I've urged you to call a council retreat, let us get together and talk about this before we keep going, playing from the seat of our pants, jumping out, doing things that may or may not be effective or may not be the right thing to do.
Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, I'd like to add a little bit of direction on two items to the motion, and if Mr. Guerra is okay. One is, like, Emily, if you could bring back what we could do around kind of site preparation to get going. So I'm talking about the possibility of, and this would be for both shelters, if they both pass, this would be bringing downtown streets to the areas earlier and kind of working with the neighborhood early on, because I think building trust is going to be important. And if we can start doing some things around that issue, that would be great earlier. The second thing is, you know, I'd like us to look at kind of a regular schedule and updates of the shelters as we move forward. This would be for downtown, the two large shelters, if they go forward after this vote, and the small shelters as well. So not only would we have these advisory committees, but we'd have good data for them coming back to the council as well, so we can work with those communities and make sure people know. I already got an email from somebody who told me he's selling his house and moving to another community. I actually think this will improve, so I think we're going to need the data to show what's happening in these neighborhoods. So if that's okay with you.
Thank you. You okay with that, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Harris has a comment.
So, Councilmember Chenier, you know, I expressed my concern about possibly coming up short with money for operations. I wonder if you'd accept amendment to your motion that if need be, in the short term, we could use general fund money to make sure that we run these shelters efficiently, cleanly, and do what we've promised tonight, which is to say, we won't allow drug sales, we won't allow street feeding, we won't allow the accumulation of garbage. Because that's basically the pact we're making with our constituents here.
I think that might be a whole nother discussion at the council. What I would say is, if I could add direction to Emily, to bring us back a plan if we fall short, that we can discuss.
I can do that.
Okay. Yeah. And I strongly agree with Councilmember Harris on this.
We need to do it right.
All in.
I've no doubt about that.
All in.
But let's have that discussion.
I think it is time to hear the will of the City Council through the way we exercise our power and decisions, and that is through a vote, which is...
Two votes.
Which is two votes, which is also the will of the people of Sacramento here. So let's take one at a time. Let's start with the WX Project, okay? The WX Project, please call the roll by name.
So the WX Project is the Broadway-Hall Hambur Rehousers Shelter.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Aye.
Councilmember Warren.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. On the Meadowview Women's and Children's Shelter.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Aye.
Councilmember Warren.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. The WX Freeway Project passes 7 to 2. The Meadowview Women's and Children's Shelter passes 6 to 3. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. [applause] Oh, the motion did include, Jay did, Councilmember Chenier did include the other pieces of your recommendation. That was included in his motion. Yes, it was. Okay. Yes, thank you. Okay. Item 18. Oh, item 19, by the way. Item 19 that we're going to do, by the way, item 20 without objection is going to be continued to next week and will be the first item heard at next week's council meeting. Did, what did we say?
Which one? 20?
20.
20, yes.
Yes, that's right. So we do have 19, which is a discussion item, and again, welcome to discuss it tonight, or we can have a full hearing, whatever you choose. Well, it's Councilmember Jennings, as you heard, and I'm going to... Go ahead. Can we, I'm sorry, hold on a sec, Councilmember.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think we can be pretty quick in our presentation of this. This is a safe parking lot program. We can be pretty quick, and we can, I think there is also an opportunity to give direction to the city manager, bring back the framework and the budget, the potential locations and the community partners. But we just want to give you a quick update to what we've done in San Diego as well as in San Jose.
Dennis.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Guerra, Pro-Tim Ashby, oh, sorry. My name's Dennis Rogers, I'm the chief of staff to Councilmember Jennings. I'm here tonight to give a brief presentation on the possibility of the city undertaking I'm here tonight to give a brief presentation on the possibility of the city undertaking a safe parking program. Homelessness in vehicles has increased. The most recent point-in-time count showed a 62% increase in people living in their vehicles. This includes a cross-section of youth, seniors, veterans, families, and individuals. In addition, members of the state legislature have introduced bills to mandate safe parking at community colleges and in cities with more than 330,000 residents. Importantly, AB 891 does not mandate case management, but is instead just a parking program. Both pieces of legislation have made it out of the House of origin and are now on the Senate Appropriations Suspense File. In addition, AB 891 passed the Assembly with 55 votes. Research and sites visits. Programs from throughout the state were reviewed, discussions with nonprofit sponsors, program operators, and government agencies were conducted. Ultimately, two site visits were scheduled to San Diego and San Jose. The sites visited were both individual as well as family programs. The site visit locations were chosen to review an established program and a program just beginning. San Diego had their program for just over 10 years, and San Jose has started up about nine months ago. San Jose's family program, which includes case management, has hosted 60 families. Forty have been placed in shelters transitional or supportive of long-term housing. Fifteen families are still in the program, and five families were asked to leave. The major takeaways that are included in the recommendations from the site visit is that it should be a service-rich program, not merely a place to park. Case management should be the focus. It should be by referral only. There should be a well-defined good neighbor policy, and there should be a community partner champion that is from the neighborhood that the parking lot is in. This community champion most likely would be separate from the program provider. In addition, the service provider should have experience with case management. The facilities should have, at a minimum, restrooms and a meeting room for the service providers to meet with clients. The ideal site would include showers. The family site in San Jose was next to a community center library and included restroom showers and the libraries. And the budget for San Jose was $375,000, and the budget for San Diego was $100,000. Depending upon security and staffing, that kind of is the reason why that you have such a large discrepancy in the operations. Programs operated at night, and the participants exited the park in the morning. The main request that we have in front of you is to direct the city manager to further investigate and return with proposed program, framework, budget, and listing of potential locations and partners for the implementation of a safe parking program for people experiencing homelessness, living in their cars, including considerations for the provision of case management and supportive services to transition the homeless from living in their vehicles to housing, an access mechanism that allows entry only via referral, and inclusion of a good neighbor plan.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Jennings.
So I just wanna let the council know that in response to trying to do something in District 7, this is a potential strategy for us to be able to use our parking lots, whether they be at churches or community-based organizations or community centers, wherever they may be. We see this as a strategy for District 7, but we also see it as a strategy for the entire city of Sacramento. When you take a look at one important fact, that there was a 62% increase from 2017 to 2019 in the point-in-time count. And that's what we're counting, whether that's understated or not. It's 62% increase in the number of people who are living in their cars. And they're surviving in their cars. So if we don't do something to help them and put them in a safe environment, we have a safety risk that we don't want to have happen. So at this point, I'd like to propose that the city manager bring back a model, and that model start with some form of a pilot program, so that we can actually test it during a period of time, a recent period of time. He can come back with all the details as far as costs and what it would take in order to do that. And then we can see the effectiveness of a program of this nature where, with case management, that'll allow people to get out of their cars and back into housing that will allow them to be able to have a normal lifestyle. So I just wanna make sure we understand that number.
That is direction. I support the direction to come back and let's look at this, and requires a little bit of an investment to add it as an option. Creativity and more options, the better.
So that will be my motion.
Second.
Nice if you took the public comment and split in there.
Well, that's a good point, but it was just a motion, so we haven't voted on it yet. Okay, but let's hear the members. We're gonna do a little reverse this time, so let's hear from Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jennings, I appreciate your efforts in this. What you're driving at is basically kind of a temporary model to create a safe ground for parking cars, and I appreciate that. I would also like to piggyback on that and just add direction in your motion, if you'll accept it, to the city manager. Two weeks ago, I gave a presentation on our trip to Modesto to look at their temporary tent camping arrangement to provide safety, to have a place for street feeders to do their benevolent giving, to stem drug sales, you know, to campers. So basically, what you're proposing, but for people in tents. We've got a lot of information that we've already presented from Modesto, so I would like to work with staff to work on the numbers and find out what it would take to provide security and some hygiene, but basically just create a safe place to camp with a date certain for termination of the program. That was one consideration that they made very clear in Modesto, that this cannot be an open-ended program. It just doesn't work that way. So that would be my direction, if you'll accept it.
Yeah, and I'd be willing to accept that amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thank my colleague, Councilmember Rick Jennings, for continuing to think about how we can address this issue here. I'd also like to ask staff if they could reach out to the Power and Alliance. I know in District 6, we have a lot of warehouses, but as we've learned from the railroad project that warehouses are an extremely expensive way to try to use that. But one opportunity that might be available out there is parking lot spaces out there. And since there are a lot of industrial areas, there might be some parking lot spaces that may work. So I'd like to connect with them about security issues and how we could make it be functional out there.
Okay. Let's hear for the public testimony quickly on this item, okay?
I have two speakers, but I don't believe they're all still here. The first is Jeffrey Tardagia, then Robert Copeland, and I'm gonna read off the rest. Howard Lawrence, Rick Eaton.
Howard and Rick are both gone. Okay.
Well, Jeff Tardagia, the reason why you have the information about the cars is because when I first met with the mayor about Pitt, I've been involved with that. So we got the information collected and showing how much increase there has been in that over the time period, because the point-in-time has shown that over the last three times it's been taken, homeless population has doubled. Not 20%, it's now over 5,000, and they believe that's half the count, is what we go through there on that. But for you people here, I will offer is Santa Monica 25 years ago had that type of setup, and they have two setup arrangements there. I would invite you to go check out what Santa Monica and whether it's still continuing. One was set for RVs, another one was set up for the, in a sense, making a secure place. The other thing I will say to you, Mayor, is before you made the libraries unlikable and unsafe for homeless, because you made an effort out there to exclude them, that was one of the places that homeless considered is a safe haven. You still need to find a place where you make a safe zone for people to be at. And as you have learned from both Sacramento Bee and from other sources, that there is a lot of individuals now that they consider their car, their last refuge, their safe place. You need to make a place for them to be considered that safe. That's what I'll offer to you, and thank you, Rick, for bringing that forward, because it's very important. And like I said, Santa Monica did this 25 years ago with centers, so please check that out and see what their evolution is. Last one you have there is only 10 years.
Thank you. Robert Copeland.
I will support this if you made a few requests. One, people that are sleeping in the cars are safe. Two, you get the permission from the owner of a business or the parking lot. Three, they don't get towed away. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. The last speakers, I don't believe, are still here. Howard Lawrence, Rick Eaton, James Fago Clark, and Richard Wake. Nope, thank you.
Okay.
So that concludes the public testimony.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there anything? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that's eight to nothing, I believe, or seven to nothing, excuse me. Okay. That concludes tonight's agenda. Could we, do we have how many people on the...
I do have speakers for...
Public comment not on the agenda.
I'm assuming some have left. And I do have boards and commissions appointments to read in the record, if you may.
Hold on.
Can we do council comments, just briefly?
Let's do council comments briefly. Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Carr.
Filling the chair. I just wanted to take a point of personal privilege and wish our colleague Jeff Harris a happy birthday tomorrow is his...
Hey, happy birthday, Jeff!
As I understand it, he'll be spending it celebrating other people and going to district events and working very hard. But I encourage you, Councilmember Harris, to maybe have a piece of cake, relax a little bit, have a nice day, and enjoy all that it is to pass around the sun one more time.
I'm going to dinner at my...
Okay, well...
I was gonna add happy 37th birthday to you.
Every year of it.
Okay. Councilman Carr, no, this is just you. Councilmember Jennings, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, we have ribbon-cutting ceremony for Community Garden that we are opening up this Thursday at 6:00 PM. It's at the Sojourner Truth Park, and this is five years of hard work in getting this community garden up and going. So we encourage you to come on out and join us as we cut the ribbon and plant a few seeds for our garden. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Harris. Want to announce your birthday?
There we go. Happy... Thank you very much. Just one brief announcement. Our last and final Pops in the Park concert of the year will happen September 7th, Saturday, starting at 6:00 PM, South Natomas Community Park. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Latin Touch will be playing, a very popular band up there in South Natomas. There's, of course, a beer garden, bounce house, and all the frou-frou, so we hope to see you there.
Very good. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The only two quick announcements. We have the movie night and resource fair where all our city departments will be at Ardivio Guerrero Park in Fruit Ridge Manor, celebrating the movie night, but before the movie starts, we're gonna have prizes, we're gonna raffle some bikes and some helmets. But more important, you get information from all our city departments there right before the movie. And then also, on September 13th, we're gonna have movie night at Oki Park, so see you there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. City Clerk.
Thank you. I have board and commission appointments to read into the record to the Stadium Area Public Financing Authority, Rita Good and Blake Johnston.
Thank you very much. Let's take the...
I had one thing I forgot.
Yes, Councilman Chenier.
Sorry, if I could real quick. Can we, can I say, City Manager, could we get an update for the council on the Measure U Investment Committee, the Measure U Community Advisor Committee, kind of where they are in process, as opposed to... Yeah. Could be quick.
Okay. Very good. Let's hear folks who are still here.
Thank you. I'm gonna read all the names off, so if you'll line up. The first is Robert Copeland, then Jeffrey Tardagia, Barbara Ram, Marc Valenzuela, Charles Ware.
Go ahead.
Tim Boyd. Go ahead, Mr. Copeland.
Are you done, City Clerk?
I am, thank you.
Why LA homeless population is so bad? It's not, LA can, LA Communication Network and LA Tenure are trying to solve that problem, though what's failing them is the LA government. So don't be like the Los Angeles City Government or the County Board. Do better.
Thank you, Robert.
Two, I support the charter amendment for the rent control as part of Sacramento Tenant Union and for Sacramento for a real rent control coalition for the following reason. What you passed a couple weeks ago is falls short on several, a couple of main issues. One, people on SSI, Social Security, minimum wage jobs, they don't get 6% plus CPI increases every year, and that's what's going to happen. People are gonna be, still gonna become homeless because of this, even with this, with the compromise deal that you had. Just cause eviction should start immediately, not a month, two months from now, immediately. So I'm part of the Sacramento Tenure. We're gonna fight hard for the charter amendment. And did you know there's a statewide rent control ballot measure that's in the petition gathering phase right now? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jeffrey Tardagia.
Mayor, you have done climate control. You have done nothing for city transportation. Now, the issue's through there, and I've seen nowhere this material in City Hall, and you have member of members that are RT board members. Please do better job of talking to your constituents about these things for the city. Second thing I'm gonna mention to you, you have yet to correct the situation on L Street regarding from both the construction project of the convention center, which I have actively asked the active transportation. It's now time to bring it, to put it in the record for the mayor, that the C3 project has interfered with the bus stop at 14th and L. And with the load that's on there, because your planners only look at the maps, do not look at the site, there is a problem there that you have not corrected. As I've said, how many years ago, and next I'll go back to the station again and say, hey, guess what? This city does not have correct maps for its people that arrive in here to know where the heck they are. Bodoco does it wrong because they have Fourth Street marked as Fifth Street, and you have the still exciting with it, there is a Westfield Center in all the parking structures. You still have not corrected that. Again, I put it on record, in August, it has not been corrected.
Thank you. Barbara Ram, I believe, is gone. Marc Valenzuela, Charles Ware. Mr. Valenzuela?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry for talking so late, but I wanna just reiterate about what I mentioned earlier when I first came up here. This is my first time at a city council meeting. Very nervous, sorry about that. But as far as the, under the overpass by the rail yards, I spoke, I've been emailing Tony Hawk as far as the skate park goes. He designs skate parks. And I thought a good name for the skate park would be Skate Capital. It'd be a place for the youth, that skateboard down at the Old Sac area, to go to a place that's designated for that, and we can use it for the X Games. And it'll bring a lot of people to this community to enjoy the X Games as one of the tourist attractions. Another thing is, let me see, let me get my head straight here. X Games, waterfronts, the homeless shelter, the homeless boot camp. I'm military, 33 years in the military, and when you're indoctrinated in the military, you're issued a lot of items, survival items, duffel bags, full of sleeping bags, personal hygiene, bicycles, whatever. If you can eliminate people going, digging dumpster diving, and issue items to them, it'll alleviate that problem. And if you can get them to work while they're in the homeless shelters, it'll alleviate the messes that they leave behind. They can clean up their own homeless mess and put them to work. Let me see. Oh, I'm almost done. I've got so many more things to show you. I'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Charles Ware. I don't see Charles. Liam Elliott Beckett, and then Tim Boyd, Brian King.
Councilmembers and Mayor Steinberg, good evening. My name is Liam Elliott Beckett. I've come here tonight to ask for your endorsements of a state bill I have drafted. of a state bill I have drafted as part of the Youth in Government Program regarding funding for sidewalk repair, which I wish to introduce to the state legislature. My grandmother, a city of Sacramento resident, had to pay $8,000 to repair a sidewalk damaged by a city-owned tree. In Sacramento, if damage occurs to a sidewalk, the adjacent property owner must pay the often unanticipated repair costs, often in the thousands of dollars. For all homeowners, these unexpected repair bills can be hard, but for low-income homeowners, they may risk losing their homes. The code was put in place in response to a Great Depression-era state law banning a fee for the purpose of funding sidewalk repair. Damaged sidewalks lead to expensive lawsuits, which often dwarf the cost of sidewalk repair themselves. As part of the Youth in Government Program, we estimated that the city of Sacramento, we need to collect about $4 per property per year to pay for sidewalk repair. This would replace the risk of random large repair bills for a few with a predictable small fee for all property owners. In addition, money from the fee would be reserved for sidewalk repair. It would not empty into the sea of general funds. This bill is structured as a measure, and as such, any money left over after the five-year period will contribute to the next five-year stretch, reducing the necessary cost. An additional benefit of it being a measure is that the citizens of Sacramento and all other Californian cities and municipalities could vote for themselves whether or not they want the fee. Thank you for your time, and I hope to get your endorsements.
I just want to thank you for coming out and staying so late and being thoughtful about putting an idea forward. How old are you, if you don't mind me asking?
Sixteen. John F. Kennedy.
So... Go.
What we'll do is, I don't, I think we have your contact info. We'll get this to our lobbyist and see if it kind of fits into our framework for our legislative platform.
Thank you so much.
Okay, but we'll make sure we meet with you, that you're meeting with our...
Her name is Consuelo Hernandez.
Our folk.
I'm looking for that. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you. Let me read off Brian King, James Brown, Jamir Sale, Ronnie Whitlow, Sonia Lewis, Lambert Davis, and Keon Johnston.
Who are you? James Brown.
James Brown will be the last speaker here, okay?
City Council, Mayor Steinberg?
Excuse me, one sec. You are who, sir?
James.
You're Lambert Davis. Okay, you come up too. We have two more speakers. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is President James Brown of the Chicano Latino Youth Leadership Project, and elected by the state delegation from all of California to the mock legislature.
Wow. It's an honor to be in your presence.
Thank you so much.
If you come up, the mayor will just switch with you right now.
Yeah. Believe me, maybe for a month.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for considering my friend's bill as something that you would lobby, because it is something that I'm very passionate about as well. Allow me to formally introduce myself. I'm James Brown, a resident of Sacramento in District Six. And I have, every day, driving to school, I see sidewalks that are broken. And I imagine what would happen if my family had a sidewalk that was broken on our lawn and how it would affect us and what the amount that we've had, we would have to pay for that would do to our family and our income and how that would affect us. It would be something that we wouldn't be able to take. Just fixing a car is hard enough,